Okay, everyone, let's get going here. This is October 15th, 2014. Meeting of the City Council is called to order. Meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for hearing impaired viewers. Please note customers of CenturyLink may view this program in high definition on Channel 1002 and some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming may be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday, the meeting at 8:00 PM, also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers. Out to the mess and then proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related items on the agenda, citizen participation, and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the clerk's office at the rear of these chambers, but if you do not submit a card, it doesn't prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please come forward and see the city clerk's staff. If you parked in the parking garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise this morning for the invocation given by Pastor Benny Jopp? Victory Outreach Las Vegas remains standing for the pledge. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman. If I could have everybody, please, close their eyes and bow their heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning, God, in the mighty name of Jesus, Lord, and now we ask, my God, that you would just take hold, God, of everything that is going to transpire here today, Lord. I pray for Mayor Goodman, God, and her council, Lord. I pray, God, that you would just have your way, God, that there would be no confusion, God, no people coming and trying to disrupt, Lord, but I just pray, God, that you would just have your way, God. Let your peace, God, and your understanding and your wisdom, God, just be here, God, with the mayor, God, and her council, Lord, but we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
State-of-the-art? Because I just noticed those cameras move. It is. Yeah, you knew that all along. We didn't know. They're right. There are eight of them. Oh, my gosh. All better be perfect. Okay. You're coming. That's one, two, three, four. Okay. Oh, my goodness. So you're coming, the rest of you barefoot then? Or are you putting your shoes on? Roll up your pant leg? Okay. Nobody else has the socks on. Okay, while you're sauntering down here. For our first item, we have a special guest with us today, and so I'd like to invite Mountain Ridge Little League coach, 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 the coach, Ashton Cave, to join us at the podium. Wow, look at what's on your hat, right over here. Is that awesome? We've been celebrating the win of this team. What fame they've brought to Las Vegas. What a great group. And so all of Las Vegas watched as this team made its way through the regionals and onto the biggest stage in Williamsport, Pennsylvania. The team really brought our community together over this past summer, and it lingers on and on and on, and gave Las Vegas something really to cheer for. And Coach, I'm glad you could join us today, and Councilman Ross tells me that you have a presentation you want to work? Oh, my goodness. Okay, Coach, go for it.
Thank you very much. The city of Las Vegas, we want to present something, a token of our appreciation to several of your staff for the time and the commitment that you presented to Mountain Ridge Little League, partnering up with us to allow this dream to come true, from the players, their families. This is for Mayor Goodman, signed baseball from the entire team and coaching staff, as well as a team plaque, so you can put on your wall or wherever you would like to.
I'm speechless. I have never been speechless. This is awesome. So for sure, this is going to be on display in the most prominent place. I mean, we're so proud. There just aren't words to express how proud we are of what you have accomplished with those young players. I mean, it took such a long time, and yet you came out right on top there. It's so fabulous. What a treat.
Definitely so. Definitely so. And we'd also like to present one to Councilman Steve Ross as well, so one of these is for him. So thank you very much, Steve, and for the time that he had allotted to the team and as far—
For the city.
Yes. For the city of Las Vegas, is she here? Betsy?
Betsy, come on up here.
Betsy, please come on up. How are you doing? All right. Well, obviously, behind the scenes, we want to express our gratitude to you as well, so this plaque will be for you and your baseball, and the baseball for you as well.
Thank you so much. This is awesome.
We'd also like to acknowledge Jerry Walker for, we had the wonderful community outreach event with the monument that the city of Las Vegas is dedicated to us. It's been on the links in the websites throughout, and everybody could see that the players and their families came as little private, get together with some of the media, and it's just an iconic figure there to always just show what dreams, you know, how they can come possible and come true through hard work and the commitment of the city of Las Vegas. We appreciate you guys taking in the youth and then supporting youth sports, and we just hope that you guys continue to support us by keeping those rates low so that we can, that we can be successful and enjoy this time. So to all those, to all those that have participated and supported us, we want to thank each of you very much, the city of Las Vegas. What a journey and a ride, and obviously, it's coming to an end, but we'll still take it any chance we can, so—
No, no, no. What's the encore? What do you mean it's coming to an end? It's never an end.
Well, this is true. It's never an end. The end is the end. That's correct. I like your optimism.
What's for next year?
Next year, obviously, Mountain Ridge, the two younger teams, the 10-11s and the 9-10s, they also won the state championship, so obviously, the potential is endless, and there's a lot of hard work going in through coaching staffs and through the board who has put in a lot of time, and because of the volunteering staff, especially in the Northwest and throughout the community of Las Vegas, and the results are there, and we hope to have continued results and another team represent in Williamsport next year.
We hope so, too. Thank you. This is so good.
You're very welcome, Betsy. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, keep in mind, and Ashton, you're too humble. I mean, he mentioned the younger boys coming up and still state champions. It seems like every baseball season, we are recognizing a team from Mountain Ridge for going to state. This year, all of them went to state. I mean, it's just fabulous, fabulous organization. I think the city's largest baseball league. Pacoli's pretty dang close, I think, but lots and lots of families. How many boys are in this program? How many kids are in this program?
That's a good, about 800-ish is what we have in our program over there, and like he had said, every age group, we won the state championship, so a lot of hard work's going on over there, and that's a lot, so your area.
For those of you who have sons that are listening, where do they have to move to get into the Mountain Ridge area to qualify?
Mayor, it's interesting, we've noticed a lot of Pacoli families moving out to Centennial Hills to be with this organization and what they're doing, but they're teaching these boys a great deal of pride, sportsmanship, and the qualities and morals that these young men and young women, because you've got girls in the league as well, teaching them the qualities that we want in good people and good citizens as they grow up. So I appreciate all that your organization does, Ashton. Congratulations for getting as far as you guys have. We're looking forward to next year.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're so proud. It truly is. It's about the coaching, and when you watch those young players during every one of the games, their manners, how they conducted themselves, they were so confident, so self-assured, and that comes from what you do. And so I can imagine your whole ward's going to explode.
It's good coaching staff, obviously. You know, we always kept each other in line. That's the good thing. When it was three, it's kind of hard to get in trouble, so—
And how long have you been together, the coaching staff?
The coaching staff, this was our second year as the three of us, but we've been working together for the last few years, so, but it's been a great journey and ride, and we finally got to where we'd always hoped for, so—
We're just so proud. It's wonderful. We love winners, but we love, we love sports. Love it, love it, and bless you for doing it. Thank you. Good luck in the future. Thank you. Thank you. I licked it, so know it's mine. Okay, did you hear me, Councilman? I said I licked that one.
Did you?
Yes. That's when you have a large family and the lamb chop, there's one left. You always do that. Okay, for our next item, I'd like, oh, I'd like to invite our detention enforcement chief, Michelle Freeman, to join us at the podium, another New Yorker. Yay, Chief! Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stand for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. They build our community, make life better, and I'm proud to announce that the employee of the month is Jeff Alamo. Jeff, join us, please. I don't understand why people sit in the back. I guess it starts when you're in elementary school, you don't want to be called on, but we're so proud of you. Jeff is a locksmith who's been with the city for more than 12 years. You know I give out ceremonial keys to the city, but it's Jeff who has the real keys. He handles thousands of doors across dozens of our city facilities, and keeping those locks functioning at all times is what he does, and he does it always with a smile. In the past, the city has had as many as three locksmiths working for us. Freddie Union and $100 gift card from Mundo Restaurant. In addition, a donation of $100 will be made to the charity of his choice by SuperPaw. Jeff has also received various other awards from the city and council to recognize his great work. And finally, to our left, Jeff, R and B, you will see a street sign with your name on it. It's posted in front of City Hall at Main Street, and I'd like to ask our wonderful chief Freeman to say a few words, and then we'll hear from you if you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Council. So Jeff's been with us for 12 and a half years, and Mayor, you captured it perfectly because he does hold the key to the city and to many of our hearts. Jeff, you do an amazing job. From day one, he's been consistent. His attitude and his passion and his desire to be where he's at has always been exemplified. He's one of the nicest people, truly nicest people I've ever met in my entire life. You are such a pleasure to have, working with us and side by side all these years, Jeff, and quite honestly, I couldn't ask for a better person to be in your spot, day in and day out. Like the mayor said, he's the only person doing it right now. One-man show, and never once does you, do you hear anything other than, can I help you? What can I do? What can I do better for you? And it's really incredible that you have that great attitude and are spread so thin. Really appreciate everything you've done. You do creative things on a daily basis. This guy here, truly an action hero. It is not an acronym. He is an action hero with his achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, ownership, and now? No, he wants it done yesterday, not now. So I really appreciate it. I thank you. I just want to mention, when Deputy Chief Tim Shattler and I were having a conversation recently about you, the one thing that he brought to my attention was, I said, "Well, what do you really think about when you think about Jeff?" And he says, "I've never met a more passionate person in my life that takes more pride in what he does," and I don't think anybody could have stated it any better. So Jeff, thank you so much for allowing the city to shine because of you, your work, and your great attitude. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Beautiful. I think that was the best speech. Well, thank you. Thank you. I'd have to say more than five words. So I would like to thank Public Works and Detention and Enforcement for nominating me for this award. I'm truly honored, and I thank you all. Being a locksmith and running this place for the last seven months is quite a chore by yourself, but I'm grateful for everybody being patient and giving me the support that I needed. I got my maintenance crew down on the yard. They always give me a hand, and facilities maintenance, if I need their assistance, they're always there to give me a hand, too. So you guys rock, and I appreciate all your help. Then there's Del Rey, you know, met her when I was 15, and 28 years later, she's still by my side, so thank you, Del Rey. I love you. And to my dad, my mentor, always being there, having an ear. Thank you. And a lot of other people, I should thank. Wish I could remember you all, but I've had a lot of mentors and a lot of help to get me where I was today, and you guys know who you are, or she. I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Now, I have to ask, were you ever a lock pick?
A lock pick?
Yeah, I mean, when you were little, were you, I mean, did people get locked out of your house or something? That you got into locks? How did that happen?
I probably got into a lot of stuff I shouldn't have got into, but my dad's a retired motorcycle cop from CHP down in California.
Please stand up.
Come on, Pop, stand up.
Del Rey?
And my wife, Del Rey. She's there, Del Rey. And several of my friends are here that I did not know were going to be here. Awesome. Anyway, yeah, my dad, we moved to Cedar City up in Utah, and my dad opened a lock shop, so I always liked to spend time with my dad. So I started playing with locks when I was nine, and I moved here as a senior, and I started off as an apprentice. Yeah, absolutely.
We're going to give out a cellphone in case you ever lock yourself out of your car, or your house, or wherever else. But anyway, on behalf of the city council, as employee of the month, who has exhibited outstanding performance through achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, ownership, and is engaged yesterday, not now, and has exhibited assistance to his fellow employees, department, and the citizens of Las Vegas, we congratulate you, and we're going to take a picture by your sign. Okay? So let's step right over here. All right, give up your socks, Councilman. and present the Senior of the Quarter Award. There you are. Good morning.
How are you? This is great. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Goodman. Yes, thank you. And city council, city staff, and guests. It is with great pleasure this morning that we are going to introduce two people who have made a difference in our community at the Deerfelt Senior Center. If Tom and Gwen Kaiser could be accompanied by the Deerfelt staff at this time and join me at the podium. First of all, I'd like to talk a little bit about Tom. Tom is a retired Marine who is a member of the Deerfelt, and he had a vision to reestablish the writing class at the center, writing for fun. He's also known as the commander-in-chief at Deerfelt, and that's a fondly made comment. His awesome organizational skills have come in handy with Mother Hubbard's cupboard food pantry, and his woodworking skills are prizes that are for the raffles at the Deerfelt Center. Gwen has become the center's mother hen. She assists with all of the activities. She has given various donations to the Mother Hubbard's food pantry. She's doing the Chilling with Santa in December, which is the back-to-school fundraiser, and she makes various donations to the Veterans Luncheon are a few of the involvement that she has made at the center. Tom and Gwen designed and helped build the swinging panel park bench for the El Dorado Parade, representing the city of Las Vegas Park ambassadors. They also assist in December for the Goody Two Shoes event, providing shoes to children in need. They do an abundance of humanitarian work in our Native American community. Our board is honored to recognize Tom and Gwen as seniors of the quarter, not only for their tremendous impact they have made in our community as volunteers, but they truly make a difference in our community, and Ward 5 ought to be very proud. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, and most of all, I want to say thank you to the Deerfelt staff because they saved my life. I retired, and I'm a borderline hyperactive, so I needed something to do, and they found things for me to do, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I just think that the staff at Deerfelt is the best people you'll ever going to meet. They make you feel like family. They treat you like you're the only person in the world, and we love them all. Thank you. Oh, how nice.
Congratulations. Just wonderful, and we so appreciate everything at Deerfelt for sure, and both of you for everything that you've been doing all this time. It's important to stay involved, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Right. Yes, it absolutely does. I can speak to that. Congratulations. Thank you. And Mary Ellen, wonderful choice. Thank you. Great. For our next item, I'd like to invite April Mastroluka, Executive Director of ALS of Nevada, to join us at the podium. Another smiling soul. Look at this. Wonderful. Thank you. As you all know, ALS, or Lou Gehrig's disease, has touched so many in our community and around the world. Work is ongoing to find a cure for this terrible disease, and I wanted to take time today to recognize April and ALS of Nevada for all the work that they're doing. ALS of Nevada is dedicated to providing the best care and service possible for those who have the disease, as well as providing support to the families with a loved one who is suffering. Of course, we all saw the international tension garnered for ALS by the Ice Bucket Challenge. Do we have some Ice Bucket Challenge recipients here? And some of our council member and staff participated. So April, we want to present you with this proclamation making today, October 15th, 2014, ALS Awareness Day in the city of Las Vegas, and thank you again for all your work and all that you're inspiring. Please tell us a little bit about ALS Nevada.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council members. ALS of Nevada is a very unique organization because we're the only organization in Nevada that helps people with ALS, or better known as Lou Gehrig's disease. We have about approximately 90 people throughout the state of Nevada that have ALS, and as many of you know, ALS is a terminal disease. So it is something that families struggle with and deal with, and try to make the lives of the people who have the disease as pleasant as possible for the time that they have left, and that's what we help them with. We provide them with services, support, things that they may not be able to afford that they need in order to continue on with daily living, and we do it every day with a smile on our face and honor in our heart because it is probably the best job I could ever ask for.
How do people contribute or get involved? Do you need volunteers? And if you would repeat whatever you say twice so that they can get it.
Okay. Our website is www.alsofnevada.org, and you can donate through our website. You can call us, and we'll take a donation over the phone. And thanks to Councilman Anthony and his staff. We are once again having our 14th annual walk at Police Memorial Park on October 25th. It is Be a Superhero for ALS, so I'm looking forward to seeing Councilman Anthony in some superhero garb, is the rumor that I'm hearing.
Superman.
He's going to be Superman. So if you would like to see Councilman Anthony dressed as Superman, please join us on October 25th at Police Memorial Park. You can sign up on our website, and we would love to have you. It's $40 to contribute, and we ask people to join a team or create a team, and ask your friends and family to donate to your team. There are prizes for best costume. There are prizes for best team costume, and there are not prizes for best socks. I'm sorry.
Yet.
Yet, maybe. And there's also prizes for best fundraiser, individual and team, and we also have a 5K race, and there'll be medals for all the 5K participants. And in November, we'll also be having an event here at City Hall on November 13th, up on the patio, and it is our art and wreath event, and this is our fifth annual event, and I will tell you one little hint, the food is going to be absolutely fabulous.
Are you the chef?
I am not the chef. You don't. You can ask my husband.
Don't go there.
No. He's the chef, not me. But no, we, there's a new restaurant that's opening in the El Cortez, and before they open, they are honoring us with creating all of the dishes for the evening.
That is so wonderful. So we have a proclamation here, and I think what basically is telling us that on behalf of the mayor and the city council and the entire city of Las Vegas, that we proudly proclaim October 15th, 2014, is ALS of Nevada Awareness Day. And so we thank you so much for everything you've done, and we're just, it is, it's just a very, very difficult disease, and not only for those who are afflicted with it, but the families who have their loved person just suffering so, and it's just something that it's wonderful, and our hopes are that certainly a cure is found soon. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, for our next item, Mayor Pro Tem Anthony is going to recognize another cause.
Going to recognize pink. Well, as many of you know, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and there are notable events all over the valley, such as the Susan G. Komen Race for the Cure that take place in our community to help raise funds and awareness to combat breast cancer. Today, I'm proud to recognize another such event that our own Las Vegas Fire and Rescue firefighters have organized. So at this point, I'd like to ask, to come down to the podium, our Las Vegas Fire and Rescue Chief Willie McDonald. Please come down, give him a nice round of applause, chief. I also want to recognize, yeah, I guess you might as well all come down, but I want to specifically recognize—
So we have a proclamation here, and I think what basically is telling us that on behalf of the Mayor and the City Council and the entire city of Las Vegas, that we proudly proclaim October 15th, 2014, is ALS of Nevada Awareness Day. And so we thank you so much for everything you've done, and we're just, it is, it's just a very, very difficult disease, and not only for those who are afflicted with it, but the families who have their loved person just suffering so. And it's just something that it's wonderful, and our hopes are that certainly a cure is found soon. Thank you so much. Thank you.[535.88][535.88][applause] Okay, for our next item, Mayor Pro Tem Anthony is going to recognize another cause.
I'm gonna recognize pink. Well, as many of you know, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and there are notable events all over the valley, such as the Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure that take place in our community to help raise funds and awareness to combat breast cancer. Today, I'm proud to recognize another such event that our own Las Vegas Fire and Rescue Firefighters have organized. So at this point, I'd like to ask to come down to the podium our Las Vegas Fire and Rescue Chief Willie McDonald. Please come down, give him a nice round of applause, Chief. I also want to recognize, yeah, I guess you might as well all come down, but I want to specifically recognize Captain Scott Johnson, the President of the Las Vegas Firefighters, IAFF Local 1285.[607.29][607.29][applause] And our firefighter partner, Todd Inglesby, First Vice President of the Las Vegas Firefighters, IAFF Local 1285. So those are the main guys, and we have a bunch of firefighters here.[624.91][624.91][laughter] Chief, how you doing?
It's a lot of pink.
The Susan G. Coleman Breast Cancer Foundation has a saying that every minute of every day to save every life makes every moment count because 10 million women around the world could die from breast cancer in the next 25 years without a cure. This year, for the first time, the Las Vegas Firefighters have been showing their support for the Susan G. Coleman Breast Cancer Foundation by selling Fighting Breast Cancer Charity Shirts to the public. And as you can see, this is what they look like. Nearly 50% of the proceeds will benefit the Susan G. Coleman Breast Cancer Foundation, and the other half will go to local nonprofit organizations in the community. The mission of the Las Vegas Firefighters, IAFF Local 1285, is to promote community safety by protecting life, preventing loss, and providing support and relief for those in need. Today, the Southern Nevada affiliate of the Susan G. Coleman Breast Cancer Foundation and the Las Vegas Firefighters are working together to better the lives of those facing breast cancer in our community. So I'd first like to ask Chief McDonald to say a few words, and then I'd like to ask Captain Johnson to say a few words. Chief?
Thank you, Councilmember. Good morning, everyone. We wanted to be able to be here this morning just to recognize and support the Breast Cancer Foundation and the research that's going on. Pretty much everybody in that you, everybody in our department, everyone has someone that they know that has been impacted somehow by breast cancer, and so our members of the organization see ourselves as members of the community, and we wanted to make sure that we recognized and honored breast cancer awareness and the research, and just wanted to show our, do our part.
Great. Thanks, Chief. Captain Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Council. It's a privilege for the Las Vegas Firefighters to be involved in this very important cause. This is actually a nationwide effort on behalf of the International Association of Firefighters. We stand up across the entire country to support this cause. We realize how important it is. We realize the impacts that it has to families. We know the statistical data of how many people. In fact, it's 1 in 8 women that will be diagnosed this year. 230,000 of them will get a very aggressive form of breast cancer. And so this is a very easy way for us as firefighters to show our support to the community in such an obvious way. And our people wear these shirts. They're very proud to wear them. Like the chief said, there are many people that are impacted. We're very thankful that our chief is so open, that the city itself is so open to allow us to do these sorts of things, and we're very happy that we've sold about 1,900 of these T-shirts, which should raise somewhere between $8,000 and $10,000 to be given to Susan G. Coleman. And as you know, they have about 120 affiliate areas across the country and raise a tremendous amount of money. So what we're hoping is that our effort will help here locally so that people can get tested early, that people are aware of the disease, and that women, of course, in particular, although it does affect men, but it's just on a much smaller scale, that they get the early testing. It's recognized early, it's dealt with, and we can help save lives in that realm. So we're very thankful. We're honored to be able to do it. We love the city and thank all of you, and we hope that this is a great effort that continues on for many years to come. Yes, they actually can go online. I would recommend that they go to our Las Vegas Firefighters, I believe it's our Facebook site, and that's where you can find the link. That's the easiest way to do it, is just to look for us on Facebook. There's a link to purchase. I'm not sure how much longer that link's gonna be open. I have a couple of my people that have really led the way on this that are up here. It's tonight at midnight, so we are on crunch time. They have done, they have done a terrific job in terms of getting the shirts out, the work that they've put in. So Shannon Powell's been excellent. My community outreach chairman, Todd Inglesby, has done a terrific job. And so the shirts are $10, and so it's such an easy way to show your support, and it raises money in such a wonderful way. And then all the money just goes to right into the program. I love the support that we have from everybody, and it's just, it's just a real honor, and thank you so much. Thank you.[921.01][921.01][applause]
So we're, we are absolutely very proud of every single one of you for what you do every single day and what you're doing today for the Coleman Foundation. So Scott, on behalf of the Mayor and the entire City Council, I would like to present you the Las Vegas Firefighters, IAFF Local 1285, with a certificate of recognition for everything you do to keep this community safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.[946.01][946.01][applause]
And of course, with what pride do we wear the seal of our city firefighters? So proud of that. Thank you. You do look good in pink. So you have till midnight. $10 for a shirt. Thank you all so much. And for our final item, Councilman Coffin, our final item.
Thank you, Your Honor. Officially, I'm going to be presenting the planners with a commendation, but I wanted to just say something. Somebody was making fun of my socks earlier. Those of you who had arrived late did not know, we had a meeting of the redevelopment agency here, and one of our brand-new businesses in the heart of downtown, which officially today will be part of Ward Three, because Councilman Barlow was, was a little late here and didn't get a chance to say the great things. And man, we have a business that just moved to town that is selling socks, I think mismatched socks. They don't match. Well, they do. If you look at the colors, you'll see that there is a rhythm to these color selections, and one of the owners is a designer, and so it's orangebelt.com. So go looking for them online. Now, the reason I bring this up is because every day contains a teaching moment. This medallion here on my collar is for the Shriners Golf Tournament, which is starting tomorrow. The PGA Tour is in town, and also all the finest golfers in the world are here today. And today is the Celebrity Pro-Am. So there's something to watch out there, and in the early days of the tournament, which is primarily Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, there is more parking than available later. So I hope everybody in Las Vegas who's watching this broadcast or in here now will turn off their televisions and go out to TPC Summerlin and Town Center and, you know, enjoy that golf tournament for a great cause, the Shriners. Okay, so why the socks? You know, you always wonder why those guys wear funny pants sometimes, those who, you know, have the short pants with the long socks. The Scots, the Irish, the Northern English particularly, invented the game, really, the real game of golf, and it's the greatest game in the world, and they wanted to play it all the time, including the winter, which is merciless in those countries. And so usually the men, and they were playing in their business suits, they'd pretend to be at the office just like they do today, so they'd, they'd go out and play. But these golf courses were not the manicured fields and streams you see today. They were an imitation of it, like, you know, a worn-out park with a lot of weeds. And so it gets pretty wet. So they would pull on these long woolen socks full of lanolin up over their pants, and they'd wear them. And it wasn't long before somebody figured out, wait a minute, we can make money not only selling socks that were prettier than the ugly old gray-looking woolen socks, but also pants that looked pretty. So, so instead of paying 150 bucks for a pair of these short pants today, you can just pull it on over your own, and then you've got the effect. So I thought that would be our teaching moment, all related to golf. Thank you, Your Honor, for letting me extend this day. Truly appreciate this. They're kind of cute now that they grow on you. My wife will not forgive me for that. Tom Perrigo, come on up. Tom is our Acting Director of Planning, who will probably soon resign after having been involved with a medical marijuana project. He's wearing a tie that indicates he is a planner. It's a map of what appears to be skyline or surface of Manhattan Island or something like that. The Strip. And you'll tell us all where we can go buy a tie like that. Today, we're gonna talk about planning because it is the important thing. We took for granted, you know, in the early days, that towns just grew up by themselves. Las Vegas grew helter-skelter, particularly east of the freeway, east of the railroad tracks before there was a freeway. Somebody wanted to build, they filed a plan for an addition, got permission to build, and they built whatever they wanted. Now, it was something the consumers wanted, but basically, there was no planning. There was no preparation. Every now and then, somebody would put in a park and say, that's good. But nobody really sought out the advice of experts on how best to do it. So later on, cities, including Las Vegas, got smart and began to hire people who knew how to do that sort of thing, so that it looked better, that it lasted longer, and it appealed to the kind of people who were living there, not just senior citizens, but children and adults who were going to become senior citizens. So all of that became kind of our culture we take for granted nowadays. And some people will hate the planners because, oh, they've set this plan up, it's rigid, it's inflexible, and they want to make it like it is for them. But in fact, planning is the start. You start any business, you start any project with a plan. You must have a plan. And then be prepared to change the plan because it changes the very first day you try to put it in effect. That's the kind of flexibility, that's the kind of talent we have in the city of Las Vegas amongst the planners of our city. People who can design and can help, you know, Neanderthals like me understand how it should be and why it should be, and then they listen to the constituents and modify as they go. And that's why you see your beautiful downtown shaping up today. It's because of the planners who instilled the inspiration in the elected officials and encouraged them to think out of the box. And so what we have now is, I think, the growth of a beautiful, major metropolitan city, a rebirth, if you will, because of the planners. Tom, you're the head of the department, and I want you to say a few words before I present you with this proclamation.
Thank you, Councilman, and I appreciate that, it just seems fitting that a person who wears colorful socks on the outside of their pants is presenting the planning, community planning proclamation. Anyone who does that is a planner at heart, and we appreciate that very much. Thank you for, for the words. I've been with planning only a few short weeks, but in that time, a couple of things really strike me. One, the intense pace of the work that flows through that department. It's really impressive to see how fast things come through and how we are constantly, as you say, adapting to help develop this community. And two is the intense commitment of the staff there to build a community, to make life better. It's really impressive. It's a great group to, to be with, and I'm really excited and honored to be a part of that group. I'd also, if I might, like to introduce Andy Derling, who is the President of the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association, and our very own Robert Summerfield, who is the Vice President of the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association.[1367.33][1367.33][applause]
If it's all right. Yes. Thank you very much. As Tom mentioned, my name's Andy Derling. I'm the President for the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association. Mr. Councilman, Council, thank you very much for, for this proclamation today, recognizing October is National Planning Month. The American Planning Association at its core is an educational organization. We provide educational opportunities and support to communities, from professional planners and the planning staff and consultants, to the planning officials like yourselves, and even down to the citizen planners that sit on maybe your neighborhood board. So across the board, planning is important to the state of Nevada, and as we look at this pesky recession in our rearview mirror, and our state is poised for growth again, planning will play a paramount role in our sustained success in that. So we appreciate this City Council's support of our chapter. Many of your staff have currently served and have served in the past on our chapter board, so we're very appreciative of your support. Tom didn't mention that actually today, as we're wrapping up our state conference, it's right here in downtown Las Vegas. This is the third year, or the third time in a row, we switch between north and south, but the third time in a row that we've been in beautiful downtown Las Vegas. And just on a personal note, as a, as a local kid growing up here in Las Vegas, and now as a professional planner, I'm very appreciative of the growth that, that you all had to plan for over these many years and how this, the organized growth of the city has led to a very successful metropolitan area, as you mentioned. So on behalf of the Nevada Chapter, thank you very much for, for your proclamation today.[1468.11][1468.11][applause]
Thank you very much. Well, we're delighted to have had the state president here for this, and it's lucky we're here. We probably should have promoted your conference a little more, but it's ending today, and so we wish, where is it being held? At the D Hotel Downtown, around Third and Fremont. Well, thank you very much. Tom, I'll present this to you, and I'm going to, what I'm going to do is basically read a couple of the paragraphs because it's a lengthy but rich proclamation, because it's, it's full of important information, but the thing is, I think the first and the last couple of paragraphs really make, make it sense. "Change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live." And down to the bottom, a key component of this is, "We recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional, community, and regional planners of the city of Las Vegas, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by you professionals. Therefore, the Mayor and the Las Vegas City Council does hereby recognize October 2014 as Community Planning Month in the city of Las Vegas. National Community Planning Month, and it is signed by the Mayor and the entire Council." Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you.[1556.23][1556.23][applause]
A photo. A photo op. May I stand? Oh, all right. Great. Thank you. Congratulations. Great. Thank you. Thank you for what you do. We're very grateful. Okay, we are gonna take a quick recess while we move the podium, and we will begin promptly Okay, there's a motion, and please vote and please post. Yes. Please, Councilman Barlow, please do so.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Today I have with me the distinct honor of two young ladies who are serving as my student interns for the semester. To my immediate right is Pamela Zamora, who is representing Las Vegas High School, and to my immediate left I have Cherry Zhou, and she is an exchange student from China from a small town outside of Beijing. And so I would just like for them to say a few words in regards to their time with us here today and what they expect to learn at the city government. So we'll start with Pamela.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say good morning. What I'd like to take out of this experience is just to know a little bit more about Las Vegas and where I'm from, and this experience is going to help me with my future career. I've always wanted to be part of something like this, which is in government and politics, so this will help me not only take experience but just know a little bit more of what I'd be doing in the future. Thank you.
And I failed to mention that Cherry Zhou, she's a student at Mountain View Christian Academy, and she's an exchange student, as I mentioned, from China, so Cherry Zhou.
Hi, my name is Cherry, and I'm from China, and this is my second year I come to America. And this is, I think this is a very good opportunity for me and come to the city of Las Vegas and have a chance and a good experience for me, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmen and ladies. All right, agenda item 37, administrative presentation by staff on Friday customer service coverage for City Hall Development Services Center, DSC, and an update on the status of the Development Services Process, DSP implementation. This is in reference to all wards. And so who?
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I'm Armando Sanchez, Deputy City Manager. Before I start my presentation, I'd like to recognize, before I start my presentation on the customer service levels that we provide here at City Hall and at the Development Services Center on Fridays, I'd like to introduce the team that actually helped put together this presentation together, but also implemented many of the strategies that got us to a level of point where we're achieving 80% of our customers' requirements or demands on Fridays. With that, I'd like to recognize my co-chair, Erin Keller. If you'll please stand, we recognize. Thank you very much for all that you've done.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you.
Without her, I don't think this project has been complete. She's been a godsend, she's done a great job, and I cannot thank her enough. I'd also ask if I, as I go around, if people are in the audience that are participating, if they please stand, I'd like to recognize Jorge Cervantes, Don Jacobson, Yolanda Palamo, Cheryl Ross, Christine Guthrie, Kathy Martinez, Esther O'Connor, Diana Paul, Patty McFannin Cho, Nicky Gomel, Claudia Lopez, Janet Di Ambroso, Susan Quintana, Rick Vermani, Chris Craig, Scott Marcus, Minerva Gomez, Sherri Bonnet, Luann Holmes, Patricia Cabrera, Dennis Kaplan, Scott Carter. And I'd also like to recognize the two, the four individuals that are working at our help desks, at our desk up front. It is Juan Lopez and Bernice Ramirez here at City Hall, and Becky Ferrera and Terry Cho at the Development Services Center. At the direction of this, now I'll get started with my presentation. At the direction of you, the city council, and the direction of our mayor, of our city, of our city manager, Betsy Fretwell, we did an in-depth evaluation of assessment of how we're providing customer service on Friday. We also looked at what our customers are coming in on Fridays, the walk-in customers, exactly what they wanted, make sure that we're meeting their expectations. What we found out is that we were doing some level of customer service. We were providing parking enforcement, code enforcement, inspections, barricade plan approval, park maintenance, community centers, construction management. However, we did notice there were gaps in our service, and you will see in the map on your screen, that, not the map, I meant the spreadsheet in front of you on your screen, we had 118 walk-in customers over the 16-week period. Total, we had 365 walk-in customers for that entire period at the City Hall. That equates to 23 walk-in customers per Friday. Majority of the people wanted to pay their store bills, and we were not able to do that because we were closed on Thursdays. I meant on Fridays, I'm sorry. And the same thing can be said about the Development Services Center. We had 330 walk-in customers on Fridays for that 16-week period. That equates to 21 walk-in customers on Fridays. The biggest customer, what they wanted to do was pay their license fees, and we were not allowed, we were not able to do that. And you will see later on in this presentation how we rectify that situation and our success rate. Major milestones, like I mentioned to you, at your direction and also the direction of our city manager, Betsy Fretwell, we formed a committee, we did an assessment of our needs and our gaps in service. We defined our ultimate goal, which was to present at least 90% or higher, meaning our demands of our customers on Fridays. On April, we completed the report, we rolled out the assessment, and we had action items. In May, we created an online directory, and what this allowed us to do, it allowed all internet users to be on the same page and providing information to our customers. It's an easy, accessible, I think it's very friendly, user-friendly, and you'll see later on, I had screenshots of it. It's a well-done job. And also what we did here at City Hall, we opened the information desk on Fridays. We had two individuals that were working in Parks and Recreation, I believe on the sixth floor. We moved them down to the first desk of City Hall, so when a customer comes in or a citizen comes in, they see a friendly city face, and they're able to help them. They're someone that's knowledgeable with city services and move them through the process. In June, we did the same thing with the DSC. We opened a help information desk at the Development Services Center, that's staffed by two individuals as well that were working on Fridays, one from Public Works and one in Building and Safety, so they're now located on the first floor, so our customers have a face-to-face interaction with the person instead of a machine or a kiosk. And we also kicked off our five initiatives, and that was to deploy an online directory, create a call center, payments, accept payments for business license and store billing. We also do online services, and we did kiosk online services to outreach in city facilities. In July, we installed a payment drop box so people can pay their business license, and this allows them, once they meet with our customer service rep, to go in there, they can either pay the person, or else they can just drop it in the box if there's no one there. And that allows them, what that allows, on Monday, when our staff comes in, they open the box, and they backdate the payment to that Friday so there'd be no late payments. So that relieves some of that problem. In August, thanks to Vinita Appleyard and Stan
Yesterday. And I don't know if anything came out, nothing came out of briefings yesterday in regards to this.
Okay. Please, thank you.
Vanetta Appleyard, Director of Finance. We've asked for the item to be stricken. We had a mistake that we included fire and IAF, fire and DNE. They have their own contract and their own provider. So we just need to take this back and redo the contract just to include the life signs type employees.
Okay. Why stricken versus an abeyance in order to bring this back?
We were not obeying because we actually have to change the wording. So we were advised by the clerk to just to strike and then bring it back next council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So please, there are three missing votes on, there we are. Would you please post? Thank you. That motion carries. Agenda item 12 for possible action to prove the final minutes by reference to the regular city council meeting of September 3rd, 2014. Mayor Protem may have a motion, please.
Move for approval?
This motion, please vote and please post. Thank you very much. Items 13 through 30 with the exception of 20 as just noted on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and recommended for approval by their departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward? Hearing none. Councilman Anthony?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 13 through 36.
Without 20.
Correct. Without 20.
Okay. There's a motion. And please vote and please post. Please, Councilman Barlow. Please do so.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Today I have with me the distinct honor of two young ladies who are serving as my student interns for the semester. To my immediate right is Pamela Zamora, who is representing Las Vegas High School. And to my immediate left, I have Cherry Jo. And she is an exchange student from China, from a small town outside of Beijing. And so I would just like for them to say a few words in regards to their time with us here today and what they expect to learn at the government. So we'll start with Pamela.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say good morning. What I'd like to take out of this experience is just to know a little bit more about Las Vegas and where I'm from. And this experience is going to help me with my future career. I've always wanted to be part of something like this, which is in government and politics. So this will help me not only take experience, but just know a little bit more of what I'd be doing in the future. Thank you.
And I failed to mention that Cherry Jo, she's a student at Mountain View Christian Academy. And she's an exchange student, as I mentioned, from China. So Cherry Jo.
Hi. My name is Cherry and I'm from China. And this is my second year I come to America. And this is, I think this is a very good opportunity for me and come to the city of Las Vegas and have a chance and a good experience for me. And thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmen ladies. All right. Agenda item 37, administrative presentation by staff on Friday customer service coverage with City Hall Development Services Center, DSC, and an update on the status of the Development Services Process, DSP implementation. This is in reference to all wards. And so who?
Good morning, Mayor. I'm Orlando Sanchez, Deputy City Manager. Before I start my presentation, I'd like to recognize, before I start my presentation on the customer service levels that we provide here at City Hall and at the Development Services Center on Fridays, I'd like to introduce the team that actually helped put together this presentation together, but also implemented many of the strategies that got us to a level of point where we're achieving 80% of our customers' requirements or demands on Fridays. With that, I'd like to recognize my co-chair, Erin Keller. If you'd please stand. We recognize. Thank you very much for all that you've done.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you.
Without her, I don't think this project has been complete. She's been a godsend. She's done a great job and I cannot thank her enough. I'd also ask if I, as I go around, if people are in the audience that are participating, if they'd please stand, I'd like to recognize Jorge Cervantes, Don Jacobson, Yolanda Palamo, Cheryl Ross, Christine Guthrie, Kathy Martinez, Esther O'Connor, Diana Paul, Patty McFannin Cho, Nicky Gomel, Claudia Lopez, Janet Di Ambroio, Susan Quintana, Rick Vermani, Chris Craig, Scott Marcus, Minerva Gomez, Sherri Bonnet, Luann Holmes, Patricia Cabrera, Dennis Kaplan, Scott Carter. And I'd also like to recognize the two, the four individuals that are working at our help desks, at our desk up front. It is Juan Lopez and Bernice Ramirez here at City Hall and Becky Ferrera and Terry Cho at the Development Services Center. At the direction of this, now I'll get started with my presentation. At the direction of you, the city, of the city council and the direction of our mayor, of our city manager, Betsy Fretwell, we did an in-depth evaluation of assessment of how we're providing customer service on Friday. We also looked at what our customers are coming in on Fridays, the walk-in customers, exactly what they wanted, make sure that we're meeting their expectations. What we found out is that we were doing some level of customer service. We were providing parking enforcement, code enforcement, inspections, barricade plan approval, park maintenance, community centers, construction management. However, we did notice there were gaps in our service. And you will see in the map on your screen, that, not the map, I meant the spreadsheet in front of you on your screen, we had 118 walk-in customers over the 16-week period. Total, we had 365 walk-in customers for that entire period at the City Hall. That equates to 23 walk-in customers per Friday. Majority of the people wanted to pay their store bills and we were not able to do that because we were closed on Thursdays. I meant on Fridays, I'm sorry. And the same thing can be said about the Development Services Center. We had 330 walk-in customers on Fridays for that 16-week period. That equates to 21 walk-in customers on Fridays. The biggest customer, what they wanted to do was pay their license fees and we were not allowed, we were not able to do that. And you will see later on in this presentation how we rectify that situation and our success rate. Major milestones, like I mentioned to you, at your direction and also the direction of our city manager, Betsy Fretwell, we formed a committee. We did an assessment of our needs and our gaps in service. We defined our ultimate goal, which was to present at least 90% or higher, meeting our demands of our customers on Fridays. On April, we completed the report. We rolled out the assessment and we had action items. In May, we created an online directory. And what this allowed us to do, it allowed all internet users to be on the same page and providing information to our customers. It's an easy, accessible, I think it's very friendly, user-friendly, and you'll see later on, I had screenshots of it. It's a well-done job. And also what we did here at City Hall, we opened the information desk on Fridays. We had two individuals that were working in Parks and Recreation, I believe, on the sixth floor. We moved them down to the first desk of City Hall. So when a customer comes in or a citizen comes in, they see a friendly city face and they're able to help them. They're someone that's knowledgeable with city services and move them through the process. In June, we did the same thing with the DSC. We opened a help information desk at the Development Services Center. That's staffed by two individuals as well that were working on Fridays, one from Public Works and one in Building and Safety. So they're now located in the first floor. So our customers have a face-to-face interaction with the person instead of a machine or a kiosk. And we also kicked off our five initiatives. And that was to deploy an online directory, create a call center, payments, accept payments for business license and store billing. We also do online services and we did kiosk online services to outreach in city facilities. In July, we installed a payment drop box so people can pay their business license. And this allows them, once they meet with our customer service rep, to go in there. They can either pay the person or else they can just drop it in the box if there's no one there. And that allows them, what that allows, on Monday, when our staff comes in, they open the box and they backdate the payment to that Friday so there'd be no late payments. So that relieves some of that problem. In August, thanks to Vanetta Appleyard and Randy Stanley and IT, they worked. So now our parking office across the street's able to accept store payments. And that alleviated all that issue that we had with parking payments, I meant with store payments. In September, we rolled out our directory. We test-drive it, we test drove it. We also gave training. I'm sure a lot of your special assistants have been trained up on it. If not, they will be shortly. And in October, it went live. I think it went live yesterday as a matter of fact. And here is a screenshot of what it looks like. It's very customer-friendly. Simple, if you want to ask a question, you just simply type in your question, pay for a parking ticket, hit enter, and the screens populate. It says there's two areas you can do that. You can either go to Parking Division or to Municipal Courts if you have a court date. And here's another screenshot. And this shows what else is available on that directory. Like I said, it's very friendly, very user-friendly, very simple to use, and it's, we should have done this years ago. We have a people finder. You type in a person's name, it populates, it shows where they work and gives their number. Service directory, you can pull up a department and it gives the name of the department, the areas of responsibility, hours of operation, contact numbers and phone numbers. Regional services, instead of digging through a book, you just hit on that, you can get the Clark County Government Center, all the local governments, Henderson, State of Nevada, anything you want, it's on that. We also have a language translator where we have individuals within the city that speak several languages. And if we need language translators, you hit on that and we know who they are. And conference room reservations, we can book in our conference rooms and we can also do that for rental. And of course, we have a link to our city maps. So to sum things up, basically on Fridays, now what you get on a Friday, instead of getting a voicemail or an answer, a machine, you actually get to talk to a person. We do have a call center and that's located, of course, in the first floor of City Hall and at the Development Services Center. And the cool thing about that is we have a queuing system. So if the two individuals are busy here at City Hall, it queues over to the Development Services Center. So you should get responded to fairly quickly. And vice versa, if they're busy, it queues to the City Hall. So we should have constant communication with our citizens. We're able to accept payments through the drop box and also at the Parking Services Office, they can accept store payments. We also have information desk for walk-in. That's the information desk where we have the two individuals working here at City Hall and at the Development Services Center. We also have self-service computers that we're installing. They've been installed right now at the Development Services Center and that also helps for business license payment. If they're there, they can log on. Our friendly staff will show them how to use it, create an account for them, and they can pay online. We're also going to be moving forward with that here at City Hall in the HR in the first floor. And our ultimate goal, this is a 24-hour, seven-week operation, the city of Las Vegas, and our ultimate goal is to do as much as we can online, make it accessible every single day of the week, any time of the day, evening, wherever you want to get a hold of us. I'm going to turn it over to Jorge Cervantes and Rick Vermani, and they will give you a presentation on exactly what we're doing at the DSC to make our life easier for our customers and our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Orlando. I'm sorry, I jumped the gun. I forgot to mention the most important thing, the results. What have all these efforts come to? What did we get out of it? What are the outcomes? The outcomes are this, as you'll see in front of you, when we first started this process in March of this year, we were able to meet the demands of our customers, a little over 20%. As you can see now, in August, we're meeting over 80% of the customers that walk in their requirements. You'll notice the downtick right before August, and that's basically when people have their store payments overdue. And we did not have that agreement with parking enforcement to accept payments. So we accept this trend to continue to grow above 90 and hopefully get close to 100%. The same thing is true with the Development Services Center. We're a little bit over 20%, we were able to assist by the things that we implemented. Now we're able to assist over 80%. You'll see the downtick again in, right before August. And that was a result of people's business license coming due, and there was no one there to accept them. Now that we have these processes in place, we're at 82% and we expect that to continue to grow. And we're hopefully get to over 90 and close to 100%. So I think with a lot of creativity, a lot of initiative, and I thank the team because they've done a fantastic job on top of their regular work that we throw on them. So I think we're meeting the demands of our citizens on Fridays and we will continue to do improvement because there's always room for improvement and we will continue to look for ways to improve. Now this time, I will turn it over to Jorge and to Rick Vermani.
Great report. Thank you, Orlando.
Good morning. Jorge Cervantes, Secretary of Director for Community Development. Every year we come and give you an update of where we are with the development service process. As you recall, back in '09, we brought in Bill Kershaw to look at operations and see how we're, evaluate how we're doing as far as providing the customer demand, customers out there. Mr. Kershaw came up with 91 recommendations how we could better our services out there. Over the last couple of years, we've gone through some both process and technology changes to help with that service. And so this is an update where we are as far as that. Before that, I wanted to introduce Rick Vermani. We hired Rick a couple of years ago as a consultant to help us with identifying what those needs are and those solutions to meet those needs. We have now, as we transition from the needs analysis into the implementation of the technology and the processes, we've hired Rick as a permanent city employee. And so now he's our Development Service System Manager that's overseeing a lot of this. So Rick will be given an update of where we are with some of these services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jorge. And thank you to the city staff and support that I've had here. As Jorge mentioned, it's almost actually three years to the day that I came on as a consultant. And I've been a consultant for 18 years. I've loved working here at the city so much that now I'm part of the staff after 18 years of being an independent consultant. So I'm very proud to have worked with over 150 people. So what have we done so far with the DSP? I want to put out a simple matrix to show you. If we look at the business processes at a very 30,000-foot level, we have the business licensing functions, which are general licensing, privileged licensing and license enforcement. We have the planning processes of pre-application and entitlement processes. And then we have the building and safety functions as well as the fire enforcement functions. So if these are the development functions at a 30,000-foot level, the main thing that we are driving for is to improve processes across the board. Improve processes in a manner that will provide better customer service and more efficiency both on the customer side as well as the side of the city staff. So we are migrating from Hanson to Infore to do that. And as this matrix comes up, you'll see how far along we are. In addition to that, the next key element is to provide online customer services. I know this presentation began focusing on Friday customer service, which is covering a very short time span. If you look at what our goals are as far as the DSP goes, it's 24/7. We want the city to be open online 24/7, accepting every possible service here. And you'll see in the next two years, that's what we want to achieve, is to make every service available 24/7 online. So it goes far beyond just looking at inline services. And then we have the telephony customer service. This is IVR. This is automated customer response via phone. Very popular service for the developers because they do a lot of stuff from the field where they do not have computers, but they have a phone. And then we have the electronic plans review, which allows us to stop taking paper plans and streamlining the process of reviewing these plans in parallel as opposed to one after the other. And finally, the mobile staff solution, providing the staff with up-to-date, modernized mobile solutions in the field that provides real-time input of data as well as real-time reporting back to the customers. So if we look at these functions on the left side and across the top, we have all the technology that we want to cover, we can draw a matrix across that shows us what we need to cover. This is the ground that we need to cover. So what have we done so far? What have we completed? And what is an interim solution? Let's take a look at that really quickly. We have finished the general business licensing and privileged business licensing process redesign with Infore. We have moved them into the Infore system and they have actually set a stellar record in terms of how well that project was executed. Staff involvement was fantastic and they have set the bar high for the rest of the team. We have also rolled out interim online services, and I'll explain why they are interim here in a minute. Then we are in the process of implementing license enforcement right now, which is getting ready to roll out in a month or so. As well as that, we have implemented in a partial fashion, the electronic plans review for planning. All the agenda items for the planning reviews are now coming through CLVE plans, what we call CLVE plans, which is our electronic plans review system. We are also in the process of implementing that for permitting on the building side. We have put interim solutions that have been in place for online payment and other functions for inspections. Those have been in place for a couple of years now. And we have the same parallel solutions in the IVR or interactive voice response systems. Finally, we have interim PC-based. These are tablet PCs that are being used out in the field by the inspectors and others who are working in the field. And I'll explain why those are also interim. So if we look at this, really the goal is to integrate. What we have done so far has been mostly piecemeal based on specific needs of a department or a customer group. We have not taken an integrated look at all of this. So that's what's different about the, in our DSP. We are moving forward with an integrated view. We're looking forward to making this an enterprise-wide solution across the board on the customer function specifically. So just to give you an idea, what response have we had from the online services so far that we have? Some of them are interim, like I said, but still we are seeing that with development payments online, just from April 13 last year, we have seen a growth from 10% to 30%. This is validation that the customers out there want online services and they're growing fast. Another, applying for permits online. This is something we launched for over-the-counter permits only. Last year, we launched this in October. We have seen a stellar growth from 5% all the way up to 40% in just a matter of months. And yet again, this is a function that we've had for a while. It's the scheduling of inspections online. And just to give you an idea, even this has been growing in the last year from 40 to 50%. So we continue to see increase in online services. The point of it being that that's where our focus in terms of customer functions should be going forward. So this is a map of what we have covered. If you can see, all the white areas, that is areas where there is still massive opportunity to improve and integrate even further. So what are we going to do in Phase One? We're going to do this in two phases. Phase One, we're going to remove the interim solutions in the building and safety as well as the fire areas, the core functions. And we are going to implement integrated across-the-board solutions. So this is the first time in the last 10 years that the city has taken a look like this. In fact, even when it was done, before it was done in independent departmental projects, not in an integrated Development Services Center where everything was being looked at together. So that's what differentiates what we're trying to do here from what we've done in the past. And in Phase Two, we will remove the interim functions in the other areas and implement covering the entire gamut of needs. So that's what we have going on.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
That's great. When did we anticipate this being done?
That leads perfectly into my next slide, is the timeline for Phase One and Phase Two.
I'm looking at your next slide.
So here, if you look at this timeline, we are planning to integrate the building and safety functions as well as the fire prevention functions in Phase One of this project purely because of managing change. If we could manage all the change we want in one fell swoop, we would do it. But we are looking to do this in two phases because we need to manage the change organization-wide. Then we will be done with that Phase One by March of 2016. So we're starting in January next year, and in 15 months, we'll have that in place. And then we start Phase Two and complete that by middle of 2017.
Mayor?
Yes, please. Continue.
Does that answer your question?
Why is it taking so long?
Well, there's--
Let me finish. All the talent that you have at your, in your toolbox and all the wonderful people that this city has and brainiacs that can make this happen. I guess I'm just, I love where we're going and what you guys have already done. You know that. And this is phenomenal. But why does it take so long to get there? I guess is my question to you.
Councilman, the reason why we are taking this planned approach to it is twofold. I always say that computers always do what you tell them to do. People do not always do what you tell them to do. So if it was purely systems, it would be easy to do in half the time. But we have to take into account planning from a training standpoint, design based on what the city staff can do and want to do. So there is still now detailed design involved and there's still a lot of specifics that need to be built into the software. This has to be done with collaboration with over 150 people involved in this effort. And so just planning those meetings after meetings to get all the input into the software, design it, build it, and then train and roll it out. That's what takes time.
Okay. Then Mayor, if I may continue.
Please.
It's a people problem, not a computer problem.
Always.
People are slow and computers do what they tell them. I guess I want to ask Ms. Fretwell and her executive team, or maybe you guys know, is there any other city that's as far advanced as we are in putting things online for our residents or our customers to get to this point? Ms. Fretwell, do you know that?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm sure we can probably find out. Rick may have some examples of other places that are moving along. I think most cities struggle with this type of integration. And it's hard to explain, not to maybe go into too much detail, but when you've got 150 people trying to work to integrate some of these systems, it's not like their work stops. So, you know, we've got a resurgence, which is a good issue on request for planning and development permits. Our business licensing numbers have been increasing, all very good signs. But that also means that they're trying to do two things at once, or maybe more than two things at once. And let me say this, we're very aggressive in trying to streamline some of these timelines because they do take, what we're trying not to do is have perfect be the enemy of great. And that is very difficult because everybody's decided how they do what they do. And we're trying to take a system that has the skeleton associated with it of a good process and weave in how we do it through training and expectations based on your unique ordinances and all those other things to make it our own. Right, Rick?
Yes. And we did retain the services of Sierra Systems, a company that's foremost in implementing this same software, the core software package. And their consultants were on board for 16 weeks assessing our needs. These timelines are high-level timelines put forward by them based on what they have done in other jurisdictions. Also, I don't, I think what we are trying to do here, Councilman, is unprecedented because we are taking a far more integrated look to our development services. Other cities and jurisdictions tend to take a more fragmented look at things.
And that's what I want to highlight, again, through the Mayor, to you and to Ms. Fretwell and her team, that's what I want to highlight here. I think we are being aggressive. I think we are using cutting-edge technology. I think the city of Las Vegas is the cutting-edge leader when it comes to these kind of services at the fingertips of its residents.
Absolutely.
And I say that braggingly and boasting about how progressive we've been, as we as a city council have asked for many years, for our systems to be streamlined, to be more customer-friendly, to be more business-friendly. We're doing it. The results show that.
Yes.
Even the individuals that come in for a single permit are doing it online, business license application online, plans check online, streamlining that, making it across the board easy and accessible for Joe user, if that makes sense. So I commend you and look forward to hearing the rest of your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And just in wrapping up, I want to say that-- And just in wrapping up, I want to say that the number-one reason why initiatives like this fail is because of lack of executive and leadership support. And as the person heading up this effort in the next two years, I'm going to be back here if I feel like we need more support from the top because this is something that we need everybody in the city staff and leadership behind 100%. Thank you very much.
Question for you. Assessing all of this in your plan and knowing what we are current-- how we're currently staffed, do you and Mr. Cerrantes see change of people moving from place to place? And do you see need for how many extra in personnel?
Mayor, you know, we're seeing demand for service going up. And so one of the things that we're looking at, where's that opportunity for cross-functionality? And so we've got folks that right now may specialize in one thing, but can we try to do multiple things so as the demand grows between areas, we can shift resources around? And so part of what we're trying to do is not so much rely on people resources, but rely on technology resources to help us do more with less such that we use technology to use current bases to move around. And the reality is, over time, as demand goes up, we are going to have to staff up more to meet that demand. But right now, we're addressing it through a lot of technology implementation, through cross-training folks who do multiple functions at one time to cover that shortfall.
And will you in fact be doing the creation of the software? Or is that already in place? Or are you going to have to create that? And is that something you're capable through your departments to do that? Or do you have to do that totally and let IT do that?
It's a combination of both, Mayor, and that's kind of what this phase schedule shows. We have gone over the last years really to look at what are those needs, to access, how do we function, what are our processes? And are there other processes out there that can be more efficient than what we do? And so we've changed some of the process to better streamline operations, identify what those needs are. So over the next Phase One, Phase Two, it's identifying, okay, now we know what the needs are, let's develop the software, write the code, if you will, in the software to meet those demands and provide those functions. And so that's part of the lead time that it takes on this. Now that we know what the needs are, we need to develop code and software to meet those needs and streamline that operation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Ross, just to address a little bit of the implementation, you know, we've still got a ways to go, and we've got quite a bit. But the reality is, we've been able to accomplish quite a bit by putting in some interim solutions, by changing a lot of our process implementation. And so some of the accomplishments that we've been able to do just because of those changes are some of these. You know, if you look, starting us of January 2014, 100% of all the plans coming in through land entitlement, through planning, are now electronic. What that signifies is not only making it faster for us to process, but saving our customers some money. And you can see of 173 applications submitted this year, we've saved our customers about $270,000, both in time of not having to come down here by being able to submit online from their office, by saving them papers where before they had to give us six hard copies of a submittal. Now it's just a electronic file that gets sent to us. So those are the type of things that we're doing as we implement the additional phases. When we look at some of our land entitlement processes, these are the ones that had to go through planning commission first into the city council. We've been able to reduce those times from 104 days to 89, again, by changing processes. On the administrative side, stuff that our planning director has the authority to approve, that's gone from 48 days to 10 days. And again, all process changes and implementation of technology. When we look at our business license section, we've reduced the number of categories from 393 to 209. So what this means for our businesses before, because they serve multiple functions, instead of having four or five licenses that cost them four or five different fees, they may need one or two licenses, saving them some money in time having to come down and do that service. As Chris indicated, our online business applications really increased. And so it's gone from 18% to 45%. And so really, that's helped folks not have to come down here and spend time by being able to do it online. And those folks that do come in, we try to educate them by saying, you know, you could have done this online. By the way, here's a terminal we can help you get on. So next time when you got to renew it, we can save you a trip down here and let you do it online for those folks that don't know. Our business community out there is very savvy, and they're learning this real quick and picking up on it and taking advantage of it.
Wonderful.
In our building and safety department, 49% of over-the-counter permits, and these are the permits that are minor electrical permits, maybe a water hair replacement, can now be done online. And folks are taking advantage of it and doing it online, again, saving them trips coming down here. In fiscal year 14, 81% of the 6,400 building permits were done in eight business days. Now, these are set plans, they could be anywhere from one to two sheets to 150 sheets for a large development, a lot of effort to review those plans. 81% are done in eight business days. And that's with an increase in demand that we've seen of 33% in the last year. Again, using resources more efficiently, using technology without having to increase staff. And online payments for building permits has increased by 62%. This is folks that do the online permit for an over-the-counter, and they can print out their hard card online. So when an inspector comes, it's right there. Before they have to come down here and get the hard card, now you just print it out, put it there, the inspector comes and fills it out.
Fabulous.
On the field inspection side, we have the ability now for our inspectors to have a mobile solution, an interim. But a mobile solution, they do the inspection, they type it in, it downloads the information directly to our system. And so within an hour, and now they can know that I passed or not passed. And if I didn't pass, where would they have to initially to address? Immediate information to our customers, where the permit stands, where's inspection stands. And in fire services, they've done some changes where now the time has been reduced between 17 to 15% depending on the permit type on their review. And this is an interesting one. 100% of all the inspections that are called in are done on that same day. And that's a major achievement for them to see.
Unbelievable.
And so in conclusion, we've got a ways to go still. You know, certainly when we did this analysis back in '09, we identified a lot of opportunities. We're in the process of implementing to address all those opportunities. We think over the next couple of years, we're really going to be where we should be.
What are you doing, Mr. Cerrantes, to make it known to the world that these wonderful services are right there? Is there a banner or something that is shooting across our website or something and say, "Look what we're doing at DSS"?
We do. And if you go to the city's website, there's actually an icon that says Development Services. And all this information's on there, leads you right onto the online applications. In the development service center, we've got at every counter station, a flyer that has, "Here's the listing if everything's online." And our staff let people know, you know, next time, in case you want to save a trip down here, you know, we're always here to help you, we welcome you. But if you'd like to save a trip, by the way, you could do this online, here's the way how. So we try to educate as much as we can. We've got some videos that business licenses done that talks about their process that we're looking at streaming on the monitor stairs. So as folks are waiting, they can be viewing some of the things that could be done and other methods.
Well, and I have one more suggestion for you. You know, twice a year, we're putting out from economic development a flyer about downtown. It's not a flyer, it's a booklet with a map and everything, maybe a page or two in there about your services because we distribute them everywhere we go to give people who are interested and maybe something about development services in there and what you do. So I don't know who's in charge of that booklet.
Well, and the redevelopment agency produces that, but we can certainly work with Jorge and his team to try and integrate some of those development milestones and streamlining activities that we've got going on as well as key connection points into that document.
Yeah, because people who are looking to invest, I mean, I think when they look through to see what's going on and what kind of, what's happening in the downtown area or even in the wards, that this is available and they need to know about it.
Sure.
Yes, Councilman? And then you--
Thank you, Mayor. This is awesome. I mean, from where we began, when I began in 2005 to where we are today, this is light years ahead. And I need to brag some more. I mean, I think we are on the cutting edge, and Jorge, your team, and everybody that's working with you guys, making this so simple for people to use. The end of your report right there about those accomplishments is huge, huge, for where we've been and where we want to be. And I think we are that leading example in local government on paving the way to do that. So I'd be interested, and I'm not asking you to run out and get this data for me, you know, what other city is as far advanced as we are when it comes to this type of thing for our customers and our residents? I'd love to know that. I'd love to be number one in regards to customer service in all of these areas. So congratulations. Keep up the good work, and I'm looking forward to what you guys are going to produce.
Thank you. Councilman, Mayor Protam.
Thank you. You know, I'm looking at the building on the screen here, and that's a pretty good-sized building, and I don't know how many cars go back and forth on 95 there. I think it'd be nice to have a big electric sign up there piggybacking on what the mayor said because really, the most important thing is people have to know that this stuff is available. And when I was in South Korea, one of the cities I went to, their city hall had a huge television screen, not a-- I mean, it was a huge, right in the middle of their city hall, advertising everything that was happening there. So may not fit here, but I don't know, maybe it's something to look at. It's what a great way to advertise the stuff that's happening in that building because people are going to drive by there all the time and read what's happening, you know, get your business license online, do this online, and they're going to learn about it. So just throwing that out there--
You know, Councilman, interesting to say that, but actually, we're in the process of getting a price quote to do that. We've actually allocated funding to do that for the same reason. You know, we do have a lot of folks that drive by, we want to get that message out, what are ours operation, what's available online? And so we're in the process of doing that right now.
Well, you're way ahead of me as usual, so--
And I would, first of all, I want to thank you for noting the building name on two of the sides. There's another side that there's still needs in that title on it. You've done great. You put one from going west to east, and there's the one looking south. I think we're missing one east to west, or maybe it's north to south. I drove by and I thought I have to remember to call Mr. Cerrantes. More lettering until you get the flashy thing going. Yes, Councilwoman.
I agree with Councilman Ross in that we, since the time I've been on the council, we both came in about the same time. And since the time I've been on the council, the great leaps, you're leaving me further and further behind. I keep trying, trying to stay up with you. And as I've talked with people in the community, I have stated that I feel our city is by far further ahead in the use of technology in helping to meet the answers to questions that the public has. Would you agree with that?
I would, Councilwoman. And certainly, you know, with the assistance of our communication department and IT department, they're always there to assist and trying to see what is that next step that we can take forward? How can we facilitate for our folks to service with us? But you're right, they're always looking for that next technology that can help us assist that.
I mean, when I tell some people that live under the jurisdiction of other government agencies, what you can do here and how easily you can do it and what you can do from your cellphone and that, they're amazed. So I think what the mayor was talking about and getting the word out was, so, I may be wrong, but it's so that our people will know too. It isn't just publicity for the city. The key thing is, many of our residents still don't realize how easy all this is. And of course, I represent a ward where we have many senior citizens and they aren't as adept at the use of all this new technology. So maybe even having small groups from the senior citizen homes, which by the way are sort of clustered around where you are, it might be good to get them involved also. But I just wanted to say congratulations to you. You guys have done a great job. Jorge, every time you take over something, it turns out magnificently. I greatly appreciate that. I think what we do, need to do is work harder on getting the information out. We can't just send the information out on our stuff because those people usually are adept in doing it. We have to get it out other places so citizens know how easy they can get it. So maybe they'll do a nice story or something in the paper or maybe-- but something that shows, take any citizen that comes up and it's in trouble and doesn't know where to get the help, they know how they can get it so easily. We can show them that. So I just wanted to thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Great report.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 38, Report Regarding an Update on the General Fund Financial Performance for Fiscal Year 2014 for the City of Las Vegas in reference to all wards. And hello, Ms. Fretwell.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm just going to give some brief introductory remarks before I turn it over to our Director of Finance, Vanetta Appleyard. But I'm really proud of this report that Vanetta's going to give to you this morning. I think that it is a key indicator that we're really turning things around. And I just wanted to put it in perspective because a few of you are newer and didn't have to go through a lot of the things that we went through in 2008, '09, '10, et cetera, which were really, really rough years. So I thought it'd be good to kind of put it in perspective for a second. So at our May of 2000 budget hearing, we had our first five-year cumulative budget forecast, and we were forecasting about a $91 million deficit at that time. And I have to tell you just how wrong we were because we were really wrong. We had no idea how bad it was going to get. We already knew it was going to be bad, but we had no idea how bad. So we missed our general fund budget revenues by over $35 million in 2009. We were projecting $537 million in revenues, and we actually performed at 502. So $35 million we were off. Our forecast model predicted that our revenues in 2013 were going to be $673 million. Our actuals were $471. So we were off by $200 million. And you all know that in the intervening years, we were estimating a $400 million five-year structural shortfall, somewhere between $50 and $80 million a year in each of those five years. So I won't go into the story about all the things that we had to do to right the ship because I believe Vanetta's presentation will indicate that we adapted, and we adapted very quickly, using unfortunately, things like attrition, layoffs, concession bargaining, outsourcing where we needed to, and reorganizing and flattening the organization. So I think it's important to recognize that what's happening today is a very different picture. It's in stark comparison to those numbers that I just shared with you. And our 15 revenues are budgeted at $490 million. That's still $12 million lower than our actuals in 2009. In 2015, we have 489 fewer employees than we had at our peak in 2008. So the upshot of Vanetta's presentation this morning is to tell you that once again, we turned a deficit into a positive. We went from a $9 million budgeted deficit last year to a $2.2 million excess this year. Now, we're going through our audit. Our auditors will make Vanetta make some changes as we go along, I'm sure, but we feel really good about this finish. And this is two years in a row that we've been able to make those kinds of changes. And this year's a little bit different because in the past years, when we've been able to turn a deficit into a positive, it's almost all come completely from cutting expenditures and tightening our belt. This year, we have contribution from additional revenues in addition to being very cost-conscious and trying to save where we can save, even though you've allocated a higher level of budget. So we're doing both things, and those are actually turning the ship around in a very positive direction. And I believe it's going to have a dramatic impact on our budgeting going forward now that we've seen a lot more revenue stabilization. So what I'd like to do is turn it over to our Finance Director and have her go through the presentation, and she'll be happy to answer questions at the end, as will I. So thank you very much for your time.
And congratulations for your stewardesship. Unbelievable.
It's the whole team. It's all of these people in the audience. It's all of you. It's really being good fiscal stewards, and we do it together. But I appreciate the compliment, Mayor, but it's a team effort.
Thank you. Please, Ms. Appleyard.
Vanetta LPR, Director of Finance. As Betsy said, we came into this budget projecting, or we went into FY '14 with a budget of $9.7 million deficit, and we are finishing with a 2.2, or our current estimate is a 2.2 surplus. This is overall, we had a 1% increase in revenues. The biggest contributor again is CTAX. CTAX performed 5% better over FY '13, which was $12.8 million. And it performed $6 million better than what we budgeted. So again, that, CTAX was our big hero. We had a little bit of an offset to that. As you know, we've been monitoring muni courts revenues because of Metro's reorganization and/or its reprioritizing of citations. We showed, we did have a $4 million less in muni court revenues. But again, we have the good story to tell you that it was offset by revenue enhancements that you all started last year in the areas of fire, transports, recreational fees, business licensing, and building and safety. So coupled with the revenue enhancements and the performance in CTAX, we were able to not only finish 1% higher in revenue, but also recover from that $4 million deficit.
I did scan through the PowerPoints. I don't think there's an answer here. What has management been looking at now at the muni court? Is that under advisement now to reevaluate and restructure or what?
And what I, my understanding is that the muni court staff has been talking to Metro. They are going to start going more to the citation revenues. Right now, in the first quarter, we're still seeing a little bit of a downturn. They've got two officers in a car right now because of some problems with their radios and some of-- but once they get their communication, their new communication system going, they've assured us that they're going to start redoing and redeploying toward the citation revenues.
And can you get back to us on that? Just see, you know, give it a couple of months and let us see how it's going?
Absolutely.
Sorry, didn't make--
We continue to monitor that very closely with the muni court staff. The other item is our expenses. We projected a 4% increase over FY '14-- The other item is our expenses. We projected a 4% increase over FY14. We were budgeting a 4% increase, which was about $20 million. We came in $11 million increase, so we had a 2% increase. So again, we saved about $9 million in expenses. So with this picture, it just demonstrates with our general fund revenues, it gives you a picture of what it's made up of. So 52% is that consolidated tax, or $246 million property tax is again that 18%. Licenses is 16, and our other fees, which is charges for services and fees is 12. Keeping in mind consolidated tax and property tax make up 70% of our revenues, and those we have the least influence over because they're dictated by statute. So the ones that we have some influence over, the licenses and the other, is where we're doing those revenue enhancements. Speaking of consolidated tax, we wanted to show you that over this economic downturn, our high was $264 million in consolidated tax in FY16. That dropped to a low of $202 in FY14. That was $60 million less than at its peak, a 12% drop. We can see that it's coming back right now, and it's performing, we're at 246 right now in FY14. We're still 7% below the high, which is 18 million below that high of 2006. And in FY15, our budget, we're showing 253, which is still 4% below or 11% below the high. The one thing we wanted to point out about the budget, this is the budget as filed. As we go through our financial oversight and our budget planning, we hope that, to improve that picture and give you a better forecast for FY15. On the non-C-Tax revenues, the other pieces of the pie that we talked about, you can see property tax. In FY9, our property tax was as high as $135 million. Again, that's compared to the $89 million that we're seeing today. And one of the things that you can see through FY13, '14, and '15, it's remaining relatively stable. And that's basically due because of the abatement is starting to build up again, and we have that 3% cap. In FY14, we were having, the abatement is about a $3.3 million number. In FY15, the abatement is $12 million. So that 3% cap is definitely keeping our property tax revenue down. The green bar is license and franchise. That's one of the areas where we've been making some revenue enhancements, and you can see the uptick in those revenues is definitely showing. And because of that, it's helping to offset some of that lower property tax number. And then our fees, the down, you can see that in FY14, that little downtick on the bar, that's really reflective of MuniCourt, and if it wasn't for the revenue enhancements, that downtick would have been a lot more.
Mayor.
Please.
If I may, go back to the previous slide.
Yes.
I'm looking at FY7, and just shy of a little bit over $40 million in fees. And in FY15, the fees are closer to $60 million. That's the adjustments that we made through the building and safety, planning and development, the increase of park fees, different things like that.
Correct.
To help offset our expenditures versus our revenues, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And how much of a difference did that play in regards to the overall balance of the budget?
When we looked at FY14, we believed that there's about $3 million in those revenue enhancements that's directly impacting FY14. So if you think about it, we've got a $2.2 million surplus. If we did not have that $3 million in revenue enhancements, we'd still be looking at a deficit in FY14.
Thank you.
And Councilman, let me just add that that revenue enhancement only began to take effect in early spring. So you're only seeing a partial year implementation and impact. So we anticipate a larger impact in next year's fiscal forecast, which Vanetta was referencing, that we're kind of gearing up to begin to bring to you back in an update in December.
Thank you, please.
On the expenditure side, we had $472 million in expenditures. Again, this was 2% over what we had in FY13. $256 million or 54% is our salary and benefits. Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department was $120.6 million, which is another 25%. The non-labor was 16%. We had budgeted, again, to have a 4% increase in that area. And because of the timing and implementation, we had a 2% increase over FY14, or FY13. So we didn't quite get all of our expansions done in this period.
Mayor, once again.
Yes, please, Council.
Thank you. But going to the debt services, Vanetta, the 3.7%, that's due to the outstanding current debt that we have on the books, correct?
Correct. That's about $17.4 million that the general fund handles as far as debt service goes.
And out of that $17 million of debt, if you were to break the debt out into a graph, what would be the largest section cut out? In what category would that debt be? Would it be parking? Would it be?
Actually, this, the debt service, the biggest portion of the debt service right now is the City Hall. So it is the City Hall debt that we took on into that, when we built the building. And I'm trying to remember, I think it's about $11 million of the debt service right now.
So 11 million of the 17, so it's over half?
Yes.
60, 70%?
Yes.
Thank you.
This just shows you the actual numbers. So when we started off with our budget, again, we had that $9 million, $9.7 million deficit. And we came to you in April thinking we were still going to be in that $6.9 million deficit position. But with C-Tax performance, and again, the revenue enhancements coming into play more than we had anticipated, we are finishing with the 2.2. And you can see again, too, that our expenditures are less than what we had anticipated, but again, a 2% increase over FY13. Our fund balance, we projected at $100 million when we did our budget. We are showing fund balance at $109 million. So that gives us excess beginning fund balance that will be available for augmentation as we move through our budget planning process. We plan to, there's a slide later on that reminds us of the budget policy, but just keeping in mind that that $9 million is available for one-time monies to be used going forward.
A question on the wages benefit, non-labor, all of that being down, is that because we're not quite through the year?
What happened, there's also, there's always a vacancy factor. We budget positions at 100%. And we don't always have all of those positions filled. So we do have a little bit of that attrition, and most of that is accounting for that vacancy factor that we have going throughout the year.
Thank you.
This one graph, I think, really tells the story, what Betsy was talking about, how we responded to the economic downturn. In FY8, we did have a surplus. We saw what was coming with the budget cuts, $115 million cumulative budget cuts. You see that we were able to try to balance the budget as best as possible. And when we look at FY13, even FY12, it was only like a $2 million negative, I say only. But $2 million negative, which we then turned around in FY13, and FY14 finishing. This FY15 number, again, represents the budget. Based on what we know now, we're hoping to come back to you in December with a better picture of what we estimate FY15 to look like. And hopefully, that will be above the red line, and we'll finish in the black as well. Again, the budget policy, when we have that excess beginning fund balance, we want to take into consideration the adequacy of our reserves, if you want to do unfunded liabilities, the OPEB liability, any kind of capital reprioritization that needs to be done. And again, operating expenditures such as increase to staff, as we've talked about the fact that our staffing is still down 17% from what it was. And one of the other unknowns is the Metro. We have not talked to Metro yet this year on their budget. So again, that will be another number that we'll be watching. And when we come back to you in December, we'll be able to have a much better idea of where we're headed. So with that, in November, we have the Financial Oversight Committee come in. Those are our outside, our outside people in the community that come and help us to tell us how they feel the economy's doing in their relative areas of discipline, and help us as we project our future growth. Then we will give you a final cafer after audit adjustments in December and do our budget kickoff. February is the review of the strategic plans. In March, we'll have a council workshop to file our tentative, April 15. And May 20 is our budget hearing, with our budget then being filed on June 1st with the Department of Taxation. And with that, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Very positive information. Any comments from Council or questions? We thank you for the report, and again, kudos to everyone, but especially to our city manager. You saw it. I remember Oscar came home and just depressed out of his gourd. So to have survived it and done as well, it's certainly remarkable leadership. And I know since Councilman Coffin and I came in together at 11, it was sort of at the low point. And we are just so proud to be on the upswing. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Appleyard. Okay, we will now go on then to Agenda Item Number 39, Report on the City of Las Vegas Park System. Oh, good.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Orlando Sanchez, Deputy City Manager. I will be giving you an overview of our park systems. And the areas I will be covering will be the 2013 community survey results, customer service requests, park condition and maintenance standards, tournament responsibility, league responsibilities, and the City of Las Vegas responsibility prior to turning over the field to the tournament and league for their private use. 2020 master plan park element, Tom Perrigo would give that one. And I will wrap it up with the capital recreational facilities, construction rehab projects over the last 10 years. Please, during the presentation, if you have any questions, please stop me. I've tried to answer the questions I can. If I'm not able to, I will turn it over to my capable, you know, my team works that work with me, Larry Hodginess, Steve Ford, Daphne Legarza. And I see they brought Patrick Smith, and of course, Tim Hacker. So that said, I'll get started with my presentation. But I also want to compliment our hardworking men and women from our departments. We have hundreds of thousands of users of our parks each and every single year. And for the amount of foot traffic that we get, and I guess not the best behaved people, they don't pick up their trash and put it where it should belong. They think public services is just over on the floor and that the, our people pick it up. In my opinion, they do a fantastic job, so I want to congratulate them. We've been pretty static in our staffing levels because of the budget, so I think we've been innovative, creative. We're also looking, my big push is demand staffing. We staff where the demand is. And I think right now, what we're looking for is just tweaking how we work. We're not perfect by no means. We're always looking for improvement. And you'll see at the end some of the recommendations that we're doing to address some of the concerns. We implemented a new, basically a new rating system of our parks, where we hold our field supervisors, our supervisors, managers, and division managers, and also deputies, deputy city manager. I'm held responsible to Betsy every time I go out to make sure they're okay. So we monitor these parks as much as possible. Now on to the presentation. As you can see, every year since 2010, we've done a community survey in this valley. And what this is too, to get information from our citizens, to see if we're providing the services that they want, and they appreciate, and they want to spend money on. We also gauge our service levels. And what this does, it benchmarks us against other municipalities of our size throughout the United States. We engaged a company by the name of ETC. They're a large company. They've been in business for 30 years. They've done 700 cities in 49 states. So they're very reputable, and their information is accurate. At our special council retreat on February 25th, February 14, 2014, we gave you a brief description of the community survey at that time. In summary, though, there was 3,600 surveys that were sent to our residents. We had 961 of our citizens respond for 95% level of confidence. This map here, it just shows exactly what we're trying to do. We wanted to penetrate, make sure we cover all sectors of the city. So it shows that 150 surveys were completed in each ward. So we get a pretty good representation of all council wards and citizens, and what they're seeing in our park systems, and the quality of the parks we provide. So there's no part of the city that was not covered. And the results of that survey, I think this speaks volumes for the hard work that our men and women do out in the field. Number of city parks, 74% of our citizens are satisfied, or very satisfied. The US average is 71%. Maintenance of sports fields, 72% of our citizens are satisfied or very satisfied. The US average is 54%.
On which one was 70, I'm sorry, the number of city parks, we have 74% satisfied or very, and the national average is 71%?
71, correct.
And on the maintenance of sports fields, ours was 72%, and the national average was what?
54%.
I'd like to ask a question there, too. Did we get a copy of the survey that they sent out and with all the specific aspects of it? Something is not coordinating here, I know with the ward I represent, and I know with a couple of others in wards. And I just would like to see what went out. And I know it's supposed to be a recognized group and very great and all that sort of stuff, but I also know how surveys go, so.
Wait, Councilwoman, it's a national survey, and yes, we did provide it to every office before we sent it out. And we can get you your ward-specific data for you if you would like. I know we distributed that to you back in February, but we can get it to you again.
Well, I can't, well, maybe I could find it. I have a folder for parks.
It's no problem. I don't mind getting it to you, but it was, every year when we go through this process, we hand out in a briefing our, all the questions that are going to be asked, and go over the methodology. And then every once in a while, we might add a couple of little questions related to citizen engagement or something like that, that diversifies the survey a little bit. But we keep all the other questions very standardized so that we can get the benchmark data from the other communities.
I know in one of the other ones we had done by UNLV, there were some questions, I think that Councilwoman Barlow had picked up on that. You may remember that. That wasn't on Parks, by the way.
That was quite a while ago.
Yes, it was.
We've been going with a consistent national survey for the last, probably since 2010, maybe 2011.
Would you send another copy of that to me also? Because again, as I said, and after we had our CMO briefing, I went over everything again to see if, you know, the information I was getting was accurate. And so far, I found out it was accurate in some of the situations with the parks in Ward 1. And you know, I've been saying things about park maintenance for a long time. And to have a 72% rate of approval, I, do those people use the parks a lot? You know, I don't know. I'll have to go back to what you give me.
Absolutely. We'll be happy to get that to you.
But I'll take that, and I'll appreciate that very much.
Sure, no problem.
But at this particular time, I think this is, I mean, tremendously significant, because having had all these wards, ward meetings, neighborhood meetings, and the rumors that are out there, and people picking up on certain things, I think that this is a national survey, and the specifics, I'm going to ask, along with Councilwoman, in my office, to find anything. It's a needle in a haystack. Love to see the copy specific, if you wouldn't mind, it may be other council people. I do recall it in February or March, whenever that was. But I think, you know, there's just, there's so much misinformation out in the community. And so to have valid information, what's valid, and listening to the comment that Councilwoman Barlow had said about the UNLV survey.
Mayor, maybe what we can do is get that whole report together again for everybody, because it doesn't just cover parks. It covers the whole array of city services. And, you know, that way you can look at it. It has everything from streets and sanitation to parks, parks maintenance, et cetera. Happy to get you that, the methodology. That whole report explains.
Well, the whole report is highly significant, but just having gone through these six ward meetings and listening to our constituents who are particularly focused on parks, that's why, I mean, to me, I just want to see that piece. I mean, I'd welcome the rest of it again, too.
I'm happy to get you what you need. Absolutely. I'll get it to all the offices.
And the ones that I have mentioned in the past, which Orlando went out and checked right away, and improvement was made in two days, but the information I had was accurate. And everyone so far, now I don't know about the ones this week or last week, so far, what I've had is accurate. And I, so it doesn't match up with what I'm seeing, and I just would like to make sure. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, address Orlando.
Oh, there.
A Councilwoman is absolutely right. We did notice some deficiency in our service levels, and we've been addressing that. We have maintenance standards now. We educated our staff, our expectations, what they're supposed to do on a daily, daily, each and every single day, what they do weekly, what they do quarterly. It's well monitored. I give a lot of credit to Daphne Legarza and her team. They really went out there and they took this thing. took this thing by the bull by the horns. Larry's been instrumental, making sure that his team is making sure that we're taking this serious, and we're not perfect by no means, and if we have little blips, we need to hear about those, because we make adjustments accordingly.
When did that start, if I just might ask? When did you start having those meetings?
If I could, a lot of this information is covered in Orlando's presentation a little bit later, some of the maintenance standards and those things, it might answer some of the questions.
No, I understand that part, but just, when did they start?
It started actually about a year ago, but we actually implemented fully in July.
So a year ago, you had all of the programs set that you were going to closely monitor the parks?
No, it actually started in July of this year, of this year.
Of this year, oh, July?
Correct, July, this year.
Okay, then you were only talking about three, four months, then when was the survey taken?
Survey was taken, and this one that you're looking at right now was taken in November, September, November twenty thirteen.
Okay, thank you.
But we have a new survey going out every year, we have one going out now, as a matter of fact. And one additional thing, the survey itself, we posted it, because transparency is big for the city, we have it posted in the internet and on the intranet, so it is out there live for people to view it if they like.
Thank you. Councilman Beers has a comment or question, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilwoman Tarkany and I had a briefing with Daphne Legarza and her troops, I'm thinking it was, so it was about July, it was about the time they implemented this, pardon me, and I was pretty impressed. You may want to request a similar briefing from Daphne on the new system that she's spearheading to systemize the man, the maintenance and upkeep of the parks.
I think that's an excellent idea, because we're talking about three months, it's been an operation three months, and I would like to see that, because also, there might be things we're aware of we could share, too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mayor, is it okay?
Thank you, yes, please proceed. Thank you.
The next one is just basically a picture of the data that you were discussing before, and we were not, I was not able to get the information that Councilmember Beers brought at briefing to give us a little bit more detailed map, so as soon as I get that, I will give it to you all, to present it to you, we're working on it. Now I just want to give you an overview, our hundred, we have a hundred and twenty, okay, I'm just going to, we have one thousand six hundred acres of parks, of landscape area that we're responsible for. One hundred and forty-four of that consists of facilities landscaping, one hundred and twelve median landscaping, eighty-two school sites landscaping. We have sixty-three rectangular fields, twenty-seven of those are synthetic, we have fifty-two diamond fields, one of that infill is synthetic turf.
Could I ask you? Could you please just go back one more, that went by quickly, I didn't get to see it, the previous one, just the previous one.
Just this one, okay. Yeah, and this one here, you'll see in this picture right here, is just a picture just showing the results of the surveys, and you'll see the light blue is just the satisfied individuals, and the dark blue is where they were very satisfied, the citizens, and that was from the survey results.
Where is that yellow neutral?
That yellow neutral, it's like, you really can't make it out on the screen, and I think that's what Councilman Beers was hitting on, so it's right over there, I would say it's probably in Councilman Barlow's ward, that white, like, looks like an island off of, I can't even see the street names, but like I say, we'll get a better map on that.
No, I can see that, I can see that, I can see where it is now. Thank you.
Decatur, okay, I apologize for that.
Washington.
Decatur and Jones, it looks like. All right, back to this, fifty-two diamond fields, one synthetic infill. Also what we do, Performance Plus, you know, we always do measurements on how we perform as a city, we do our city report card, and we report out to the citizens and to you, of course, to make sure how we're doing our jobs. What we do is, we have in our Performance Plus, we have a measurement that gauges, we call them customer requests, but they're usually complaints that we receive, and customer complaints, we usually respond within forty-eight hours. You'll see in FY twelve, we had about three hundred and seventy-four complaints total, thirteen, three hundred and seventy-six, fourteen, three hundred and fifty-one. If you break that down, we have seventy-six parks within the City of Las Vegas, that equates to about five complaints per park per year. So that is a very, I'm not saying it's just an average, it's not saying some have more, some have less, but that's just an average overall park systems. So it's a very small amount of complaints or requests that we receive from our citizens, so what I take from that is they're very satisfied with the service delivery we're providing, always room for improvement, and we're always going to do that. This one here is just a picture, just shows what we do daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, our hardworking men and women, they power wash before pavilions rented, but we have to know about it, because there's a coordination, when we hear about it, we make sure it's power washed. We just do an amazing job just maintaining the assets we have for the volume of customers we have in our fields. This is a breakdown by task hours of where we spend our hours, you can see a majority of our time is on park cleaning, that's up forty-three percent. Like I mentioned before, we have a hundred, maybe I didn't, we have a hundred and twenty full-time employees working our parks, we have a budget of twenty-one million, of that is eleven million is for salary and benefits, we have six point five million that's fixed cost, and we have three point five million that's available for supplies and services, that's repair, minor repairs, and et cetera like that. In addition, we have the three million that we get from the bond that was retired from the room tax that we use for CIP projects, for replacement synthetic turf, basketball courts, tennis courts, and other areas we need. This one here, this is a busy slide, but this just shows, and I use this one as an example, baseball, softball, field maintenance standards and frequencies, this is basically for tournaments, what we do to prep them, but this holds true basically for all our parks, our sports parks, sports parks, and our passive parks. So what we do is, we clean restrooms daily, general area cleanup daily, empty trashcans daily, blow out dugouts, minimum quarterly, one-time quarter, yours needed, they let us know, believe me, blow out bleachers surrounding quarterly, pressure wash bleachers once a year, we mow two times a week, verticut two times a year, area and remove plugs three to four times a year, ground fertilizer application three times a year, foiler fertilized pesticide, herbicide, four to five times a year, et cetera. So there are a lot, there is a lot of work that's involved in maintaining these parks, it's just not as simple as watering and mowing the lawns, given the volume of people we have on it, and keeping the roots strong, and doing everything that we do, it requires a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of skill sets from our employees. What we expect of our tournament facility, when we prep these fields, we prep the fields in the condition we want to return to us, and the reason why we say that is basically, we're taking a public asset off of use, and we're giving it to a tournament or a league play for their private use, so no other City of Las Vegas resident can use that park. So what we do is, we expect them to field prep, and that's just basically lining the field, dragging the infill, watering the grass a little, just getting it wet. We clean the bathrooms prior to them taking occupancy of it, we expect the bathrooms to be re-cleaned and restocked by the time we leave, we do leave them restocked supplies there so they can stock during the tournament, we expect them to clean, empty the trashcans, put them in the dumpsters, and reline the trashcans. And finally, we expect, just like any other good citizen, we expect them to pick up after themselves, pick up the trash, pick up the bottles, pick up the cans, and just put them in the receptacles. Other than that, it does not seem like a lot that we're asking our leagues and our, and our tournament people to use our assets. Now I'm going to turn it over to Tom Perrigo, he will give you an update on our twenty twenty master plan park element.
Before he does that, Mayor?
Yes.
Can I pick on Mr. Sanchez for a minute?
Yes. No, you may not pick on him, you may ask.
No, now what? Actually, through the mayor to you, Mr. Sanchez, to Mr. Hacker, actually, we've heard that, that this council, certainly I have, that some of these leagues are paying additional monies to maintain some of our fields. Is it possible to reach out to them and find out, I know Mountain Ridge has expressed that to me personally, and then the majestic field folks, this girls, girl softball league up there also had expressed to me, they're spending a significant amount of money annually on upkeep of these fields, which kind of took me back, how could that be when, what this is what we're doing, and everything looks great? You know, so, can that happen? And I'm not asking, I mean, I know this isn't an agenda, but I'd like to get to the bottom of this once and for all, what they are paying, what they aren't paying, what we are doing, what we aren't doing, so we all have an understanding of where we are with that, through the mayor, for the mayor's permission, Mr. Hacker.
Hi. Through the mayor, Tim Hacker, for the record, we, we've heard that same, or we've had that same conversation with those user groups, I think decisions were made, you know, numerous years ago to help defray some of the expenses and the challenges of providing a certain level of service or desired level of service, and, and I think some of the leagues have really, because of their type of use and their preferences, you know, they, they've set a standard, and they're, and they have, whether they're happy about paying for it or not, they, they are. And, and so we could reach out, that's something that we have, new to our contract this allocation season, was the ability to go in and audit, really sit down and look at their financials. We've had a few groups that have been very forthcoming with their financials, on the softball side of things, for example, and, and so we'll, we'll gather that information, we hope to gather that by the end of this allocation season, which really is February before the start of the next allocation season, so hopefully we'll get that and learn more, and definitely keep you in the loop.
And I would add to that, it might, might not be a good idea, but it might be a good idea, is after each season that, to have, maybe already do it, that you ask the league heads to fill out a questionnaire about, and going to all the different teams, so you get the input, and see if there's, you know, if it's outrageous complaints, or if in fact there's some real substance to what's, what the input is.
If I may, Mayor, that's, that's, you're reading our mind, that's definitely something that you've heard already, this group has been doing, and Parks and Recreation is going to mimic that, we, we definitely want to reach out to our customers and learn as much as we can, and, and, because we all strive, I mean, this organization, the leadership that you all have provided is to, to strive to attain improved level of services, and so we, we take that mantra to heart, and we're definitely going to start doing that. Again, the first step was to, you know, make sure that they're aware of what we're going to be asking, because people get a little sensitive when you start looking at their business, so they're aware of that now through this allocation season, we're going to continue to do that.
Great. The other question was in light of the comment made at the one-minute comments up front, we all have read the newspaper, and I know they're alarmist, the sky's falling, but maybe there's, there's truth in it, hopefully we are doing research and following up on the quality, there's so many different types of turf, and what, what truly is going on through the country, and what that evaluation is, so as you find out, do the research on that with the tire shreddings and everything that the turfs are made of, what you get from the accurate, from the government.
Mayor, as a matter of fact, Scott Adams brought that to our attention, he saw the article, I guess, in the New York Times or something, so as soon as we got that information, we started getting the reports from our person that installed them to make sure that we're safe. We're still working on it, and we'll get back to you on our findings.
And we have twenty-seven fields that artificial turf at this point?
Correct.
With any more in planning right now to be changed out this year?
Not at this moment, Mayor.
Okay, because I know, I mean, certainly all the pro teams, I mean, you look out on TV all the time, and you see them, so we have to have some really good data out there that obviously should come in to see if there's any validity to it, so please get back to us on that, too. Sorry, please go ahead.
Mayor, Mayor, hi.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Councilman Coffin.
Here I am, over in the left wing. I appreciate the presentation, and Orlando, and before we leave the parks element, I, I want to make sure that I understand some things that aren't actually in the, well, there are things in here that are good, that I understand, and there are some things that may not be here that I want to draw attention to, because one of the conclusions, I think, of the study, that was done before the satisfaction survey, was that the east side of town, which includes, it's mostly Ward Three with some Ward Five, is underserved, and it's not listed in here, and I, and I don't think, I'm not trying to throw bad, throw water on good news, because mostly this is very good news, but still, what are the plans of the city to try to redress this, this difference between, you know, the east side of town and the rest of the town?
Mayor, through you.
Please, I'm sorry, yes, I'm looking for what you're talking about.
What we're doing right now, and you'll hear from part, from Tom's presentation on, on the coverage areas, we're talking about from our park elements, but you're absolutely right, Councilman, there are some gaps in service areas that we're looking for, and that will be future areas, we're looking at pocket parks, and we're also looking for a couple of areas along the wash that we actually own land, that will be future funding, that you guys will vote on if you fund it up or down, that will be at, at your discretion, but we will, we will be moving forward in a couple of the areas that we're looking for that, in the upcoming years.
When the mayor and I came into office just three years and three, four months ago, we, we came into a situation where Huntridge Park was opened, because we made it a big campaign issue, so that was reopened after having been closed for a long time, one of your greatest and most historical neighborhood parks, so that is open, and I appreciate some improvements that have been made to it. And Mayfair Park, which nobody knows about, was a park that was closed, because a couple of neighbors complained about basketball noise. That park is still closed, and I know that we're hoping to find a way to pay for that, but that's a long time to wait for things to happen in our little town here, and that's not even an acre of land, as I recall, and so pocket parks, or whatever we want to call, you know, small neighborhood parks are the key, because there's no land, except for a few small parcels on the, on the east side. And when we look at these maps, and we look about satisfaction based upon the coverage, yellow circles and so on of the geography, it's easier to, to be satisfied with your parks when you live on the west side, and simply because Wards Two, Four, and Six are new, and they, the city council, have the wisdom to force the developers to put in parks, devote lots of acreage to parks. So you have a lot of private parks, in addition to our public parks, on that side of town. Wards One, Three, and Five are older, and they share this problem of having no place to go, and if you look at these lists, I would suggest everybody take a quick look at the expenses, what, what has been spent over the last ten or fifteen years, and you'll notice that in Wards One, Three, and Five, the majority of the columns, the categories have to do with rehab, and not very much for new, and Wards Two, Four, and Six are mostly new projects, because there was the land. Now, we're going to reach a point here real soon, you know, in the next few years, where, because we don't have a lot of land left in the city, that now Wards Two, Four, and Six are going to need rehab money, more than new money, so we'll all be in the same fix, and I don't know if we have planned for enough, you know, to, to do the job that we're going to need, I don't know if we have enough money, I think we're in a deficit, frankly, on our maintenance compared to our wear and tear, and I'm, I'm really worried about it, and I'll tell you another dimension, on the older part of town, they have become the living room, the bedroom, the bathroom, of some pretty unsavory characters that dominate the living conditions and try to run people out, and it just, just, you know, they're not good characters, and we have our marshals, we have our park staff that are working as hard as they can, as understaffed as they are, to try to keep this healthy and safe, but that worries me, too, so these are budgetary items that scare me, because we can't have our older parks taken over by, by bad elements of people. What can we do?
And Councilman, what we'll do for addressing, I guess, the gaps in service for our...
Can't hear you very well.
For the parks where we have gaps in service, what we'll do is, we'll work with planning, they identify where the gaps in the service are, and we'll see what kind of area we have, if we have land available in that area, but we'll work closely with planning to make sure that we're meeting the, the requirements from our twenty twenty master plan, our park element.
Mayor, might be helpful.
We have more people, I'm sorry, I just wanted to complete, oh, sorry, did you want to add something, Betsy?
I didn't know.
Just this part here, we have, not only have we got a lot of bums living in our parks, in the older part of town, and I think, you know, there's another term for that, service resistant, and, but the, the people that do want service are being cared for in many ways. We have some people now violating all the rules and feeding again in these parks, which draw people that like the food from other places, and I wish they wouldn't do it, because it really violates the neighbors, their security. You're bringing an element into the, into the neighborhoods that they sleep in their yards, and if they know they can get fed now, they sleep in their yards the night before and the night after, sleep in their yards, and they break in, and it's just hurting us real bad, and I know enforcement has upped, I know despite our short staffing, but these are things about parks that worry me, you don't see a number on those things, but that, I, I just don't think we have enough money, I think we're going to have to find new money to somehow cope with these service and safety issues. I hope to hear some steps, and I know it's going to take a plan, and I'm sorry, City Manager, for tuning over you there, but I, I want to hear what you had to say.
Please, Betsy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention a couple of things, I asked Tim Hacker to come up, because one of the parks you indicated you were concerned about, and very interested in creating a new, the Mayfair Park, we've been working with a nonprofit group that's taken that project on, and that's something that Mr. Hacker is working on, I'd like to have him real quickly put on the record where we are with that one. One, one of the other things that I think will really show, as Tom finishes his part of this presentation, are some of those areas that are, are underserved. I actually think we've done an incredible job of meeting a lot of the underserved needs over the last ten years of reinvestment, and there's been significant reinvestment in creating and rehabbing our park facilities, so that they can be useful in the, in the neighborhoods and to the public, for a variety of reasons, whether it's field use or passive, you know, place... you know, places to go have barbecues, et cetera. So I think we've made major inroads. I mean, we're not done, and like you said, Councilman, you know, we're always going to have to be reinvesting to some degree. I will tell you that a big driver in what was happening during the recession, and even prior to the recession really taking great hold, is that a lot of our inventory was getting old, and we needed to rehab them. And that did two things for us, by focusing on rehab versus new. We didn't have to expand staff to take care of it. In fact, we were better able to handle that park inventory with existing staff, because the newer stuff was less maintenance-intensive. And so, that's been a significant focus of the city over the last several years, is making what we have better instead of expanding new. You're absolutely right, with new development out in the suburbs, particularly in Ward Six, and even before that, you could probably say in Councilman Beers Ward, with Summerlin's investment, there was significant private investment in parks, or private requirement for investment in parks to meet our park standards. Those kinds of things may have happened to a smaller degree in some of the interior wards, but you're pretty much fully built out. There's some infill development that's happening in downtown, that, for instance, maybe creates some residential construction tax for you, Councilman Coffin, to be able to do some of these smaller neighborhood parks, which it's envisioned to support, when you're talking about a true pocket park, a true neighborhood park. That's what the regional, those residential construction tax funds are supposed to go for. I know that in some wards, it's, it's not as prolific. I know Councilwoman has shared her concern about the fact that she doesn't get a whole lot of residential construction tax to help invest, so that's why we've been investing general fund, funding into some of the older wards, because you, you don't have that resource available to you. So what I'd really like to ask is to have Tom go through the whole presentation, so you can see the coverage levels in the city. I think you'll be proud of them. I don't think we've hit a finish line. But that's exactly the kind of conversation we need to be having, because this helps us build the budget for you next year, whether it be capital or operational desires. And so, these kinds of presentations help us understand what's important to you, but we want to make sure that we get the facts out there, so that you have the latest information that's available, you can see where we're hitting our park standards, where we're not, where we have gaps in service, and where things maybe need to be refreshed or built anew. So I'd like to get Tom to go over that map, I think it's pretty telling.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, again, for the record, Tom Perigo, acting planning director. So when we think about planning for parks, there's really three measures we look at. One is park acreage per thousand. Do we have enough amenities in volume to serve the residents of our city? The other is coverage. Does everybody have access to a park within their neighborhood? And the third is, do we have the right amenities in the right place? And that's what we were talking about, a lot of the investment going into rehabbing some of the older parks, making sure that we're serving the community that, that is there today with the right kind of amenities, whether it's soccer fields, or play equipment, or whatever. So we've done a lot of that work. I'm going to focus on the first two. So when you go back to 1999, we had a population of about 470,000 people, we had about 780 park acres, 1.67 acres per thousand. We have a stated goal in our, in our park element of our master plan of 2.5 acres per thousand people. That goes back to the late 90s, when the state legislature created the Southern Nevada Strategic Planning Authority. That org, that group focused heavily on parks, and they set a regional standard, and we kind of adopted that as a standard that made sense for our city. You can see today, 600,000 people, 2,700 acres of parks, 4.5 park acres per thousand. We exceed the goal that we established back in the late 90s, and we exceed the goal that's in the master plan of the park element.
Is that a national standard in the city of our type and size?
That's an interesting question. They're, one of the national standards, it's anywhere from two and a half to 10 park acres per thousand, but in many areas, they're able to count open space where it's fully, they don't need irrigation, and, you know, so in a desert community like ours, 2.5 park acres per thousand is a very aggressive measure, in my opinion, because when we develop a park and create a place for people to recreate, it takes a lot of investment of maintenance and facilities and so on. And so hitting four and a half, five park acres per thousand is fantastic, and I think everybody can remember, in the, in the early 90s, when I was looking for a place to play with my kids, I would have to get in the car and drive down to one of our parks, right, one of our big regional parks, because they simply didn't exist in the neighborhoods. And look at today, I think we are very enviable in the West in terms of our, our parks that we provide to our citizens.
Mayor, I might also add that I was very involved in the Southern Nevada Strategic Planning Authority's activities, and one of the conversations that allowed us to land on the 2.5 as a regional standard was for the exact kind of parks that Tom is describing, ones that actually serve the neighborhoods, either from a regional, community, or a neighborhood standard. The reason why we landed on that was because many of the other communities would use things like our national recreation areas, Red Rock, for instance, Lake Mead, Valley of Fire, and others that are huge draws with incredible opportunity for outdoor recreation. We did not include that in the regional number, and we did that purposefully, because we didn't feel like we needed to take advantage of this vast acreage that surrounds us, although it does provide another recreational amenity that should not be undervalued, but we didn't feel like it really addressed the true needs of the community. So there was a lot of conversation among community leaders in 1997 to 1999 to establish that 2.5 acreage standard.
Okay, that was the, that was what I was curious about, the 4.54, is that very aggressive on part of the city?
Yeah, well, it is, and again, as Betsy was saying, if you compare apples to apples with how we measure things across cities, it is, it's a very impressive number for the types of parks that we measure. So what this looks like in terms of that other measure of level of service, coverage, does everybody have access to a park near their home? In 1999, less than 50%, less than half of our population were within a half mile of a park. Today, almost three-quarters of our population is within a half mile of a park. And you can see across wards, there's been a lot of investment to make sure that most people in, in each of the wards does have fairly good access to a park. And remember, during that time, from 1999 to today, we've added 140,000 people to our population, but we've increased park access within a half mile to 220,000 people. So that's a pretty impressive number. So here's what it looked like in 1999 in terms of, of park coverage at half-mile. This is a half-mile radius, and if you add a three-quarter mile radius, it, it shows that within a three-quarters of a mile, we had pretty good coverage. And here it is today. This is 2014, within, with a half-mile radius, that's that 75% of our population that is within a half mile of a park. And Orlando's going to go a little bit more into the, into the numbers and the, the investment that we've made, but you think about, there were a couple of things that came out of Southern Nevada Strategic Planning Authority, in addition to sort of setting some of those goals, but was, how do we do this? So there's two major things we did. We started requiring it be built with new development, and so that's why a lot of the newer areas have really good park coverage, and at the same time, working with our federal delegation, getting a lot of the land sale money to come back into our community. Nobody anticipated at the time that it would equal $2 billion, or whatever's come back for parks, natural areas, and trails, but we've invested a lot of that in the rehabilitations of our parks, and in trying to get some of the parks in the infill areas.
Excuse me, Mr. Perigo, is there a philosophy that's been a change as far as private developers? Has that been ongoing, that the private developers asked out at Sky, what is the one? Sky Mountain? I went to that presentation, and the developers talked about the parks they intended to put in their developments. Is there a philosophical, or a ratio, or something, as we move into undeveloped land and developers take it over, that the city's going to be responsible, or the developer, or a combination?
Tom, Tom has been integrally involved in negotiating almost every one of our development agreements in the last 20 years. Unfortunately, he and I had a lot of that duty together along the way, it probably drove him crazy, but meeting those park standards is one of the things that we negotiate the toughest on. That, and ensuring that we have adequate public safety facilities adjacent to the neighborhoods that need service. So I'll have Tom speak to that, because he's much more involved in that than I am at this point.
In terms of the, the development of the infrastructure concurrent with development of the community, absolutely, they're required to have adequate parks in the new Sky Canyon development, in fact, exceeding our standard in our, in our park element. The other part of your question was about, you know, the maintenance and that kind of stuff. Those are ongoing discussions, every development agreement is different. Some master developers want to retain that control over their community, and, and some don't, and so we work through all those agreements. If they're going to turn over to the, to the city, operations and maintenance is heavily involved in those discussions, and the design standards for those parks, to make sure they meet our standards, so that we're able to continue to maintain those.
Thank you.
And so here's what it looks like if you go out to a three-quarter mile radius. Today, 90% of the people in the city of Las Vegas live within three-quarters of a mile of a park, and everybody lives within a mile and a quarter of a park. So everybody has tremendous access, and I would argue that this is one of the reasons that perhaps our state has gone, and us being a major part of our state, obviously, has gone from being among the least healthy, to now we're ranked among the healthiest states in the country. And I think access to parks and recreation, and I, for me personally, when I go home and I see people jogging or riding their bike or going to the park, I'm inspired, and I get out there, because I want to be healthy, I want to be part of that community, and I think it's changing the culture, and I think it's had a big impact on the quality of life of our community, the investment we've made in these parks and providing this kind of access. And particularly with the land sale money from the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act, I was personally involved in acquiring acreage along the Las Vegas Wash, some of the least, the most challenged area in terms of park coverage, and the most challenging area to put parks in. One of those acquisitions, I worked with the Trust for Public Land to buy the land that the Doug Salby Park was built on. That took us about a year, was very complicated, but with the assistance of the Trust for Public Land, we got that done. There was a tremendous amount of resistance. You would think that everybody would want a new park in these areas, but there was tremendous resistance, not only within the city, but within the community, but now I would, I would say that that's one of our gems of our city. I think that's a fantastic park, and it's a great amenity for that community. There are two other properties along the Las Vegas Wash that we acquired that took tremendous amount of effort, but we got it done, and now those are opportunities for the future that will fill some of these holes. There are other examples like that, but right now, I'm going to turn it back over to Orlando, unless there are any questions.
Could I just ask a question, please? We've had the Red Rock Baptist Church that offered to let us use the land, lease it for a dollar for 90 years or whatever, and that would be something that you would be then looking at for maybe a pocket park in the neighborhoods? What I'm trying to say is, we don't have a whole lot of big land. Everything you said is true. We don't get the roof tax monies, because we're not having all that new construction, and we don't have the big developers who are putting in the parks themselves, so we're sort of behind in everything. But also, we have had some monies that have come in, as Betsy has tried to do, but you know, when you take two and a half million to refurbish an old park, which we did, and I greatly appreciate that, that isn't very much money when you're considering what you're doing, put in a new park, because it's got a lot of old stuff in it. And if people are willing to offer us land to use, would this be something you'd be looking for? That's what I'm asking.
Absolutely, Councilwoman, Mayor, through you. Those kinds of opportunities are something that we need to get better at, and we need to be more aggressive in seeking out partnerships, public, private, nonprofit, in order to provide that. There are, there are all kinds of opportunities out there to, to enter into these sorts of agreements, where it's a win-win for, for both parties, and it provides an amenity for the community, so.
So what we, we should do is get together and go out and talk with the pastor of the church who has the acreage behind there, and see what we can do. Okay, thank you.
Right. Thank you, Tom. The next slide, you'll see, this is our capital recreation construction, what we spent on our parks and our facilities. Between 2004, 2014, that's a 10-year period, the city constructed, rehabilitated 54 recreational facilities, the total investment of 443 million. Majority of this money all came from, this does not include operational improvements, this only includes large capital projects that we're doing. Funding came from SNPLMA, recreation bonds, residential construction tax grants, and general fund. These might be a little small for the viewing public, but you can see, we've just broken down by council wards of where the money went. In Ward One, there was 43,340,000 that was spent during that 10-year period. Majority of that money was spent on All-American, Rar Valley Community Center, and Garseide Bath Swimming Pool.
Excuse me, where, an All-American, I know we changed out turf this year, that went artificial. So where, that's not in this slide, where it was opened in '04? Is that where the 13 came in with the synthetics?
Correct. That's, that's where that, that's exactly where that came in.
So all of these charts will show upgrades as well?
Correct. If there, if there were capital improvements, yes.
Thank you.
These are over, this is over a period of years, right?
Correct, from 2004 to 2014. In Ward Two, there was 44,749,000. Majority of that money was spent on Calogz Air Park, and another one was Pavilion Pool Enclosure. Ward Three, there was 114,42,000. This was mostly spent in the Doolittle and the Lorenzi Park, and also Fifth Street School. Ward Four, there was 61,704,000. Majority of that was spent on Majestic Park and Lone Mountain Trail Bridge. Ward Five, 81,930,000 was spent. Majority of that was spent on Doolittle, Ed Fountain, Lorenzi Park, and Neon Boneyard. Ward Six, 97 million was spent, 422,000. Majority of that was spent on Centennial Hills Community Center and Centennial Hills Our current projects that we have on the books, as you can see in front of you, is Bob Baskin. We have 2 million for that renovation, Dexter Park renovation, 1.2 million, Angel Park Trail Connector, 300,000, Las Vegas Valley, Las Vegas Valley Wash, Las Vegas Wash Trail and Bridge, 4.7 million, Doug Salby Park Phase Two, 1.1 million, Las Vegas Wash Trail and Bridge, 5 million, Doolittle Park renovation, 2.6 million, Lorenzi Park, Phase Three, 100,000, Batway Trail, 6.7 million, Sunny Springs Shade Structure, 90,000, Teton Trail Park, 200,000, and Raptor Thunder Park Sidewalk, 100,000, for a total of 24,90,000 for these upcoming projects in the next year, year and a half. To close, I just want to just recap some of the things that we're doing. I think, like I said before, I really commend our, our hard-working men and women that are out in the field in the 110 degrees, and sometimes just working hard, all days and the, you know, hours of the day and night. Our satisfaction rate from benchmark against other large cities, we rate 71% from satisfied or very satisfied compared to 65. Maintenance of our sports fields, 72% versus 54%, and the number of parks we have, 74, and the U.S. average is 71. In addition, our complaints for our 76 parks that we have, we have 4.5 complaints on average in 2014, which is relatively low. We're proud of the service we provide. Our park coverage area, as you can see by Tom Perigo, we have fairly good park coverage. Like I say, there's always room for improvement, and we will, we will get there. Some of the areas, there are some weaknesses that we have, and we noticed there's some gaps in our service, and we will continue to look at those, and I know, Councilwoman, I thank you for bringing them to our attention, because that's how we learn. We're converting, we have part-time workers that work on the weekends, four of them, they're not very reliable, so we're going to convert those four into a permanent FTE, a full-time position, and give us more leverage, we can use that, that full-time person a little bit better. We're also going to be changing how we do practices on what we do for prepping before someone rents our pavilions. We already power wash them, but we're going to make sure that we get a little bit more detail in our power washing, and we're also going to reassign some of our facility, that we have assigned to our facilities, we're going to move them to our parks, and we'll readjust on how we take care of our facilities, because I think the number-one importance, of course, are fills that we provide to our citizens. Secondary, I hate to say this, comes our, our appearance of our, of our facilities. We're just adjusting, we're always readjusting, we're demand-driven. Our maintenance standards that we put on, and our ratings that we give our, our employees and our, our parks, you'll be seeing that coming up the next, probably next quarter, next two quarters. You'll see how we rate each car, each park, it needs to be a 90, 80, 70, A, B, C, D, and we'll go from there, and we'll evaluate them. And we also welcome ride-alongs with any mayor and council, if you want. When we go out with staff, we'd be more than happy to spend time with you. You can point out what you see in your parks, and we will address them. In addition, we're working with our staff to get a little bit more, they're proud already on, on what they do in our parks, but to make them a little bit more proud, we're going to put out a sign before you enter a park that says, "This park is maintained by Phil Supervisor X-Ray and his crew. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact this number." So we're reaching out as much as we possibly can to our citizens. So, we're reaching out as much as we possibly can to our citizens, and we're trying to give ownership to our employees to show them so they can be proud on the product that they present. That said, I'm done with my.
Do they have a way online to make comments or request something be attended to or to take a look at something? Easy access?
Yes, they do. We have it in our mobile app. If you just go into our mobile app, you can do complaints or file anything you want. It's real easy to use. Just have to download it and just put in your complaint, and it comes to us and we report. But one other thing is, the complaints we receive or citizen concerns that you elected, if you hear any, if you, please put that in Hanson instead of calling directly to supervisor or manager, because it's hard for us to track, because they just go out there and do it, and sometimes they don't track it. But if you put it in Hanson, we have a tracking mechanism to make sure that we're accomplishing the work that wants to be done that you're expecting of us. And that'll also reflect on our customer, on our performance plus measurements. So, it's kind of difficult to.
Mayor.
On my right first, and then my left?
I'd just like you to say that again, because I know me, and I'll call staff and have them do X, Y, Z. And then, it never gets put into Hanson for tracking purposes. So, that's what you're instructing us, because a lot of times, we're the first phone call made by a constituent. And then, of course, we're so proactive, we just pick up the phone and call whomever to get it done, and it gets done without tracking. Is that right? Is that what you're telling us?
It does, and sometimes our staff goes back and puts it back in Hanson, but sometimes it just doesn't work that way. It'd be a lot better if it was generated from Hanson.
So, where do you want the staff, when they receive a complaint, where do they, you want that to go?
We've trained up all your special assistants, and we'll give training again if they need to how to enter it into Hanson, but they're all trained up on it, and they should know how to enter the complaints into the system. And we'll be more than happy to do again if they need a refresher course.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow, you wanted to comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Orlando, I can appreciate you requesting the council to place that in Hanson, but let me just share with you the reality of what I face, specifically as I commute through my ward each and every day, and in particular on the weekend where a lot of dumping and illegal and illicit activities take place, you know, in some of the older areas and specifically the alleys, and you know this very well. You know, how would I place that in Hanson when in fact I need something to take place or be, you know, something to take place right away? Whether it be graffiti, or, for example, when someone left a boat, just dumped a boat in the middle of the street. You see what I'm saying? So, I mean, I appreciate you saying, you know, put it in Hanson, but in all cases, it doesn't fit when in fact we need to get that taken place immediately. And so, with that, when we're out on the streets, what I traditionally do is take a photo and send it, you know, to the director all the way down to the individual that's working the weekends, whether it be in the parks or building and safety, what have you, from a code enforcement standpoint. So, you know, how do we continue to, you know, understand your position as far as to take your recommendation under consideration, along with the reality of what needs to be taken place right away?
Okay. But Councilman, I think there's two ways. You can continue to do what you're doing, your normal practice, but whenever you come back and give that information to your special assistant, if they can enter into Hanson so we can have a tracking mechanism of it. I think there's two ways we can do it. Just give us a phone call like you typically do, but make sure your special assistant's aware of it, and they do the data entry inside Hanson after the fact, and that's where we have a tracking mechanism.
So, when I report it over the weekend, and I send it via email to everyone, just saying on Monday or whenever we return to the office to place it in Hanson twice, or I believe staff also places it over the weekend into Hanson as well, so.
Or if you just do it on your mobile app that you have on your phone, that tracks it as well, that gets entered into Hanson as well.
Right, because that's what I use. Right, that's what I use.
Councilman, if you use the app and you report a problem, that's basically what you go through, it dumps it into Hanson. That automatically gets in the queue. Then, call and say, "Hey, this can't wait till Monday. I need somebody to come deal with this right now." But what we can then do is we can track our time to service, which if it's never put into Hanson, we never even know that it happened, one, except for historical memory, right? Or, two, figure out how quickly it took for us to respond to that situation, whether it be emergent or not emergent. So, it's just an accountability tool for us to be able to make sure that some of the issues, like the ones that Councilwoman has been telling me about this week, about Essex Park and some of the other issues in her parks, it's important for us to be able to look at that data on a regular basis to know that it did or didn't get done. And if we never knew, then it's hard for us to track. So, it's really important for your special assistants to help us out in that regard so that we can maintain a good service level for you and your responsiveness to constituents. None of us like to get that, no offense, that email from you, Councilman Barlow, that says, "It's been three days. Where are y'all?" And so, we want to make sure.
For correction, it was three weeks.
Well, yes, three days is a little long in my book. So, yeah, and the thing is, is that if it's in that system, then it's going to flag for Orlando, or Daphne, or Steve, or Jerry Walker, whoever the right person is, to know, "Oh, it's been twenty-four hours. It's been twelve hours. It's been forty-eight hours." Then, they're better able to figure out what happened with that crew that was supposed to go there.
Right, and I appreciate that. And so, pushing it through the app the way that I've been doing it specifically over the weekend is.
If you do it in the app, if you're emailing people, if you're saying, "Snap, snap, send an email," that's not the app. We can talk about it later. But there's actually an app where you can report things. I do it all the time. I just put in "The Streetlights Out," and I'll tell you what, it's amazing. Our people are out there for twenty-four hours.
We're talking the same language in regards to the app. I just wanted to make sure that placing it inside the app, you know.
It works.
The disconnect, the disconnect of it not taking place right away, specifically when it's something that's blocking the roadway. Because what I'm hearing is, you know, it'll get taken place, it'll be addressed twenty-four, forty-eight, seventy-two hours, when in fact it needs to be done now. How do we keep the immediate element connected along with the tracking purposes for Hanson?
You know, I think that's something that we can look at to see if there's a way to kind of put an emergent thing on it. I'll give you an example. When we have the illegal vendors on the street corner selling whatever it is they're selling, well, if we don't send a licensing agent out right away or a code enforcement agent right away, they're gone within four, six hours, so you kind of missed your window of opportunity. And we need to make sure that we're able to respond in a timely manner to those kinds of complaints. So, let us double back on that, but I think Orlando's recommendation of put it in the app and then do what you normally do. Call Larry, call Orlando, call me, call whoever it is, and say, "Hey, I just reported a boat in the middle of the street." Then, we're going to get right on it.
I appreciate it.
Councilwoman, please.
From the information, Orlando, that's here that you've done, and from what Councilwoman Beers has said, I haven't evidently felt the effects yet of the three months in which you've had the reorganization. I think you've really tightened it up. It was something I mentioned in one CMO meeting that I tried to find out who was doing what when, and I couldn't. That's what you're doing. You're putting it down so you can now know who, it's not a nebulous thing. You know who's there at what time and is responsible, and I think that was one of the key things. So, I just wanted to say that I'm going to start a fresh leaf on this now, and I'm not going to nag unless I find something else, because I'm counting on you. This does sound good, and thank you very much. I know the citizens appreciate it.
Councilwoman, and I do want to thank you, because when you brought All-American Sports Park, I believe that's the one with all the dead trees to our attention.
Right.
You were absolutely one-hundred percent, and that was an eye-opener, because I don't get out in the field enough, and now I am. So, with that, I think if we just keep working together, we'll get you to exactly where you want to be.
And you know that what you did, you went out the next day, you saw the trees were dying, and you took care of it right away, and that's what you've now developed the team into doing, from my understanding. And I would like to have a chance to meet with you and go over, just as Councilwoman Beers did. Thank you.
Mayor.
Mayor, I just might want to.
Councilman Ross?
Go ahead. I'll wait till.
I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that Councilman Coffin brought up about, you know, how are we, how are we working to fill some of these gaps? First off, I think we're really fortunate that ninety percent of our population is within a mile and a quarter of a park. I think that's substantial. And to know that seventy-five percent, or nearly seventy-five percent, are within a three-quarters of a mile, that's incredible, too. I mean, this is great progress compared to the numbers that we were looking at a little more than a decade ago. And as I mentioned earlier, that doesn't mean that we're done. There are three projects that are in your capital plan right now that actually continue to fill some of those service gaps. Two of them are in Ward Three, one of them is in Ward One. They are on your capital plan. One is Craigan Park, to improve Craigan Park, which is in Ward One between Henson and Fulton near Hyde Park. The other is the Harris Trailhead, which is at Harris and Las Vegas Wash, and then the other is to continue the work on the Las Vegas Wash Park at Washington. So, all three of those projects in the map that we showed would continue to eliminate the gaps in service if we took those up. Those are the kinds of things that your staff looks at when we're building the recommended capital budget for you as we go forward, in addition to what we're hearing from you, that you get from feedback at community meetings or coffees with the mayor, or whatever it is that you may do to get that kind of feedback. So, we're trying to plug those gaps and move along to make sure that we're hitting those coverage areas as much as we can, and trying to ensure that when we can, we're programming the funding in a way that matches those plan guidelines. So, I think the one other thing that I would mention that's important is that all of those plans that you all adopt, you've got a public safety element plan on for consideration, right? You've adopted facilities plans, park master plans, et cetera. Our capital improvement plan follows those plans. Those plans are critically important. That's where you're getting the neighborhood feedback as they're built. We're getting your feedback, the feedback of your predecessors, and will probably dictate to some degree your successors' plans of action in your wards. And so, the thing is, is that those are really important decisions as we bring those forward to you, because they do drive our investment schedules going forward as funding becomes available. So, I just wanted to point out that, you know, with three projects, we could continue to plug some more of those gaps, and as the city continues to grow, further growth in the northwest and some of the infill development that's happening in the core of our city are going to create different kinds of demands. Our downtown plan is going to probably require some green space, because there's not a whole lot of it downtown. Not contemplated right now. So, these are the kinds of things that we're trying to adapt to and build systems that help address what you all feel are the key priorities for our city as we go forward. I'm happy to answer any questions. Orlando's done a great job, I think, covering all of this material, and Tom, and Larry, Daphne, Patrick, you guys did an incredible job pulling this together. Steve and Jorge, thank you so much for all the work you did to get ready for this presentation. Thank you.
No, thank you. I think it was very informative, and we've got open communication lines, and that's what's the most important thing, is for us, as we hear things and our staff hears and we're out in neighborhoods, that we have lines of communication that can be responded to within a reasonable amount of time. So, thank you all, and thank you entire staff on this. Really, it's a wonderful report. We'll continue to keep it nearby and refer to it. It does clarify some things. Yes, Councilman?
May I speak now?
You may now, you poor soul.
It's okay. I think Betsy took the words right out of my mouth in regards to coverage, the half-mile, the three-quarter mile. Tom, everyone's within a mile and a half of a recreational facility, a park in the city of Las Vegas, which I think is huge. And Betsy, you and your team look at other cities as well as to the amenities, and when you, the mayor was asking about parks and some of the private, some of them, talked about the Sky Canyon project, he's going to have a lot of big park elements. Those are wonderful amenities, especially in a master-planned community, or any community for that matter, in a city. And people look for that for their families. You know, like, gee, I know a park's going to be built over there, I really like that neighborhood, that's where I'm going to move into. So, I thank you for highlighting that again. I think the coverage is phenomenal. Number two, in my mind, and your team's over there, and I have to express my appreciation to them, Daphne, Steve, Ford, Larry Hogs, the entire team, Tim, you as well, Centennial Hills Community Center is a huge facility. And staff didn't realize how significant the landscaping issues were in maintaining that, and they, once they looked at that and said, "Oh, gee, we really got to maintain this." So, my hat's off to their team for taking care of Centennial Hills Community Center, that landscaping out there's got pretty outrageous at one point, and the facility itself. And to Daphne also, is the Tulley Springs Park Monument that's there now in the front. Good job for getting that there. I went and looked at it the other day, it looks fabulous. And Betsy, I like the fact that you guys, or reported that a supervisor's name is going to be attached to a park, because I think our employees want to be held accountable, and I think they need to be held accountable for the facility, the park, whether it's a park or a building or a facility in that matter, because it makes them better. It makes them better in what they do in their service to the citizens of this community. So, Mayor, just like you did, I appreciate all of you over there. Many of you I call first, and then I'll put it on my app so it gets into Hanson, but I'm still calling you first. If it's a 911, I'll dial 911. So, thank you, Mayor.
But, you know, I think it really does personalize the parks. I mean, what we try to do in everything, giving our residents a way to contact council and get communication quickly, I think by putting the names on that, really, it does personalize and make it seem a much more open give and take, so that's a great idea.
I think we've talked about this before, one of our values is ownership, and nothing speaks higher about ownership than having your name on a park that you're responsible for. And our people live it every day, they're very proud. I mean, you all remember that we recognized our employee of the year last year for exactly that.
Right.
The people that frequent that park know him by name, and they know that he takes great pride in making sure that that park stays in pristine condition. And that's the kind of ownership we need to have, regardless of the facility, regardless of the service we're delivering. That is living our values, and so, this is just another way to live our values.
Well, kudos to you all, and thank you very much. Great report. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Forty, report by staff regarding the process to evaluate medical marijuana compliance permits and special use permits. This is in reference to all wards. So, you're back?
I'm back.
You're here for the day. Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Tom Perrigo, Acting Planning Director, here with Karen Dudelson, Business License Manager. We have just a few slides to go over with you. This is the last time, I guess, we'll meet in a public meeting before we actually have the special hearings on the 28th and 29th. So, just to kind of go over a few things, the first meeting is October 28th at nine o'clock. There are twenty-one applications. The second meeting is October 29th at nine o'clock, and there are twenty-five applications. We do have a third meeting scheduled, just in the event that we need additional time on November 10th.
Just to go over where we are in the process, we have three steps. I'm sorry, Karen Dudelson, Business Licensing Manager. Thank you.
Thanks.
We have three steps in the licensing process. So, we have the initial issuance of the compliance permit, that includes the land use, and a review of the application and how it complies with your city codes. Then, the state will be doing their provisional certificates and issuing those. We expect those sometime the first part of November. And then, those applicants that receive both a compliance permit from the city council and a state provisional certificate will be forwarded through our privileged license process, and then those individuals will come back to you for suitability prior to them opening their businesses. As we reported at the last meeting, those directors' reports have been finalized. The technical reviews, as you all know, were done blind by various departments, so in all of those applications, security plans, operational plans, sign plans, all of those things were unidentified. So, they were given to the fire department, the building department, the public works department, looked at environmental plans, sustainability. Those things were not identified to an owner, they were taken out. So, all of that information has been compiled for you, as well as all of those issues on ownership and source of funding for your review. And then, we're down to today, making sure that we all, we have your direction on the format of those meetings so that we can make sure that we inform the applicants and that they are prepared that day to spend the amount of time that you want on presentations.
So, what we've, what we're presenting is with twenty-one or twenty-five applications in a single meeting, about twenty minutes per applicant, and we estimate that would be roughly a ten-hour meeting, but that depends on breaks, it depends on the number of public comments, so hopefully, we can accomplish this within ten hours. The way that we recommend breaking it down right now, when the items come up, is opening up, you know, opening them up together so that you can have a conversation about both of them. That way, there's one staff report, one report from the applicant, and then conversation, discussion among council. So, applicant presentation at five minutes, public comment, one minute per speaker, staff report, two minutes, and then 10 minutes for council deliberation. Now, of course, this, the ability to get through 20 or 25 applications within a 10-hour period is going to depend on sticking as tight to this as possible, it's going to depend on how long is we take for breaks, and it's going to depend on the public comment. That's something that, we don't know how many will show up, but based on planning commission, we can expect to have quite a few people here to talk about these items. So, with that, that's really all we had to talk about today, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Question, have you, every applicant, does he or she or the group have a number, so they know in what timeline they should be attending the meeting? Or are they all to come and spend 10 hours with council?
Just like any meeting, that's entirely up to them. They should probably try to be here in plenty of time, so they're here when their items call.
No, no, it's not like, I mean, in truth, really, I mean, these agenda items give you a ballpark of whether it's, you know. So, is there any way, is that something that you could consider to make it more business-friendly for the applicants?
Mayor, I don't know how we could do that, given the unknown number of speakers and public comment. I don't, did you have a?
Your Honor, for the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager, the clerk might be able to help in that. What we wanted to make sure we do is inform our applicants to be prepared for you. If they have two items, so some of these are integrated facilities, they have a dispensary, we've scheduled those, so that their production and their cultivation are all right in a row. We're planning to ask them, since they are talking about one facility, to give one presentation to you, so you could deal with all of those items subsequent to that. On the timing of this, the clerk would have to let us know exactly how she's organized that agenda, and what opportunities there are at this point.
Madam Clerk?
Beverly Bridges, City Clerk. The agenda is numbered directly from 1 to, I think it's 55, because the compliance permits follow behind the land use cases. So, I'm going on the assumption that if somebody is 23rd on the agenda, they don't have to come at 9 o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
If you're within the first few applications, everyone should be here right at 9:00, because according to the schedule, we're not sure how many people are going to come for public comment, how long it's going to take to get through the deliberations with council. So, I'm hoping that everyone uses the numbers on the agenda as a guideline for when they feel they need to, you know, arrive at City Hall.
Is there anything beyond the books that we have that is printed, that will be online, so that the applicant will know, I am number 23?
Yes, all the agendas will be going out on Tuesday, just like we post normally. They'll all be online. We're going to go ahead and post the 28th and the 29th at the same time. So, both meetings will be out there directly. The postcards that go out, they will be going out on Monday, I believe, Monday. They all have 9:00 AM listed, because that's when the meeting is posted for. But again, if they look at the agenda and see where they're situated on that agenda, it should get them some idea whether they should be here first thing, in an hour, you know, or later in the day, depending on. And it will be live, so they can also watch it and gauge how fast the items are moving forward, whether they need to come sooner.
And they can double-check their number online as well?
Correct, correct. Because it always shows up on our screen, what number the council is on. So, they can always use that as a guide when they think they want to come down, or if they, like you said, or they want to come and spend the entire day.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Karen, I know when we met on yesterday during my briefings, there were some categories that you had, as far as not recommended, recommended, and what was the third one?
Your Honor, if I may, for the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. On the actual agenda items that are being posted, for the compliance permit, we have recommended for approval, we have no recommendation, and we have recommended for denial. We have several items where the compliance permit, their compliance with the business licensing portion, is acceptable and would put them in one category. However, they currently have a recommendation for denial of their land use. So, if that denial of their land use changes, their recommendation would go into one of those categories. Because the compliance permit brings land use and licensing together, if your land use is denied, then your compliance permit cannot be considered, because it's one of the elements of it.
Okay. And in addition to that, your office has sent out apparently some form of correspondence, letting individuals know what your recommendations are?
Correct.
Okay.
They will know that. We also have in the agenda, agenda memos with all of those items that are on there, and the reasons for those recommendations. So, they will be with the agenda.
Okay. And since sending out those letters of correspondence to all of the applicants, and in particular, those applicants that were recommended for denial, as well as the, what was the other outside of recommended?
Recommended for approval and no recommendation.
No recommendation. Of course, they have since contacted, I'm sure, several, if not all of our offices, requesting meetings to explain the areas of concern. And so, will they have an opportunity to stand before this body and articulate the issues that were brought up that have placed them, placed them in the category of denial or no recommendation?
Yes, that's why we're recommending that they go first on their presentation, and have an opportunity to go through that. And that's specifically why we've made sure that they've had those reports for at least two weeks before that presentation.
Okay, so the recommendation for denial or no recommendation could ultimately change contingent upon how they explain the areas of concern from your office to a recommendation?
Of course. We evaluated an application, we evaluated boxes of paper.
Right, I know you had reams of it, to the ceiling.
And, and so, that is why we noted for the council, and noted to those applicants, what concerns we saw in that application that we received, and how that application complies with our code. I'm sure that they will all want to explain to you those items. And at this point, we've given you our recommendations based on the application, which is what we were required to do.
Right.
And those decisions on exactly what the outcome of those applicants are, and how you are going to deal with them on a compliance permit, is now up to the council.
Okay.
So, we've done our job, and given you our opinion of what was presented to us, and now it's their opportunity to explain those items that we noted to you.
Okay, and I appreciate it. And let me just say this, because I've seen the mounds of paperwork and applications that came into your office, as well as planning, and I want to commend you, and of course, the planning department, for a job well done in regards to dealing with such an important issue to the community, number one. And secondly, a new market of business, if you will, that was passed down to the local municipalities from the state. And as I shared before, it's not something that we necessarily wanted, it was something that we were directed to do from the state. And so, for that, your office, planning, and all of the offices that were involved, from fire to building and safety, the manager's office, the attorney's office, did, has done a wonderful job, in my opinion, in regards to getting us to this point, to make sure that as we move forward, we are bringing in individuals that we feel will be able to carry this very important new line of business into the community, and carry it in such a way that it will not embarrass the city of Las Vegas in the future. So, thank you so very much, and I look forward to those applications coming on the 28th and the 29th, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. This, I got to say, I have some problems. As you know, I've expressed to you privately about this schedule. It looks neat and night-tidy here on this board here, but it won't work that way. I mean, that's an opinion, but it's based on experience. If you, you're talking a brand-new industry, with people who are brand-new to that industry, many of them, most of them, even though they might be local or out of town, you know, there's still, it's a novelty to some of them, and we're only allowing them five minutes to make a presentation, and some of the people will be coming in here with two strikes against them, some with one strike, and some with no strikes, because based on staff's judgment on their filling out, or lack of filling out information, or if the information they filled out revealed some weakness in their application, because maybe they either lied, or they omitted something important. Some people are going to need more time. And so, to allow five minutes, well, I just don't think that's going to be enough, and I think you're going to find that somewhere within this presentation, one of, and I guess there are six of us, I don't, I don't know if the mayor's going to be around at that time, but let's say there are six of us, we all have a question. We might all have a question of each person, we don't know, until we engage this thing on the 28th and 29th. Public comment, that is obviously a variable, and I suppose public comment could be kept to one minute. You know, there might be some objections from the public on that. But then, the staff report coming in afterward, I don't know why the staff report doesn't come in first, because that way, you at least, you kind of illuminate the problem that somebody might face before they make their presentation. Otherwise, they won't, I mean, they've heard it, they've heard, they've read it, they've read your opinions, but I don't know if anything has changed since then. But if they have to rebut something, or they have to try to rebut something, shouldn't they at least have heard the staff report first, before they make their presentation? And then, and that can take time, too, because we may have questions of the staff about the report. I think it's going to take a lot longer than this. And then, one of the last things I'm worried about is that the timetable has changed, because I'm talking about what we were told before, about we were going to hear these things thoroughly, the 28th and 29th, and I like that, long meetings, get it all done. And then I was thinking, and then when it was, we were told, we'll decide, we'll make our deliberation on the 5th, November 5th, that gave us almost a week to, a week, let's say, to be able to clear our minds, think about this thing, look at our notes, and make a decision as to what we want to do. Now, you're asking us to make our deliberation at that very moment that they, that they present. That could take a long time. We're not going to be unanimous on some of these things, so why shouldn't we admit that we, we're putting this really way, way too early? I don't understand what can be gained, because in putting the council deliberation here on the same schedule, what you're overlooking is the fact that the state report, the state opinion, which I value on these applicants, is going to become an end five days later. They've said they're going to bring them in on, I don't know, the 3rd or 4th of November. Why would we suddenly be jumping the gun here on the state report? I don't understand the change in timing from the previous time, where we would have the benefit of the state opinion, and now we would just ignore it? Because that's what the county did, the county selected its people, its 18 people, and said to hell with the state, you know, this is what we want, and no matter what you say, that's what we want, provoking the possibility of litigation and arguments with the state, and with a whole bunch of applicants involved, too. Well, if we wait until we get the state opinions, we might be able to avoid some of the problems that the county's going to have, because they've approved people, and the state might have found something that is objectionable, that they may have found different answers than what we did. Our staff's collective work on this, thorough as it is, might have been seen through a different prism than the one that the state people apply. So, I think we should allow some time between the hearing and the actual deliberation. And I thought that the schedule that we were briefed on last week was good, gave us a week, there was no time wasted to get it done. But this is just going to be unworkable, and I'm afraid we're going to be here a lot longer than 10 hours a day to do this right. That's a big problem. And, you know, we also know this, what we've heard from state, and I don't know how this all started, but the idea that they'd sure be happy to hear who we don't like, so that they don't have to send us an opinion on them, that is dangerous territory to be involved in. Yes, if we decide before the state sends us their results, yeah, they could withhold some of those rankings, they could pull somebody's name out of there. What are you going to think of, if you're an applicant, and you'll find out, small state, it's a small town, right, Carson City talks, we talk, what's going to happen if somebody says to somebody, "Uh, we ranked you pretty high up in Carson City, and we didn't see your name come in from the city, and I'm kind of surprised our report didn't include your name." I think it is rife with danger, I really do, there are so many pitfalls, that, I mean, we're so close to the end, I don't think we should rush it. I really, really think we should wait before we make up our mind for those reasons, and I'm sure there's other reasons. I can't think of a reason to speed it up suddenly at the end of this long deliberation, at the end of this long time we've had this. You guys have lived with this data, you know what you want to do, and you know what we should do. But, you know, it's still foreign to us. Many of these applicants have not met us. I've had 50-plus meetings with applicants since September of 2013. I have a count on 48 meetings, but I'm sure it's well over 50. So, I've taken the time to meet people, once, twice, sometimes even three times, but I know they haven't met with every council member, and I'm worried that, what's going to happen is with this tight timeframe, and with the idea of making the deliberation on the same day, we're going to end up with serious problems. We really will.
Thank you for your input. I'm sure as this moves forward, there will be adjustments as need be, but let's hear from Councilwoman Tarkanian. And I do, I am going to open this up for the public comment briefly, but it's all right not to be repetitive, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilman Coffin.
I just wanted to add, if I might, to the two of you, the applicant presentation, was it five minutes at the county? Is that what they gave at the county? I know a lot of people felt it was short.
I'm sorry, I was not there that day, I do not know. Let me see if I've got a staff person.
Oh, it was three minutes. It was three minutes at the county, so could we maybe give six minutes, and just go another hour then, or something, that day? If we gave six minutes, that doubles what the county gave. And, and I say that, too, because I think a lot of, we're doing some things the county didn't do, as I understand. For example, it's gone, did it go through their planning commission?
The, Your Honor, if I may, for the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. The county only made decisions on land use. So, they did have what they called a preliminary application, I believe. They did not review their business plans, their operation plans, their security plans. As you know, the city, or the county is just considering their regulations for these businesses now. So, we put our regulations in place before we had applicants.
Right, we put our regulations in place before, which I think was very good, because, for example, if there's a problem in land use that came through our planning commission, and they know they were declined by the planning commission, they know they're still going to be considered, but that's a problem from whatever the planning commission said, so that's something they should address on the 28th or the 29th. We've given them information before, so that they can round out their reports when they bring it to us. So, I'm saying I'd go, I feel maybe an extra minute would help, as far as the presentation, it gives them twice what they received in our large county meeting that they had. And as I said, I don't think I feel as concerned as Councilman Coffin feels about rushing. My goodness, we certainly have taken lots of time, far more time than the county took, in getting out to people what our concerns are as far as your application. You know that, before you go on the 28th or 29th. And what are our concerns as far as land use, you know that. And I think we've really taken a lot of time to do that. And if it does go through, that you want to wait a week before you make a decision, I'd like to make the decisions on that day myself. But if it's another week, I'd like to see it a quiet week, where we're not contacted by lobbyists or anybody else. Let us think then ourselves, and get the answers through staff, because that's something the RTC does many times. And I just think it's, it's not- And I just think it's, uh, it's not fair to people who come to either, you know, if you have, if you're able to pay a, a, a very, very excellent lobbyist, you're at an advantage over someone who can't do that. And you're at an advantage that they can come again and you can pay them again to come where maybe somebody else can't. But your plan may be just as good and just as strong. I just was answering that, Bob, as far as I felt on that.
If I might, I'd like to ask you a question. Why the gap between the 29th and the 10th of November? What, what's the reasoning in there? Because if in fact you heard 15 a day and 16 on the 3rd day, you could have foreshortened the day. That's one. Is there a, a timeline that these have to be submitted?
Your Honor, for the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. That schedule was set with, with the clerk months and months ago. It was really based on your schedules and your availability at that time and making sure that if we, we did not know at that time exactly how many applications you would need to hear, um, how many we were getting, we had to schedule so far in advance that we went ahead and, and grabbed that next available date where you were all available to make sure we had it on your schedule. So if we do not finish one of those other days or we ended up with many more applications than we had anticipated, we had an opportunity.
Is it the process that you will wait till all 46 have been heard before you submit? There are 46 applicants?
Submit.
How many, how many of, how many applicants are there?
There are 55.
Forty, 46 items that will be heard.
Forty-six.
Okay. So if you divide that down, it's, if you put it at 15 a day with one day being 16.
Well, Mayor, we've already got them posted. We've got postcards. So you've got, I think, 21 on one day and 25 on another day for the 28th and the 29th. And the idea is we would use November 5th as a holdover day. So if you didn't make a decision on an application on the 28th or the 29th, you could defer it to the 5th. And if you really needed to defer it, you could go to November 10th. That, so we've basically got two holdover days available in case you are uncomfortable making a decision for whatever reason. Yeah, so we're, we're trying to create flexibility for you, but it's up to you what you do. If you want to give applicants six minutes each, great. If you want to give them more, great. Just, you know, recognize that right now, all of those applicants have been notified that they're on the 28th or the 29th based on planning commission's actions. And they've, we've got the postcards ready to go. So we're really teed up to take all the applications on those two days and use the other subsequent meeting dates for holdovers if we need them.
Okay. It was just a thought because I thought if you divided it in three days, then you're not doing a 10-hour day, hopefully. And you actually, you can be a little flexible with the amount of time that's needed because you're going to have to see how it goes anyway. I mean, to be hard and fast in the rule exactly how many minutes and then find that you need additional time, then you have already pushed yourself beyond, or a 10-hour day is a very long day. So my suggestion was, but if it's already posted and you're already, no?
The agendas will be posted online and mailed next Tuesday. The postcards go out this Thursday. Tomorrow.
We've already notified all the, we've already notified all the individuals of those two dates at planning commission. They got actually scheduled to those dates at planning commission.
You can. Okay. Councilman Ross, and then I do want to hear from the public.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to tame my frustration as much as possible, but this is, because this is ridiculous. Mr. Perrigo, Mrs. Duddleston, you guys have done a fabulous job getting here, us here to this point. I am perfectly comfortable moving forward with just how you laid it out. I think we've made these applicants jump through hoops, jump over walls, leap tall buildings in a single bound. I think it's time to get this thing on and get this thing over with and move this train down the track to the station, Mayor. That's where I'm at with this.
That's wonderful, Councilman. Thank you. Okay. Any, any other comment? Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, just, just my thoughts are based on human behavior, you know, and the kinds of things that we'll see when the, when the race starts. It's, it's all well and good, you know, before the race begins to have things, and then the plan changes and then it goes crazy. So I've made some, I've made some objections and some suggestions here today. But there's another thing. If you have deliberation at the same time you hear, what you're going to have is, why I forget, is it wards one and two? Which wards are on, um, on the, this first day? Is it the 28th?
One and five.
One and five, okay. One and five, okay. Thank you very much. Well, that's a lot of apps. That's about half of them. So we know the city has 12 that we can authorize, just 12. And as you deliberate, as you go through these 20, what should we be keeping in mind? Should we be keeping in mind the ones we know we want to vote for because we've looked at them and/or we've talked to the folks or we just like them? Or should we give everybody a fair shake? And I think the problem here is, once you start to make choices, under this system, you're going to be keeping a tally sheet of some kind. It may be Greek or it may be in your own English language, but the point is, you're going to be seeing, I've voted for already, one, two, three. Now it's noon. And maybe six, seven, eight. Oh, God, I got to get that ninth one in here somewhere because I really like him. I think he's good, very qualified. Well, the day is over and you've got nine tallied out of 12 and you're only halfway through your agenda because you have a finite number of applications. Would someone tell me how they're going to be avoiding this very human behavior of scorekeeping as you go through it? Anybody? If, if they could tell me that they can isolate and not keep track, I'd be, I'd be astonished because you can't do that. You won't. I'm speaking to my colleagues here, I guess. I'm looking at you guys, but I'm speaking to my colleagues. You'll be thinking, and then Ward 3, and I think there's another couple from, like Ward 2 has one and I forget who else. Now Ward 3 comes up and you know you've got 19 applications coming out of Ward 3. 19 from Ward 3 for dispensaries only. And you've left yourself something short of what you thought might be a good number. Now you're boxed in. So now you begin to think, what are we going to do? So you have to start evaluating. And I worry that's what's going to happen. And so I'm trying to, again, try to figure out why the heck we don't, why are we in such a rush?
Well, if I might, Councilman, I think you've made your point. I know the books were passed out last week, so there's plenty of time to read and try and make your assessment as well.
Well, why, why did it change from last week, Mayor? Why did it change from a decision on the 5th of November?
Did it change?
We were briefed and told.
We, we haven't changed anything. All, all we're saying is, if you make a decision on the 28th or the 29th, you may make a decision that some application comes forward and you just think it is not ever going to work and you're going to deny it potentially on the 28th. Fine. You may find one that you look at and you say, wow, this, this one's out of the park. We're totally comfortable with this one. Location, business plan, et cetera. We want to accept that one today. You could take either of those actions at that time if you wanted to. You could also put another application in the, we're reserving judgment on it. We don't want to make a decision today, so we're going to abey it to the 5th. Or we're going to obey it till February 5th, to be quite honest. You could obey it as long as you want to. So the decision is yours. You can take action along the way as you feel comfortable, based on whatever motion may be promulgated. You could take all of the ones that you feel comfortable with or you're not quite sure about, you could move those all to the 5th. It's, it's completely up to you how you would like to pursue it as you go through that discussion. And it's all based on your comfort level. What we've been saying is basically, there's, in our minds, there's three pots that you can put these on. One that you move to deny. Our suggestion is if you feel like you are uncomfortable with it and you want to deny the application, then do it on the 28th or the 29th, if it's that clear to you. If you feel totally comfortable and you feel like you wouldn't reconsider that issue because of clustering and some of the other things you've talked about, then you may want to approve other items. You put that in the approved category. Either of those two things could be transmitted to the state. You could take all of the ones you feel comfortable with and the ones that you're reserving judgment on and you could bay all of those to the 5th, to be honest. It really depends on what your comfort level is.
Mayor, just point of clarification, because it's something I just knew as of today. I believe one of, someone here mentioned that you won't be participating in the, in the process. Because I have a question in regards to that. That's.
I have a plan on coming in each day and opening the meeting. I have the full backup, but I have a son who's involved with one of the applications and felt it was a conflict of interest for me to sit in judgment on any part of this. Asked our council and Mr. Gerbic reassured me that it would be best if I do not participate.
Okay. And, and thank you for that clarification because I just heard about that, just sitting here today. So I didn't have an opportunity to really get the gist of you not participating because I didn't know to that extent. So now having, knowing that, and this question is for Brad, counsel, in the midst of us deliberating on the 28th and the 29th, there's going to be six voting members. This will still carry out as far as if there's a tie, it dies? The application dies? And, and to me, that represents that the application will then go down as a denial, correct?
Well, it takes four votes to pass anything on this board according to state law. And if you don't get four votes, it doesn't pass.
I can't hear you, Brad. Say it again.
I'm sorry. It takes four votes of this board to pass anything. And if you don't have four votes, it does not pass. So you're right. If you had a 3-3 vote, you would have a motion that didn't pass.
So that means the application dies?
Well, technically, it just wouldn't pass. The equivalent, the equivalent would be it would not move forward.
Right. It wouldn't move forward. In other words, it, it dies. It, it serves as a denial, correct?
Right. We wouldn't record it as a denial. We would just record it as, it wouldn't be a black mark because it just wouldn't pass. But you're right. For the applicant, it would feel the same way. They wouldn't have to wait a year to reapply or anything like that, but at the same time, it would take four votes to deny as well. So look at the flip side of it. Four votes to pass, four votes to deny, a 3-3 would be a tie. They could reapply, hoping that somebody changes their mind sometime in the future. They wouldn't have the one-year timeout.
Wow. Thank you for that. I, I just have to process that a little bit more, but I wanted to get that out there, being that, being that if in fact, if in fact we agree that, or, or three of us, for example, and I'm trying to walk through, through my mind real quick, if three of us agree that, or I should say, yes, three of us agree that one place deserves to be at a specific location and another three says, I don't think so, we're not saying that they're not eligible, right, Brad? We're just disagreeing on the location. So what happens with the application?
Right. Well, there's a couple of things you could disagree on. One, you could disagree with the use permit, which would be the location.
Brad, for whatever reason. We can't hear you on this side. Speak into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. There, there are several things that you can be, you'd be voting on and any one of them, if they fail, would be a failure of the applicant. The first would be the use permit. And that would be whether or not you have the appropriate land use. And that's going to take four votes to advance. You're also going to be looking at whether or not the application is complete. And if the application is complete, then they meet both of the first hurdles that will get them eventually to a point where you would take a third vote sometime in the future after they've undergone a full background check and everything's been submitted, and that would be the issuance of the privileged license. Do I have that right?
For the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager, Your Honor, if I might. Under the medical marijuana compliance permit is, in order to get one of those permits, you must be in compliance with Title 19 and have land use. So if the land use item, number one, is, is specifically denied, then the compliance permit, as we understand it, could not be approved. So it would be stricken from the agenda.
At the state level?
No, that's just ours. Every, the state is doing an independent process. They will issue their, their compliance permits. So what is required under our medical marijuana ordinance is that if you deny an application or you give a applicant a compliance permit that their application is in compliance with your code, I'm to forward those actions to the state.
Correct.
What impact those will have upon the state, if any, we do not know. What the state has said publicly and put in writing to us is that if a local government, any local government denies an application, they will deny a compliance permit.
Okay. Mayor, do you understand my concern in regards to the applications?
Yes.
Specifically, let's just say that this is a good applicant. We feel that it's a good applicant.
And you've got a 3-3.
And you have a 3-3, the application falls off our list.
Councilman.
According to, according to what Brad has shared.
Right. But the, the issue is, is that typically what, how that's been described is it's tantamount to a denial. But it doesn't mean that one of you who voted against the approval, which would be the prevailing side, and Brad may want to weigh in here, but on the prevailing side of the motion, so to speak, because a 3-3 is tantamount to a denial, that an individual from that side who voted no could ask to have that item reconsidered. See what I mean?
Correct.
And then that would imply that there are actually four individuals who may support it in that reconsideration. Because you would have had three for, three against. One of the against makes a motion to reconsider. Normally, you're reconsidering because you've changed your mind or you want additional detail to reconsider the item so that you can make a different decision potentially. I, I mean, I, Brad, I don't, well, he's got to talk to the mayor, but that, there is a way to resurrect the item, but only if you're going to be able to, to get to four anyway.
Right.
See what I mean? So.
And, and I'm glad you shared that because the techn, and I know this is a technical piece and it's a very technical piece that could ultimately fall on any of the applicants, right? And so I want to make sure that from a technical standpoint that we're, we're in a position to, if we're in agreeance that it's a bad application, fine. But if we're in agreeance that it's a good application, however, you know, there's something within there that we basically have gridlock on. Not to say that we don't want them. It's just that we have a difference in, in opinions in regards to a certain area, whether it be the security plan, whether it be the transport, what have you, and we come to a disagreement at that point, the application stops and it basically comes down as a denial.
Well, it depends on if you hold, it depends on your motion.
Right.
Because if your motion is to deny or approve and you get a 3-3, then it's tantamount to a denial.
Correct.
But if your motion is to put it on hold, to obey it, to make no recommendation to a future date, you put it in a suspended category, basically.
And it's a 3-3.
Well, if that's a 3-3, then that's, that is a tantamount to a denial.
That's correct. And that's what I'm saying.
But the only way you'd be able to resurrect in that situation would be for one of the individuals who voted on the prevailing side to pull it back.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to at least put that out there so that we, we understand that moving forward, Mayor. And that's only because of what I heard in regards to your, your position. Thank you.
And I have just made inquiry of Mr. Gerbic as to what point I can move back in on the dais, at what point in the process. If the application or presentation of my son's group, whatever that is, passes, fails, whatever it does, at that point, am I able to resit? And you are taking it under advisement, is what I've heard. The answer is yes. He's taking it under advisement. And I know Ms. Duddleston had a comment here too. Please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. I'm just to clarify, one of the recommendations that we have specifically states no recommendation. And we are suggesting if, if, that the action by the, the council for that could be to let the applicant go forward through the state system, get a compliance permit and bring it back to you.
Hold on one sec. Very important, Councilman Barlow. The very, this is a very clear response here, Theresa.
So what we have for that day are three recommendations. We have a recommendation for denial, which is denial. We have a recommendation for approval, and that is that they be given a compliance permit that both their land use and their licensing is in compliance with your codes and regulations. The other recommendation that we have is no recommendation and we are, and what we are saying on those is that your motion possibly, what we are suggesting would be to allow, to take no action on their compliance permit, allow the applicant to go forward through the state process. If they get a state compliance permit, they would be allowed to resubmit the plans that made them out of compliance. And once those were done, if they got both their state compliance permit and amended their plans, their permit and amended their plans, their operating plans, so they could be in compliance, they could ask to be reheared by the city council for compliance at that, at a later date.
And I understand that, and we would have, by then, have already selected the 12 anyway, correct? That, that, that are available to the city of Las Vegas.
Under the, there are only, only dispensaries are limited. So, I understand we're, we're addressing dispensaries, we're addressing cultivation, we're addressing production. So, it is only the dispensaries that, that are limited. The state has said they will only, they will only issue 12 compliance permits for the city of Las Vegas. I do not know how many, or, I'm sorry, registration certificates, let me be clear. The state registration certificates, they will only issue 12 to dispensaries within the corporate limits of the city. How many compliance permits that you all issue has never been, there's been no direction to us on if that is a limited number or not.
You meaning the 12 compliance in regards to the 12?
If, if you find 12 or more or less applicants for dispensaries in compliance with both land use and their applications meet the licensing criteria, there, in the medical marijuana code, there is no specified number of how many you will find as you hear them acceptable to you.
Okay. So, having said that, Karen, how many dispensary applications are before us, how many cultivation are before us, and how many production will be coming before us?
I'll have my staff, I believe we have-
According to wards, two, please.
According to wards. I can get that for you. I don't have it right in front of me. I believe there are 43 dispensaries total. There's a total of 43 dispensaries.
Forty-three dispensaries, how many production?
Three production facilities.
Cultivation?
Nine. In Ward 1, we have 15 dispensaries.
Fifteen?
We have five cultivation.
Five.
We have two production.
Two.
In Ward 2, we have two dispensaries.
Mm-hmm.
In Ward 3, we have 19 dispensaries, three cultivation, one production.
Okay.
In Ward 5, we have seven dispensaries and one cultivation.
Okay.
What happened to Ward 4? Nothing?
Nothing?
Nothing.
And Ward 6?
Nothing.
Nothing.
No applicants.
So, here we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And that's from a sheet that was in the front of your books.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
So, at this point, with, with all the input now, I'd like to call on Mona Lisa Samuelson. And three minutes, if you would. And if you'll keep your comments, the three minutes, please.
Yes, thank you.
And we're not even there yet.
Good morning, or good afternoon.
Yes, it is. One o'clock.
Yay. My name is Mona Lisa Samuelson. I am a medical marijuana patient here in Las Vegas, and I like to come to these things to represent, we are not the criminal element, we are in your community, and as much as your planner, your city planner, enjoys his parks and how proud he is to see the healthy people out there doing their great things, I can't wait, in a few years, you guys are going to be looking around at the enthusiasm in your city of the people who are healthier and happier from medical marijuana, and I hope you want to become a part of that community, too, because we are an enthusiastic group that cares for each other, and when it comes to these meetings, this was something that really upset us, is we like, we would like to come out to our community and be productive members, and for these meetings to run 10 hours and be rescheduled again and again, and even run concurrent with each other. You have one in North Las Vegas, one in Las Vegas. It's been really hard. It's not just new for you, it's new for us, and it's supposed to be for us. It's not just to make money for you, it's our rights. Yes, the state did put it on you, Mr. Councilman Barlow, but that's because we're sick, injured, and dying, and we need it. So, please remember, it's not pushed on you, it's something we need desperately, and we need you to hear us. I can't even stand up here, I'm hurting so bad from sitting through this, but it's important that we all know that medical marijuana patients need your help, and we need to be heard, and so, we appreciate the long work that you put in, and we appreciate you giving us a voice. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Vicki Higgins? And if you'll reset the clock?
Hey, Karen? Mayor, when you give a moment, I just have a question in regards to some math.
If you don't mind-
But go ahead. But that's fine, she can-
Let her go first. Thank you. Please, three minutes.
Hi, Vicki Higgins, pardon me. I would like to see possibly some fine tuning as to the process and this back and forth. It seems slightly redundant to be having the meetings before the state has done their approvals. To me, and I'm just a layman, but it seems like a lot of different meetings about the same things, and once we know the state's opinions, I would think that we would have a better idea what direction to take this. I realize we're working on a timeframe, and I want to thank you very much for working under this timeframe. We, as patients, desperately need these facilities, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Hodges. Mayor, all I want to say about it, I don't use any cigarettes, drugs, or any form, that's not the point, but the point is that we got to go back according to how our country was built. You had probation on cigarettes, and you had probation on alcohol and whatever, and these things, eventually, they came into existence, and they're all doing well and doing fine. Marijuana will end up doing the same thing by the year 2016, I mean, they ain't going at the same, what I'm saying, it's just a matter of time that y'all, all the different levels of government, from the federal down, fighting all over the place. It'll eventually come to a head, because this drug, it's a drug and a medicine, and for, you know, for personal use and so on. That's not the point. The objective is that the day will come that it has to go, where we can all have it. Right now, you know, you're doing what the government allow you to do from the federal to state level and down to you, but I'm just letting us all know, I might be dead and gone. Within two years, marijuana will have to become law all over the country, because right now, it's ridiculous, it's causing people all kind of, you know, inconvenience, both the rich, the poor, and somewhere in between. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I was one.
Okay, it wasn't a public hearing, but I felt I had the cards for the whole time. So, this is a report only, anything else to add, Ms. Duttleston or Mr. Parago? And one more question from Councilman Barlow.
Karen, thank you. I, I just tried to write it down real quick. I'm only coming up with six cultivation. You mentioned that there were nine, however, when you broke it out in, in regards to wards, you mentioned that from the cultivation, there was two in Ward 1, zero in Ward 2, three in Ward 3, and one in Ward 5.
I had five in Ward 1.
Okay, so it's five in Ward 1.
Three in Ward 3, and one in Ward 5. We'll also put that up on our, our website, these, these, and-
And there were five production in Ward 1?
Two production.
Okay, so I have that back.
The sheet I just gave you.
Okay, great. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, any concluding remarks? Bring your pillow. Okay, we will now move on to Agenda Item 41. A report regarding the status of negotiations, public outreach of the proposed soccer stadium in downtown Las Vegas, located north of Bonneville Avenue, east of Grand Central Parkway, south of the Ogden Underpass, and west of the Union Pacific Railroad. This is in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow, Mr. Arnt.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. For the record, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This item really is following your discussion at the October 1st council meeting, at which you gave us direction to proceed with discussions with our partner, which is the Cordish Companies, as well as Finley Sports and Entertainment. We are continuing discussions. We also had scheduled this agenda item reacting to several of the speakers at the meeting on October 1st who wanted to hear public discussion about the project. So, with that, that concludes our staff report. We would like to hear from each of you regarding your interest in the project, and if you have any questions, or if you have direction that you'd like to offer staff, but this item is just to receive a report.
Okay. I do have two cards, and I think what I'm going to do is ask them to make their comments upfront-
Sure.
And close that piece, and so, since you're up here, Mr. Hodges, you may repeat your name, if you would, please. Make your comment.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Anthony Hodges. Getting back to the stadium, and I, I know the city is heavily involved, the objective is, this, this is, this is something that the city do really have to build, because if you don't build, this whole valley, somebody's going to build a stadium, and soccer's going to take place. And so, the ball's in your park, and I know you don't want to spend a fortune, you know, out-of-the-city money, but if whoever you're dealing with is saying they're going to come up with most of it anyway, the objective is, hey, let's get it done. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, Ms. Higgins, I think, please, if you would, and could you pass these up forward? Thank you.
Vicki Higgins, I just wanted to reiterate that the, the fill on the artificial turf on these fields is proving to be, have possible cancerous effects. Please, let's take that into consideration as we build the fields for our athletes and our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We did pass that on, and Mr. Parago had said that that's part of the process going forward. Thank you so much. All right, comments from council? I guess the directive that was given to, I don't want to misquote what the motion was, but to proceed on working towards elimination of public funding. That's close. Yes, please.
Your Honor? Oh, Mr. Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I did ask the clerk to start their transcription with that motion, and received a response the day after our meeting. The exact motion that the mayor requested be read back for the record is, approve the term sheet with instruction to work towards the elimination of public funds prior to the final DDA being brought back in December, and negotiate the DDA with that in mind, and to include the commitment of Cordish to invest an additional $250 million into the DDA.
I think that was clear, and that's what I got to from the clerk, and I think we did pass it around, so, I mean, that's what I think everybody voted on. I think it was unanimous vote with one no. Correct?
I was not present, so I have to-
Oh, no, you were vacationing.
That wasn't the motion.
Luanne?
Luanne is agreeing that that is what the motion was.
That's right, 68. Okay. Councilman Coffin, comment?
I think that was, what I was going to add, it was a complex motion, but it was complete, that-
Yes.
It included the $250 million, but we didn't say where it should be done. I, I don't recall whether they said they, they were going to invest in the 61 or 61 acres, you know, in adjacencies, or if they were going to invest somewhere in downtown. I, I don't know whether we actually pinned them down to-
No, we didn't.
Locations or time.
No, but I think if, going back and listening to it, which I really don't like to review a city council meeting, I do think what was suggested, but I don't know the firmness of it, that an additional $250 million in, I thought I heard, but it's only a thought, an adjacent property.
Bill may want to chime in here, but it was anticipated that, that would be the development of the site. There's 13 acres there. Seven or so would be dedicated for the stadium, that leaves six in balance, so the $250 million would go on the other six acres.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, just to expand on Betsy's comment and to answer Councilman Coffin's question, that's correct. We do have to work out all the details of that, so I think the motion was clear, it really gives us direction to incorporate that into a DDA, which is an acronym for disposition and development agreement, which lays out the future development of the entire site, not only the stadium, but other private development as well.
Knowing that you're working towards this for the December, December what?
The December 17th city council meeting.
Okay. Rather than only be informed towards the end, as you make progress, if you make progress, moving this forward and however you're doing it, it would be, if we could be included in the conversation, so that, you know, there may be other ideas that we can suggest to staff as you proceed with this, but, I mean, obviously, it's only been two weeks now, so knowing that you've been out on business out of town, obviously, the conversation must be limited to this point anyway, but as you're going forward with it, a timeline, perhaps, of what you think you might be able to give to the council, so we can know where you are as you proceed with the conversation and the dialogue for the DDA?
Well, this is a standard briefing item, and we plan on having this item on the every agenda until December 17th, and that way, you can provide us direction along the way.
Great.
We, we really haven't made very much progress, to be honest with you, since last two weeks ago. We've got a lot of different issues that we're trying to work through, and happy to take any feedback that you have today about what you'd like to see in that final deal. We're happy to take it and use it in our negotiations.
Thank you. I mean, I think what we'd like to do is see the, the movement, as the request of the motion was to move forward and come up with alternatives as you present them, give them to the private partnership, and it's going to go back and forth, I'm sure, but hopefully, if you make some progress, let us know soon, and if not, we'll just wait on you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to new bills, and there is no public comment on our new bills. Okay, so we are starting with Agenda Item 42. Items 42 and through 46, Bills Number 2014-68 through 2014-72 will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Monday, November 3rd. Would you please have the pleasure of reading these to us?
On behalf of Your Honor, Bill Number 2014-68, in order to adopt the public facilities and services element of Las Vegas 2020 master plan and provide related matters. Bill 2014-69, in order to adopt updated standards for the street scrape schematic design for Symphony Park and provide related matters. Bill Number 2014-70, in order to require privileged license for smoking lounges and for certain businesses that sell tobacco paraphernalia or designated substances, establish regulations regarding the operation of such businesses, provide a period of existing businesses to come into compliance, and provide related matters. Bill Number 2014-71, in order to the city of Las Vegas, in order to the city council of the city of Las Vegas, providing for the issues of this general obligation, limited tax sewer bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2014A, for the purpose of financing sewer projects and funding certain of the city's outstanding sewer bonds, providing the form, terms, and conditions thereof, and providing for their sale, providing for the levy and collection of annual general adverbal taxes for the, for the payment of the bonds, additionally securing the payment by a pledge of revenues derived from the city's sewer system, providing further details in connection therewith, and providing the effective date hereof. And finally, Bill Number 2014-72, in order to the city of Las Vegas, city council, authorizing the issues of the city of Las Vegas, general obligation, limited tax parking revenue bonds, refunding bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2014B, tax exempt, and the city of Las Vegas, general obligation, limited tax parking refunding bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2014C, taxable, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds, providing for the form, terms, conditions of the bonds, and the security therefore, and other details in connection therewith, and providing for matters relating thereto, and providing the effective date hereof.
Thank you. Is it appropriate to ask questions? Is it appropriate to be able to ask a question?
Sure, you're the mayor.
On Number 44, under Councilman Ross. Where's the county on these? Have they done this type of?
Mayor, I understand the county has not, but they are interested in what we are doing to see how it folds out, because it is a genuine concern for public safety, as some of these establishments are selling, what's the products? What is it? Spice and other non-tobacco products that they change. The Attorney General's been chasing this down for many years now as to what she can do about it, and I think it's just a step for us to go, the next step for us to have some kind of control over business licensing for these businesses. If they're, if they're not good players, then we knock, knock on their door and say, "You better plum up, or we take your license away."
But those that are, in fact, true, what are they called? Smoking lounges selling only tobacco, will they be also included in this? Or just the one that has the larger umbrella selling?
No, all of those will also be included, and the grandfathering is not necessary as they come up for relicensing. I think the way Mrs. Duttleston had explained it to me, that as they come up to renew their licenses, there's no additional cost, it just becomes a special privileged license. We're not trying to beat the industry up, but we are trying to slow down the bad apples out there doing business.
Well, and too, I mean, I think internationally, it's known about smoking and the health hazard to those in the vicinity, and we know what's been going on in the country, but I was curious as to anything, was there any precedent out in the county or anything?
Not yet, but I do know they're looking at our ordinance to see how we do it, and I think, I mean, it's taken some time for Brad's office to get us to this point, because I think I requested this quite some time ago, so. But I think it's a step in the right direction. Brad wants to add anything to that? Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So then, these will be assigned, New Bills 2014-68 through 2014-72 are assigned to Councilmembers Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin. Are you all going to be in town on November 3rd? Councilman Coffin and Barlow and Anthony?
Stand by just one second. Let me just check.
November what?
3rd.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Barlow?
Yeah, let me just check real quick.
Councilman Anthony?
Yep.
Almost a win here.
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so we will sign to the three council persons. Thank you very much. And, oh, look where we are. At lunchtime.
At lunch.
Okay. Quarter of two?
Okay.
Okay, 1:45, we're going to recess, and until 1:45 it is now, according to the powers that be, it's 1:17. So we will return at 1:45. Thank you. We are recessed. Okay, we're back. Who said that? Who always used to say that? I'm back. Wait, this is... Ah, excellent. Any historical fact? All right. We are going to start with Agenda Item 47. For possible action, any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
I have one item, Mayor. Item Number 55, ARC 55336, applicant City of Las Vegas, owner Proview Series 17, 200 South Las Vegas Boulevard and 201 South Fourth. Staff has asked that item be withdrawn, and that's my motion.
Thank you. This is motion. Please vote, and please post.
Yes, I didn't know if you wanted to make it now at the time of the agenda item, but we do have an item to be obeyed in my ward. Oh, is that what you wanted? You just wanted a vote?
Okay, thank you. That motion carries. Agenda Item 48 through 54 may be considered in one motion, one vote. They're considered routine, no public and public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. So turning to the left and the right, we do have Agenda Items 48 through 54.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I don't want to have to pull it forward. I just want to say, and item Number 48, with Imagine, which is the private school that we've had reviewed a couple times, that they've done an absolutely excellent job on following through on the neighbors' concerns, and believe it or not, this time I have not even a single neighbor concern on the Imagine School, and I just want to thank them very much for cooperating in the community.
Wonderful. Okay, let me read them then. 48, RQR 54728, applicant Imagine Schools at East Mesa. At East Mesa, owner Voss Family Trust, a required review of an approved special use permit, SUP 48849, for a private school primary with a waiver to allow no pickup and drop-off area where one's required at 1950 South Rainbow. C1, limited commercial zone, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Item 49, RQR 54729, applicant West Coast Buildboards LLC, owner Reese Real Estate and Investment Company, Inc., a required review of an approved special use perm, U-0109-94, for a 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 1767 North Rancho Drive, C2, general commercial zone, Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Number 50, RQR 54730, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, owner Rank Brewing LLC, for possible action, a required review of an approved special use permit, U-0086-86, for a 65-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 831 West Bonanza Road, M Industrial Zone, Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Agenda Items 51 and 52, SUP 55212, SUP 55214, applicant Tenaya Creek Brewery, owner Rank Brewing LLC, a request for special use permit for a proposed 1,877 square foot beer wine cooler on-sale establishment within a proposed 13,170 square foot manufacturing heavy-use brewery at 831 West Bonanza Road, M Industrial Zone, Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. SUP 55195, applicant Davis Funeral Home Memorial Park, owner Hart Voland Enterprises LLC, a request for a special use permit for a proposed mortuary or funeral chapel use at 1401 South Rainbow Boulevard. C1, limited commercial zone 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. SUP, item Number 54, SUP 55200, applicant Yohi Japanese Fondue, owner 9440 West Sahara Holdings LLC, a request for a special use permit for proposed 1,575 square foot beer wine cooler on-sale establishment with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a house of worship where 400 feet is required at 9440 West Sahara, Suite 175, C-1, limited commercial zone. Ward 2, Councilman Beers, the planning commission recommends approval on Items 51 through 54, and all items are recommended for approval by staff. All items are public hearing items, which I declare open. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on these items? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Anthony, do you have a motion to approve Items 48 through 54?
Move for approval.
There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 55, which has now been withdrawn.
Madam Mayor?
Hello, where are you?
Hi, Acting Director Tom Perrigo.
Hi there.
Was there...
Wait a minute, where are we? I might have messed up on something. What number?
We are on 56 now. We had Agenda Items that I read together, Agenda Items 48 through 54, which passed unanimously.
I need to recall 53, and it's my fault. I, sorry, I had another book with me, and it wasn't circled, so this one, so call it back, please.
So you have to call your whole motion back?
Just rescind the vote on 53.
I would like to rescind the motion that accepted all of them through 54.
It would be, what, which number? Just 53, excuse me?
Mary, I think you rescind the vote on 53 and call that one back.
Just rescind that one?
Yes, just 53.
I can do it just on 53?
Yes.
Then I would like to rescind the vote on 53.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion to rescind Agenda Item 53. Please cast your vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Okay.
Wait, can I just comment on something?
Sure.
Item 53 was supposed to be obeyed...
Oh, wait a minute, you have to say your name for the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Amador Bengachia, 1335 Rosanna. We had, Jennifer and I had an agreement to obey that item for four weeks for Davis Funeral Homes, so we can work out a couple of issues. What just happened here is, my understanding is, we, she just removed her vote...
Councilwoman Tarkanian.
But I'm going to make the new motion.
Did we remove that item from?
Yes. It has not been approved. Excuse me?
Well, what happened was, we passed them all. Now we have rescinded, so we have a special item now on 53, which now Councilwoman will be able to make a new motion as to whatever that is.
I apologize.
No, that's all right.
Thank you for clarifying that.
This happens at different times sometimes with all of us, and so we have to do this. And what you do is, you rescind that motion that was made, that's voted upon and rescinded, so now we're starting brand new, and I am going to request the abeyance from myself for this motion to obey for four weeks.
That's November 19th. November 19th.
That would be November 19th. November 19th.
And is that agreed upon? Do you want to come up and speak on behalf of your client, or that you agree? I mean, I saw you shaking your head.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Lazovich, 8345 West Sunset Road, here today representing Davis Funeral Home, and we will follow Councilwoman Tarkanian's motion for a hold.
Okay. Thank you.
And Jennifer, as I stated, I'll put it on the record, you're the hardest working vigil I've ever seen in this type of thing, and you should be complimented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Bengachia, would you like to make a comment at all, or just in agreement for this, whatever?
I want to thank your staff for working with us. You know, there's other people that were here, I'm not sure if they should be given up to...
They can have an opportunity...
...an understanding of what just transpired, but I just want to thank your staff for even doing that today. Thank you.
Could you repeat your name? I'm so sorry for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Amador Bengachia, 1335 Rosanna.
Thank you.
I'm directly right behind the funeral.
Thank you. And young lady, you wanted to come forward and say something? Be sure to say your name, please.
My name is Patricia Webb. Good afternoon. I just want to make sure we are, I'm representing the landlord, and I'm a tenant. Unfortunately, they had two meetings, and we were not informed, and we want to be informed because it's affecting our business. The landlord spoke to both of them, and we were not notified, so at some point, we are also affected, we want to be aware of the situation. Yesterday, they spoke, they didn't mention the hearing today, we found through a neighbor, so we want to be informed, because it's affecting our business as well.
What's your address?
They don't have to, it's just name at this point, but for the record, it's an important point. What is your address, please, and is it a residence?
1321 South Rainbow Boulevard, we're next to the, where they want to, planning to open the funeral home. We were not even, we were not informed at all. And we were on the 9th, and the 9th, they said that they were going to do a meeting, and then we were going to be informed. They did it on the 23rd, we were not informed. And yesterday, the landlord spoke to them, and they neglected to inform us that there was a hearing today. We found through a neighbor.
Okay, Ms. Lazovich, you want to...
Thank you. Jennifer Lazovich, 8345 West Sunset Road. As I indicated, they were, that, they are part of the office complex that is located immediately north of this site. We did a voluntary neighborhood meeting in August. We have confirmed, because we purchased those labels from the City of Las Vegas, that all three properties that are listed as owners of the property to the north of us were invited to that neighborhood meeting, which I held in August. They were absolutely sent notice. Whether or not it made it to the proper parties, I don't know, but I do not want a representation that my firm or Davis did not reach out and do everything they could to notice as many people as they were supposed to within the notification radius on a voluntary basis.
Thank you. There was a motion made by Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Could I just say, okay, I just want to say that, I hope you understand, she, what she's saying is that these notices, the labels, are purchased through the city, and whoever owns the building gets them, and they're supposed to let the people know in the building, so that may be what. And if he said he didn't get it, I'm sorry, but she has a record that she bought it, and it was used as a label, so maybe it got lost in the mail. I don't know.
But yes, I just talked to her, and he didn't get it. Why I'm...
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I know the item now is obeyed to the 19th of November.
Yes.
So your notice now, 19th of November.
Right, so you know now.
Okay, and you have to vote.
I have my...
You can't vote? And is Councilman Coffin here? Okay, and please post. And the motion carries, 19th of November, we'll see you here. Okay, Agenda Item 56, GBA 55281, public hearing. Applicant owner, NV Energy, possible action, a request to relocate electrical transmission lines generally along Martin Luther King Boulevard, north of Alta Drive, Desert Lane between Alta Drive and Hastings Avenue, and east of the Interstate 15 North and South Charleston Boulevard, Wards 1, 3, and 5. Councilpersons, Tarkanian, Coffin, and Barlow, PRJ 53660. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, is public hearing, and I declare it open. Applicant or representative present? Please go forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Edgar Patino, representing NV Energy, 6226 West Sahara, LVNV 89146. Also joining me today is Mr. Andrew Stewart, branch manager with Cardno, our outside land use consultant. The item before you today is a general plan amendment, and approval by this council would pave the way for the relocation of transmission lines that are in conflict with Project Neon. The route, as described by the mayor, is illustrated on the map before you in a pink line. A tremendous amount of work has gone into developing this route that seeks to minimize the impact on residents, businesses, and landowners. For several years now, we've worked closely with NDOT and with city staff to establish a route that is compatible with important future roadway plans that will ultimately increase capacity on I-15 and increase mobility and access in the downtown area. If we receive an approval today, internal processes at NV Energy will kick off immediately and work on relocating. The lines would begin right away on November the 10th. Our transmission lines in their new location would be in service by June of 2015, prior to the arrival of the summer electrical loads. We did have two neighborhood meetings on this issue. The first was in April of 2011, and the second took place earlier this year in August at the Grace Presbyterian Church. We did have 21 folks in attendance, and none of them expressed objection to the application and only had some general questions. During the rounding process and discussions, we also worked closely with UNLV. Some concerns were brought up related to their ability to develop the Shadowland campus in concert with their master plan. I'm happy to say with, that with their feedback and with the support of the city and the support of NDOT, the current route has resulted in the drafting of a letter that I have here from UNLV that basically supports the proposed route. If I could, I'd like to submit that into the record.
If you could give that to the city clerk, Luanne, could I trouble you to get that for us for the record? Thank you.
As I've mentioned, we've worked extremely hard to present you with a new route that will allow us to provide reliable service and one that seeks to minimize the impacts to our community. We do appreciate staff's recommendation for approval, and we respectfully ask for yours today. Andrew and I will be here, and we'd be happy to answer... ask for yours today. Andrew and I will be here, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you both. And any questions, comments here? Is this a public hearing which I declare open, or I did declare it open? Any comments, please come forward, state your name. Close the public hearing. How about you make the motion? Because it's one, three, and five, so you're one.
I move to accept the recommendation of our staff.
Thank you. It's motion, please vote. Motion carries. Agenda item fifty...
Thank you.
Oh, is that it? Aren't you doing more? That's it? That's all there? I thought there was more looping.
Why do you think he's smiling?
Thank you, of course. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda items fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one. MOD five five two oh four, and a request for major modification to the town center. Development standards, land use map from suburban mixed-use XX dash TC to general commercial GC dash TC. And number fifty-eight, VAR five five two oh five, a request for variance to allow seventy-four parking spaces where eighty-two are required. Agenda item fifty-nine, SUP five five two oh two, on a request for a special use permit for a sixty-five hundred square foot liquor establishment tavern with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from an existing school where four hundred feet is required. Agenda item number sixty, SUP five five two oh three, and a request for a special use permit for a sixty-five hundred square foot gaming establishment restricted use with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a single-family detached dwelling where three hundred and thirty feet is required. Number sixty-one, SDR five five two oh one, a request for a site development plan for a sixty-five hundred square foot liquor establishment tavern. Applicant owner, Swecker and Lip Tenaya Azure LLC, on two-point-three-three acres on the south side of Azure Drive, approximately three hundred and thirty feet, west of Tenaya Way, T dash C Town Center, Zone SX dash TC, suburban mixed-use town center, special land use designation. Planning Commission recommends approval on all items. Staff recommends denial. These items are in Ward six, with Councilman Ross, are public hearing items which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
I am. Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of the council. Stephanie Allen, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road, with the law firm of Kemper-Kroll, here on behalf of the applicant, and also here on behalf of Chris Kemper, who unfortunately wasn't able to be here today. But he has worked extremely hard on this application since prior to its submittal up through today's date. Before I get into the application, I just would like to share that we have had two neighborhood meetings on this application, one prior to the actual submittal, where there was one resident that came and ultimately was in favor of the project. The second neighborhood meeting was after the submittal of this application. There were a handful of folks that came, all of who were in support of the application as well. So if I could just briefly direct your attention to the overhead.
Yes, please, go ahead. And what school are you going to have a zero-foot distance separation? What school is that?
Your Honor, there's, there is an academy called Quest Academy that is actually fifteen-hundred feet from this particular site. Unfortunately, because the way the code works, this is in a commercial subdivision, so it reads that there's a zero-foot setback, but we're actually, in fact, fifteen-hundred feet away from, from that school, and I've got some pictures I can show you.
Mayor, before Ms. Allen does that, too.
Yes, please.
Just to inform you and the council, this application and the application for Quest were very close to each other in, in being filed. So I knew about this project long before I knew Quest wanted to move into that commercial building there, so it just happened to be almost simultaneous as, as this went down, so I'm just sharing that with you.
And while, just before you do this, what staff denial based on, please?
Thank you, Your Honor, Tom Perrigo, acting director. So on the major mod, staff finds that the request for more intense land use is not compatible with the adjacent residential. On the parking variance, we don't find any unusual circumstance on the lot that would justify parking variance, and therefore, staff recommends denial. On, on both these items, I'll note that Planning Commission did recommend approval. On the, the use permits, a change in use to tavern and to limited gaming, they do not meet the distance separation, and staff finds it's not harmonious and compatible with the neighborhood, and therefore, staff recommends denial. Again, Planning Commission did recommend approval on those.
Thank you very much. I, please continue.
Thank you, Your Honor. As I mentioned, this, this site is located near the corner of Tenaya, that goes north-south in Azure Drive. This is the site located right here, which, as I mentioned, is within a commercial subdivision that encompasses this entire area. This is a commercial corridor along this area. The pictures up here are directly across the street from the site. There's a commercial shopping center here with the timbers located within the shopping center. There is a, right here, located to the west, this is a discount tire, which I've got a picture here, you can see from our site. There is a Lee's Discount Liquor that's coming into the area, just down the street, and there's an AMPM located right here at the corner of Tenaya and Azure. So generally speaking, the major mod is to, to change this to commercial general, and we believe it's compatible with the surrounding area and the uses that are already existing in that surrounding area. The proposed use is for an upscale restaurant and tavern. It would be similar to, there's a Remedies in Henderson that is open and operating. There's a restaurant named Distill in Summerlin, which is in the Old Agave Restaurant, that has a full menu and a bar with, so that's, hence the reason for the tavern application. Got a couple pictures, just so you can see what the property owners, this is the Old Agave location, of what it would look like with the bar, some lounge areas, and then there's a full menu. It's not just bar food, you've got breakfast, lunch, and dinner. So it'll be a good amenity and, and a nice use for this area, so that people have some additional options for food and, and drink. As far as the distance separations go, the school, as I mentioned, is a Quest Academy. This is a sign of where it's located, and it's opening this fall. You can see, it's quite a distance from the site, all the way across the street where, where the road curves. But this aerial shows you better. This is our location right here, and the location of Quest Academy is all the way down the street here. So it's a full fifteen-hundred feet door-to-door. The reason for the zero setback is just because it's two commercial subdivisions. The setback from the residential, there is residential property to the south. From the edge of our building, which is located right here, to the fence, the existing fence, it's about a hundred and fifty feet. We are required to, to request the use permit, because you're required to have three hundred and fifty feet. But this property, we have not heard any objection from the owner, and these are just some pictures of the property. So you can see, it's, it's really not currently being used only as residential. There's some pictures of what's on the site. There's some big trailers on the site. So it's, it appears they're using it for a little bit more than residential. So when you hear residential, you think of your traditional, single-family home, but this is the property to the south of, of us. So as staff mentioned, Planning Commission did recommend unanimous approval of all of these applications. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do appreciate their support, and we would ask for yours as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on these items? Please come forward and state your name. Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Ms. Allen. You did a fabulous job. It is much better to have you here than Mr. Kemper, and you can tell him I said that. Councilmembers and mayor, this is a, a very upscale-type product. I've been waiting for a long time for this corridor to start producing businesses. Since the recession, the C store was the last one to go in during the recession, actually. And again, about the school, these folks had come to me before the, the Quest Academy folks had come to me. I knew there was going to be a conflict when that occurred, and it was just an automatic thing. But it's good to see this kind of product in the area. I will recognize the several letters of opposition, as well as the several letters of support. It's unusual for an applicant, and councilmembers, this is the kind of applicant that you want, that will bend over backwards to meet with the neighbors, to discuss the issues, to try to, to remedy any kind of impact to the quality of life of those folks. And I appreciate Mr. Perrigo's team and his staff regards to their recommendations for denial, because it is a black-and-white issue with them. However, I am, I'm waiting for Mr. Lee to start his store. I think a lot of people are. I think with a few more businesses along that corridor will be significant. I know a car dealer has expressed interest in moving into one of those parcels on the other side of the street. So it continues to grow, and, and I want to see that happen on, on Azure right there, that Azure corridor that comes up the Tropical Parkway. This is a fabulous product, and this is a fabulous applicant. I cannot express to you and Mr. Kemper and your team, going the extra mile for the residents who live in this area, and for me as a city councilman that represents them. And I'll ask Ms. Allen through the mayor, Ms. Allen, what is the timeline for construction and completion, so we know when we can make reservations for dinner?
I wish I could share that. I don't know the answer to that. I would imagine that as soon as they can break ground, they will, but I'm sorry, Chris has been really the one that worked this, this application. So any, I appreciate your comments, but Chris has worked really hard on this, and I'm sorry.
Well, this is a good opportunity, too. I wish your client had come with you, because we can, you know, when we talk about great products coming out to anywhere in the city of Las Vegas, we like to brag about that and highlight those new businesses, and new jobs, and new products, and new dinners, and new food, you know? So, but you're good enough, and I think we can move on from there. Mayor, with your permission.
So let's take it one at a time. How do you, do you have a motion on item fifty-seven?
Yes, Mayor, I will follow, Planning Commission's recommendation for approval subject to conditions.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote. Please post. And how say you on agenda item fifty-eight?
I would also move to follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Please vote on fifty-eight. Motion carries. Agenda item fifty-nine, please.
I would move to follow Planning Commission's recommendations also for approval and subject to all the conditions.
There's a motion, please vote. That motion carries. Agenda item sixty?
I would follow, move to follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval subject to conditions.
There's a motion, please vote. Please post. And that carries. And the last one, agenda item sixty-one, please.
And thank you, Mayor. And Ms. Allen, again, please express my gratitude and appreciation to Mr. Kemper and your team. I would also move to follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval on agenda item sixty-one, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. Good job. And please post.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good luck. Tell him you did a great job. Okay, agenda item sixty-two, VAR five five three three five, public hearing, applicant city of Las Vegas owner, Proview Series seventeen LLC for possible action, a request for variance to allow a zero-foot sign setback where five feet is required, and to allow a two freestanding signs to be located within the downtown casino overlay, special signage district where such is not allowed, on point eight-five acres at two hundred South Las Vegas Boulevard and two oh one South Fourth, C two general commercial zone. This is in Ward three with Councilman Coffin, PRJ five four six three six. Planning Commission and staff recommend denial. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the representative or client applicant present?
Your Honor, I, I think we're the, the applicant-client. We've worked closely with them, so I feel comfortable representing this item, if that's okay with you.
But you've recommended deny it.
Yeah, that is kind of an odd situation, isn't it?
I mean, this is the worst thing I've ever heard in my whole life. What are you drinking over there? All right, okay.
Doug will represent, Doug will be, Doug will be the applicant, and I then will rebut his presentation.
All right. Madam Mayor, Doug Rankin for the record. The, this parking lot is a temporary parking lot within the city of Las Vegas to provide public parking. Initially, they, the parking lot was using banners, as you see in this photograph here, in order to indicate that public parking is there. Those banners were approved under a temporary sign permit. Those have expired, and they need additional signings so that visitors to the downtown area can find the public parking. Originally, the, the signs that were proposed didn't meet many parts of the application. Part of this application, there's a request to amend it. No longer is it going to be necessary to have the waiver of the downtown casino signage overlay. The signs are going to be reduced in size so that they meet our incidental and directional sign requirements, which don't require permits, but they do require setbacks. The setback is necessary, a variance is necessary for this, as the parking spaces, as you can see in the photograph, come right up to the area, and they won't be able to meet the five-foot setback for even an incidental sign, and that variance is necessary in order to post these signs, so the public knows where they're at. And we would, the city would look forward to an approval, so that we can inform the public of where the public parking is with that incidental directional signage.
Expecting Councilman Coffin to deny based on staff recommendation and Planning Commission. Correct?
Thank you, Your Honor. As, on many items, it's, it's, planning's interpretation of the code, and it's quite clear. And so rather than pushing some of these things into a gray area and setting precedent, we will be consistent in our recommendation for denial of a variance when we don't see an unusual circumstance. However, approval will allow them to put the sign up without taking away extra parking spaces. I'll just leave it at that.
Wow, that's all I can tell you. This is, yes, oh my gosh. All right, Councilman Coffin, how say you with this?
I move we fire the staff and approve the item. How deep do you want to go? No, they're in denial.
Yeah, real.
Okay, all right. Well, in that case, I, I do move for approval, despite the opinions of the Planning Commission and staff, that they definitely are wrong, and public policy calls for approval.
However, that's his motion. We do not have to approve that motion. So we could really cause hardship here. All right, there's a motion, please vote, and please post. And boy, are you lucky. Go for it. I am proud of her.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I might note for the record that Ms. Stanley owes Mr. Rankin lunch.
And I think Mr. Rankin should take Councilwoman out for lunch as well. Okay. Agenda item sixty-three, SUP, it's not another one of these, SUP five five three two eight, public hearing, applicant owner, Drock Third Street LLC, for a possible action, a request for special use permit for proposed tavern, limited establishment for one hundred seven thousand one hundred and fifty-eight square foot, commercial recreation amusement outdoor use at two hundred South Third Street, C two general commercial zone, Ward three, Councilman Coffin, PRJ five five two three one. Planning Commission and staff got together and recommend approval. It's a miracle. And it's public hearing, I declare it open. Are you, uh-huh. Hello.
Hello. Lucy Stewart, twenty-five hundred West Sahara, representing the item, and with me is...
Terry Murphy, five one six South Sixth Street, not buying anybody lunch or anything like that.
Ernie Frizzaro, forty-five eighty-eight, Coachman Circle, representing the Roman Catholic Diocese.
And at the Planning Commission meeting, the church did, because there are several churches downtown, and I think there was some concern about the noise, because this is for outside events. It could be like a chili cook-off, but there also will be concerts and things, and I think that's the big concern. And so I'll let Ms. Murphy explain the meetings and Mr. Frizzaro have, they had between themselves, and I think they've come to an agreement.
Sure, and thank you. So as you've all seen, you've either been by or seen the photographs, there've been a couple of concerts, there has been a barbecue cook-off there. We had a independent organization rented out for a Greek celebration a few nights ago, and we had an MMA fight. So it's going to be a lot of different kinds of events. Mr. Stevens and I both met with Mr. Frizzario, as well as other representatives of the Catholic Diocese, and we have certainly agreed not to have noisy events during the time that Mass is in, in progress. Mr. Stevens also had an offer to do a pretty major event during Holy Week, but he's not going to do that. So we're going to be very, very mindful of our... So we're going to be very, very mindful of our neighbors, and I think Mr. Frizzario can attest to our openness and willingness.
Yes, I'd like to compliment Derek Stevens and the ladies for working closely with the diocese. One thing we'd like to go on record, and we met with Councilman Coffin, and I think he's sympathetic to our request, is that on the conditions of approval at Wood State, there would be no amplified entertainment during the hours of church services. And the one caveat we'd like to see is that there be a two-year review on the use permit such that cheap insurance in case everybody goes crazy and things go to hell in a handbasket, we have a reason to be back in front of you. So if we can get a two-year review on the use permit, we're happy as clams.
Thank you very much. It's a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on agenda item 63? Hearing none, I'll close this. And Councilman?
It looked like someone was going to step up and testify, but she fell back in her seat. So I don't know if she really was.
There's nothing.
Oh, okay, you're afterwards then. Thank you. All right. Your Honor, I appreciate the fact that all the parties did get together and worked out all potential disagreements, and Derek Stevens and his brother and others involved in the business are very kind to be considerate of the, of the church. And it's also nice of the church to recognize that they're in an environment of urban life and noise occurs, and so it's like, like, nice to coexist. It's very important. And, uh, because after all, the mission can be great when you can evangelize to people who are just walking around looking for something to do. So I therefore move for approval, and I'm not sure it was anywhere in the conditions that were stated, but I will make sure that we have a two-year review in the conditions stated.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. And thank you all for working so harmoniously.
Your Honor, if I might also add, this is a unique project. It's been difficult with lots of different types of permits required, and I think I have to say that your staff from the planning department, business licensing, building department have all been extremely patient with us, number one, and number two, extremely efficient in helping us through this. So I'd like to thank them.
Thank you. Thank you for the compliment. The motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I clarify the motion?
Yes.
Councilman Coffin, did you intend that to be a public hearing before the city council for the required review?
Do we have to reopen the hearing to restate, or can we simply say the intent was to have the public hearing in two years if in fact it's?
Councilman Coffin?
Two-year review implies that there is a hearing, I thought.
It could be a public hearing, it could be a non-public hearing, or it could be an administrative review.
Public hearing.
Mayor, if I could, I think the two-year review normally goes before city council unless you say otherwise.
Okay.
Before council.
So therefore it does not need, need any amendment?
No, it'll go before city council unless you want it administratively.
Okay, fine, and you're not. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, agenda item 64, SDR 55324, public hearing, applicant owner, Harrison Properties LTD. Possible action or request for site development plan review for proposed 11,708 square foot commercial building with a waiver, the downtown Centennial Plan Architectural Design Standards on .16 acres at 725, 729, 731 South Las Vegas Boulevard. C2 general commercial zone, Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. PRJ 54961. Planning and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, I declare it open as the applicant or representative present.
Good afternoon, Laura Dreia, 520 South Fourth Street, here on behalf of Harrison Properties. What we're essentially planning on doing is demolishing, actually, we already have demolished a older building, 1950s circa, that, that could house two tenants, and planning on constructing a building that could house about 18 retail tenants. We've worked very hard with Public Works to make sure we have the proper dedications and can provide the pedestrian realm, and we thank staff for their approval and ask for yours as well.
Wonderful. Anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on these items, or this item I should say, or on 725, 729, 731 South Las Vegas Boulevard? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Coffin?
It'll be a nice addition to downtown, Your Honor. The, uh, old two-story building that contained Fifth Street Liquors was on this site. It was demolished a couple of days ago, so it's ready to go. I don't think it's going to take too long to build this. They know what they want. Uh, yes, the green building, is that gone right now? Is everything you see gone right there, or is that the property next to it?
The green building is gone as well.
That, that everything, yes, okay, that's all gone. And there will be something nice in its place. It's going to resemble Container Park in that sense, but it'll have its own touch, and it'll be fronting right on the Boulevard. So I think it'll be a nice addition. I move for approval.
Thank you. This motion, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And a J, um, agenda item 65. I'd ask the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous building or nuisance litter abatement.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now move on to agenda item 66. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion, any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speakers allowed will be limited to three minutes. Please state your name.
Hi, Ms. Judge Goodman. Hi, Ricky Barlow. How you been doing? Hi, Mr. Kaufman. Hi, everyone. Anyway, let me get to it. Judge Goodman, when I came down here in 2012.
Your name, please.
My name is Ms. Chantel Rollison. I came down here in 2012, okay? I come from a very famous background. Um, I ended up marrying the Michael Jackson nephew because SpongeBob cartoon, he looks like SpongeBob, which was based on my behind. Mm-hmm. We had given him 20 years to help the family members. In return, they took products from my storage, okay? And one of the storage products was my main product, which was my iTouch Screen Sketch phone. They gave it to Apple and returned my brothers and my sisters and I started acting, modeling, playing professional basketball. I came down here to redevelop, um, Las Vegas Boulevard as well as Naked City with Shirley Berkley. I don't know why she's not here, but I've been calling her as well as Ricky Barlow. It seems like these people want me to be a misfit to society to where they can take everything from me and keep entrapping me in jail because I don't want them having any control over my royalties. My royalties have in fact been given to family members who I don't even know. So I'm down here because I have 300 voters who do not want to pay rent anymore because it's a part of a music reality show. My home was taken. I gave you guys that, I think, nine months ago. I brought you guys the address and all. Um, there's a basketball player, his name is Jason, he lives in the home. They went over there and making naked X-rated videos. Mm-hmm. Uh-huh. And I'm trying to get my home back as we speak so we could tear down 240 West Cincinnati and turn it into townhomes. Can I speak to someone about this matter?
Councilman, do you have someone that can speak? One of your staff?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Okay, do we have one of your staff here?
Hi, Mr. Bob Beers, I voted for you. I did.
She hasn't mentioned my name.
He hasn't done anything, all day.
Who's sitting in back with his hand to his head?
Mayor, if I could, Mayor, this sounds like a private matter that's beyond your purview, so I think this, this young lady probably needs to seek an attorney that could probably help her with these issues.
What I come here for is advocacy because I'm tired of being gang-banged by the family members.
But, yeah, she probably needs to seek an attorney that would probably handle these matters, a private attorney. This is outside of their purview.
Okay. So you hear from our learned counsel, and if you can't find one and afford one, then you can go to Legal Aid on Charleston, just east of, uh, just east of Las Vegas Boulevard on North Charleston, Legal Aid.
They don't want me to be able to afford anything. That's their whole problem.
You, she can also, Mayor, she can also call Legal Aid of Southern Nevada.
They don't help.
They can assist her.
They don't help. The sister is an attorney, and I don't want her representing me.
Okay, but that, that's probably the place she needs to go is Legal Aid of Southern Nevada. Barbara Buckley's groups, they could probably help.
That's the best we can do. I'm sorry because it is out of the purview of the council, and so I would certainly pursue again Legal Aid of Southern Nevada on West, East Charleston.
Okay. And Ms., Ms. Goodman, I know my time is up. I don't care what they say to try to defeat my purpose, it's not going to matter because I will be back down here letting you know what they do at Legal Aid. It doesn't matter because it is wrong for them to tell people I have to be forced to be with someone gay as someone dies all of a sudden when I come to Las Vegas. They have no right following me, you know? And being that I told you guys that I was sodomized by someone before, um, they're trying to cover it up basically, and they keep sending their clonies to backtrack everything I do, and I'm sick of it. I don't like it. So I'll be in touch with you, and I am your adoptive black daughter. I met your son. Thank you.
And if you will, this gentleman right here has just come in to get your information, the gentleman right there, and he'll be able to help you with any legal matters that you may have.
Anyone else wishing to speak under this portion of the agenda? I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to agenda item 67.
Council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Let's start at our left. Councilman Coffin, anything?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to give another plug to the Shriners Golf Tournament to help provide money for the great things they do for children. As you know, the kids who are benefited by the Shriners charities pay nothing, and they go right to those, those hospitals in California. They're bussed down there and bussed back here by volunteers, and they've got a wonderful mission to perform, but they try to raise money. This golf tournament, the greatest of the PGA Tour players, are here in Las Vegas for the rest of this week at the Tournament Players Club in Summerlin. Admission prices are not expensive, but you get a wonderful education from watching these men play the greatest game in the world. Thank you.
Councilman Barlow, I don't think you should say anything after the last play you made.
It was a recommendation on behalf of Mayor Pro Tem, so I was just taking his advice and following his lead.
Thanks, your turn.
I appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me for the grand opening ceremony for the Kyanga Isoke Palacio Park at Dulittle Complex. We have renovated Dulittle Complex, and it is a gorgeous facility with new park equipment, splash pad for the kids, horseshoe pit for the seniors, as well as new walking trail and additional picnic areas and, and amenities that the, the entire community in this area, Mayor, will really enjoy. So please come out and join us on Thursday, October 30th at 11:00 a.m. and enjoy free children activities and brand-new park amenities, as I mentioned. It will be fun-filled, and there will be a lot of activities going on for the entire community. And of course, we want to thank KCP Power 88, our Soul School Station, for carrying this live broadcast and handling all of the music and entertainment. So please come out, October 30th at 11:00 a.m. Secondly, the Bluegrass in the Park, this has been an ongoing and monthly event all year long. It's the first Sunday of every month. The next one will take place November 2nd. Inside of Lorenzi Park, the newly renovated Lorenzi Park. Come out and enjoy the music of local bluegrass bands playing traditional American music with banjos, fiddles, guitars, and mandolins. This is a free activity for the entire family to enjoy, so please come out November 2nd starting at 7:00 p.m.
And excuse me? You need to update this flyer because it says June through October.
Yeah, that you, thank you for that clarification. We probably just posted the wrong.
Your Honor, there will also be basses playing there, too.
There'll be basses.
Yeah, there will also be basses.
Basses?
Basses, yeah.
Okay, there'll also be basses playing, but I know that the flyer says through October. However, we're, we're, um, we're pushing it through the end of the year because we're having such a great turnout, so don't pay attention to the October. We're going to continue it through the November and the December fest. How about that?
Good.
Yeah, it'll be nice, though. It'll be nice. We, we get a great turnout, and we want to thank Mr. Paul DePotta for a wonderful job with pulling this together along with the Ward Five staff. So November 2nd, please come out and enjoy. Next, November 6th, Coffee with the Councilman will be canceled due to my annual Teen Town Hall. I am pleased to announce that the BET, Black Entertainment Television, along with Centric, will be providing a celebrity A-list co-host to sit with me and over 500 students right here in the council chambers of City Hall on November 6th. So BET as well as Centric would like to carry the Teen Town Hall Mayor live on their cable network. So I think that would be pretty exciting for the entire nation to actually have an opportunity to see this beautiful facility we have an opportunity to reside in as mayor and council. So that will be on November 6th, and Coffee with the Councilman on that day will be canceled. However, I will be back to Coffee with the Councilman on Thursday, December 4th. So November is out, December is in. On November 8th, Ward Five Fishing Derby, which is our annual event, we have a great time with a number of young people coming out with their fathers and mothers, learning how to fish, and I want to thank the Fish and Wildlife for teaming up with us along, along with the other vendors that we have for the Ward Five Fishing Derby, taking place on Saturday, November 8th from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon. This is an event for school-aged children and their families. There will be prizes and raffles and a continental breakfast, as well as lunch, to be served to all that come out and participate. Of course, you may continue to follow me on Facebook and Twitter, as well as at the, at my website, at LasVegasNevada.gov/WardFive. And if you would like to also join the e-newsletter, the Ward Five e-newsletter, feel free to contact my office at 229-5443 and submit your email, or just send us an email, and we will be happy to include your email on the e-newsletter to keep up with all of the activities that are taking place in and around the city of Las Vegas and in particular Ward Five. Thank you so very much, and, um...
Thank you.
Off to the next. Councilman?
Okay, Councilman.
In Ward One, we'll be having two town hall meetings pertaining to Dexter Park. Our renovation is occurring at the park. There will be discussion on which types of activities one want to keep in the park and which new activities we would like to bring to the park. So we ask anybody who's interested in Gary Dexter Park, and I know there are a lot of people who live around there, I know they're active, please come out. Two times you get the chance. One time is Red Rock Elementary School on October 22nd at 6:30 p.m. Red Rock Elementary School, 408 Upland Avenue. The second time is on October 25th at Gary Dexter Park, right there at the park at 800 Upland. That'll be Saturday, October 5th at 10 o'clock a.m. And we ask you, please come. Give your input. Do you want a water park? Do you want some more addition to the dog park? Do you want baseball? Do you want soccer to take over where baseball used to be? This is the chance because we're refurbishing the park, and that doesn't happen very often. And as we've said before, this is an older park, so we need your thoughts on it. So please come out. October 28th and 29th, we've already been told that we are having the special council meetings to discuss medical marijuana. They start at 9:00 a.m. in our city council chambers. Agendas will be posted to the web by October 21st, and please attend if you would like to have your voice to be heard. We're hearing a lot of voices now that we didn't hear earlier, and they're wondering why. Well, it's because you have to come, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And before I pass it to Mayor Pro Tem, I'll go down to the right. Daylight saving time ends Sunday, November 2nd. So I think it's 2:00 in the morning, Saturday night, Sunday morning, that you will set your clocks back. So just wanted to get that in before anybody escapes. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to invite everyone to come out to the Las Vegas Mayor Soccer Tournament Cup, October 24th through 26th. There'll be hundreds of soccer games being played all over the city of Las Vegas in various parks. We're anticipating up to 5,000 kids. We're anticipating up to five thousand kids. These are the young kids, around thirteen years old, that are playing in this tournament. Over five thousand kids showing up in Las Vegas from all over the country, and not only all over the country, all over the world. We have teams coming in from Mexico, Canada, Haiti, and Panama, just to name a few countries, and they not only bring themselves, but their family members and referees, and there's probably about fifteen million dollars pumped into our economy that weekend. So it all culminates on the October twenty-sixth with the finals at Betty Wilson Soccer Park, which is one of the best soccer parks in the country, and wonderful Ward Four. So if you want to see some great kids playing some great soccer, come on out, October twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth. If you want information on the exact times, go to our website, and you can get more information. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, Councilman Ross?
I think we should nickname Mayor Pro Tem Councilman Soccer.
Uh-huh.
He gets it. Thank you, Mayor. First, the fun stuff. It's that time of year again for our little ones to dawn their Halloween costumes, and it is my last movie in the park for the season. So we are going to be watching Hotel Transylvania, even monsters need a vacation, as well as council members. Friday, October twenty-fourth, it says six thirty, but of course, everyone knows when the sun goes down, we crank that movie up. This is a great opportunity for your kids to come out. We've got our community partners, Planet Nissan, as cosponsors. There will be a trunk-or-treat opportunity out there, and so I encourage families to dress your kids up in their Halloween costumes to get the Halloween season started off right. It is free to all families, and I look forward to seeing everyone out there. Hopefully, it's not going to be too cold or chilly that night, so the temperature's going down. On a more serious note, we continue our great relationship and partnership with Nevada Childseekers. We have a missing young man. His name is Jason Ramey, or Jay, or Jay Dog. Jay is fourteen years old, he's five foot six inches. He has a mole on his left cheek, braces on the top of his jaw there. He was last seen in the area of Liberty Heights Avenue and Bermuda Road, and he was wearing his school uniform, so he should be easy to identify. Jay was wearing a red shirt, khaki shorts, solid black socks, red basketball tennis shoes, and I'm sure he's probably carrying a backpack with his personal belongings and his homework. Please, if anyone has seen the whereabouts of this young man, or Jay Dog, if you're watching this right now, please contact the Metropolitan Police Department at seven zero two eight two eight three one one one, or Nevada Childseekers, seven zero two four five eight seven zero zero nine. We want to get you back to people who love you and want to care for you. So, thank you, Mayors. Unfortunately, we have to do these on a regular basis, but we're trying to get these kids back to where they get care and feel loved, so thank you very much.
Well, and his braces will be needing tightening, so go home. Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have only one very short announcement, and that is that we had a shred-a-thon this last weekend up at Veterans Memorial Leisure Services Center. I'm proud to say that we diverted three-quarters of a ton of paper out of the landfill. Once they get turned in and shredded and crosshatch shredded, then they are reduced to pulp, and eventually, this stuff all gets recycled. So it was pretty cool. We took three-quarters of a ton of stuff off the landfill. Had fun doing it. That's all I got, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And from what I have, for those of you who love to read, and I hope that's all of you, join us at the fabulous Vegas Valley Book Festival on Saturday, October eighteenth, this Saturday, at the historic Fifth Street School downtown. There'll be many celebrity authors on hand, representing multiple genres, including children's books, young adult fiction, nonfiction, and fiction. Come on out and join the fun. Life is beautiful. We'll light up downtown from Friday, October twenty-fourth through Sunday, the twenty-sixth. Music, chefs, delicious food, intriguing art, and learning opportunities aplenty, something for everybody. Our next council, city council meeting will be Wednesday, November fifth, beginning at nine a.m. here in council chambers, and remember to set your clocks back come the night of Saturday, whatever I said, the third, the second to the third. Okay, that's, we are adjourned. Thank you, staff, thank you, everybody, for a fun-filled day. It was fun. Thank you.